...... The regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Southfield for Monday, May 2014. That is pretty cool.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Seymour, perhaps?
Here.
Mr. Perkasse.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Good luck, members of the council. Thank you, and I appreciate everybody adjusting their schedules to be here at a one o'clock meeting. We've got a lot of items in detail to go over, and we'll begin the first item, which is our public works presentation. Mr. Jordan, I believe he's going to handle that in line with the... We begin with the first item.
Mr. President, our first item is a public works presentation. We have roads, water, and sewer. We have a PowerPoint. There are a number of subtopics within the PowerPoint. At various points through the presentation, we will be stopping and asking for consensus from council on what I refer to as a directional consensus. We have with us... Do you want to introduce the team? Lee Schultz, our assistant city engineer.
Yes. And I think everyone knows Gary Tressel from Hubble Rock and Clark. And that's Melissa Coda, also with Hubble Rock and Clark, sitting on the end there. And we have Brett Gronovell from OHN... Oops, I'm sorry. And it's Dan. Dan Mitchell with Hubble Rock and Clark also. And you all know Brett Gronovell from OHN. We have Patrick...
Drews.
Drews. From OHN. And Joel Kostic, who is also with OHN.
I just... At the end of the presentation, Michael Mannion, Community Relations, will be talking... Will be hoping to bring up the city's website, show council the construction elements, and talk about a few other items. Also with us are Larry Searls, Public Works, and Justin Beck from Streets and Highways. Want to go ahead and pass out the PowerPoint?
Sure. We'll give it up and run.
Some members of the finance committee saw parts of this presentation at our last meeting.
That wouldn't affect your mark.
Of the finance committee.
It'll affect me, though. I'll show it to the rest.
So why are they all saying...
Pardon?
Why wasn't this distributed before?
This document was just completed Friday. We were here little after five, still working on it. And I can assure you that members of the team were here, worked all weekend, and putting pieces. The largest part of this is we get into the analysis of the roads. For example, the Pacer rate rating. The 2014 Pacer rating was finished last Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday, Tuesday. So this has been a work in progress the last month since the finance committee met. The PowerPoint wasn't in its final stages to be in the pack, but now the council has the decisions to make.
You have to look at it now and just glance at it. We don't know what's going on. So we expect...
Look, I... The PowerPoint is meant for council to take you through a conversation, to engage you on various points in the presentation, so we can get consensus. And I'm not sure if you would have had the PowerPoint without the discussion, it would have been invaluable.
And we'll just take our time, which is why we're beginning early. Mr. Anderson, really answer all the questions that are being asked.
Right. I'm going to do this. I can do it.
Yeah, we want to walk through the areas slowly, so we can see all of them.
Good evening. Well, our good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, good evening. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'll just kick things off a little bit with an introduction of what's in here. And as was pointed out by Mr. Schultz and Mr. Jordan, this was kind of a big one of the team effort.
Will you please come to...
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Move it over.
A little bit of a team effort here, so we'll bounce back and forth on various topics between individuals. Excuse me. And probably pause several times, I assume, Mr. Jordan, for council to discuss certain topics. But if we could go to the first... Oh, and everybody should have a hard copy of everything that's on the PowerPoint, if you want to follow on that way. And the slide should be numbered in the upper right-hand corner, so if we jump ahead and want to jump back, because there's questions about sort of things, the page numbering should help to be able to refer to that.
Mine's in lower right-hand.
Oh, a couple places on it. So for an agenda, I guess we wanted to talk a little bit about some overall infrastructure assessments that have been occurring between a combined effort from the consultants and city staff, particularly some efforts on the roads, an assessment of the road condition and water mains, and a little bit on sanitary sewer. And then talk a little bit about some of the known upcoming future construction projects, and some updates on various aspects of those projects. Talk a little bit about, as it relates to that, related to road funding and the federal aid process, and that process for bidding. Project warranties, I think that's been a topic that we've talked about with some important state council. Quality assurance and quality control on some of the upcoming projects. And then an update on this season's known projects that are already either under contract or getting under contract. And then also, as was pointed out by the administrator, some discussion about community relations. So with that, I'll jump into the first topic if we're good to go. So the first topic was a little bit of a summary of roads assessment. And as was pointed out by the administrator, I believe several members here today that were present at a council finance committee meeting saw a very similar presentation to this. We had had a chance, at the request of the committees, to make some updates with some new ratings and data. But for the sake of everyone understanding the background, I was going to walk through the presentation as a whole. Generally speaking, it was broken down into four topics. One, just a little bit of a description on what has happened already. I'm sorry. With the overview of the city's road assets today, what condition assessment has already happened. A little bit about what funding levels are like in the city, and both in the state overall. And then really, the heart of it is the conclusion, which tries to take that data and put together some projections of what the future needs are. So, slide five. Just a quick overview, and there are some maps. Sorry, I should have passed them around. In case everybody wants to see it in a graphical view, there's some hard copies being distributed to city council. So Map A is a overview of the city's road assets in a geographical format. There are 57 miles of centerline miles of state trunk lines. In the city, 26 miles of county roads. And this presentation focuses at the 244 miles of city streets. So everything that's colored on that Map A, the first page of the handout on you, is a city street. And we subcategorize those into two categories, city majors and city locals, about 65 miles of city majors and 179, 180 miles of city locals. So all the rest of today's presentation is going to focus purely at those streets that are under the jurisdiction and responsibilities of City of Southfield. Just as a point of reference, you know, general broad brush estimate, if you were to build that network of roads today at about a million dollars a mile, it would be about a quarter of a billion dollar asset. And that's just, you know, some round numbers, broad brush, but I think it helps people to put into scale the significance of the importance of what we're talking about. So if you were going to build the 250 miles of centerline miles of roads today, very well could be into a quarter of a billion dollars of new construction. Next slide, six, gives a little bit of a history of some terms that we're going to use here in the presentation, so that there's a point of reference. Payment management is the general topic for trying to take the network of roads, the 250 or so miles that we're talking about, and figure out how to best manage those. So the two tools that were used is a piece of software that's made available to cities and villages and counties in the state of Michigan called Roadsoft. It's a commonly used platform for conducting payment management and payment analysis. It's made available for you by the state of Michigan. And so that's the tool that the city's been using for about eight, six or eight years now to try and track the condition of these assets and do some of the projections. And then specifically, there's another term, P A S E R, or Pacer. I think you've heard that term thrown around a little bit. It's a rating system that's been developed to try and objectively put a condition rating system to each of the roads and be able to compare and track how the network is doing and program certain fixes. So Pacer rating, on a whole, is a... Think of it as just a basic one to 10 scale, where a brand-new road, the day you put it down, has a rating of 10. And a road that's fully degraded, pretty much impassable, returning it back to gravel possibly, would be a rating of one. And then everything else is period in between. We'll talk a little bit about that further. Next slide, slide seven. As I mentioned, the city's been using Roadsoft and Pacer. I think the first data collection effort was done in 2008, and then again in 2010, 2012, and most recently, as just mentioned, within the last week, we did a spring of 2014 rating. The ratings have generally been done in combination with city staff with some assistance from the consultants. And there are some ratings done by SEMCOG for any roads in the city that would be eligible for federal funds, which is a small subset of the roads. They are done by SEMCOG. But otherwise, most of the ratings that we're looking at here today were done either by city staff or consultants. So of the 250 or so miles, 244 miles of city-owned streets, there's a quick breakdown of surface type, asphalt, concrete, or gravel. Pretty good split between asphalt, concrete roads, and only a couple of small segments of gravel remaining. So today, and if you want to start flipping ahead to map, the next two maps in the staple package, eleven by seventeen pages, those are these ratings. And we're going to take and present the same Pacer ratings to you over the next few slides. It's the same data, just being looked at in a couple different fashions to try and paint the picture. So the overall condition from the most recent rating, the one to three category of Pacer is generally viewed as four condition roads. The four to five is maybe a good or fair... I'm sorry, a fair condition. And then six and above would generally be looked at as good or very good. Generally speaking, people are trying to shoot for a goal and trying to have a system-wide network rating of around six, six to seven, if you can get up in that category compared to overall, you're pretty low. So again, I'm going to take the next few slides and just present that same data in a couple different fashions. So slide eight. This compares the '08 and the 2012 and the 2004 Pacer ratings that have been done in the City of Southfield. And you can see that category of four has generally grown over the years. The category in the middle and the category in the top, the good, has shrunk each year. So there's been a transition of the condition of the roads, which I'm sure everyone in this room knows firsthand from driving all around the city, or even the region, really, because it's not a trend that's unique to the City of Southfield by any means. The next slide, slide nine, is the same data, just presented in a little different fashion. You can see the total miles in each of the good, fair, and poor categories, and you can kind of see the trend. Slide 10. We have some data from some other cities, either from ratings that I knew the cities have been conducting, or from ratings that the consulting firms have done a product of. So I just thought, for comparison, it might be a handy slide to see how Southfield's overall condition network compared to a few other cities that might be on a similar order of magnitude and size and location. So you can see where Novi, Troy, City Romulus, Royal Oak, Westland, where their average Pacer rating for the network compares to Southfield at about 4.5. The one caveat I put on the slide here is La Bonia at the top is currently, from the last date, I was able to glean from their engineering department, they're at a 6.7. But that is after a millage that La Bonia passed, I think that was about 11 years ago now, where they've been investing, on average, about $4 million per year through that millage in their local streets. And I did pull up from their information that in 2002, when they had done a similar study preceding the millage, they were at about a 5.5 overall Pacer rating. So I feel like I'm moving along pretty fast, so if you need to just interrupt me there with this question. We want to transition a little bit then into the funding discussion. And working with city staff, we're able to pull together a quick snapshot of the DTS Highway Fund in the City of Southfield for the last five or six years. And I just, rather than focusing so much on each specific number, there were a couple of few trends here that I think are probably things you are already aware of from preparing budgets in the last several years. But the top line in this is the Act 51 Gas and Weight Tax. That's the formula that you get from the state's collection of gas tax and registration fees. And, you know, in this, in the time period we're looking at here between '08 and this last budget year, that has continued to drop from below the $5 million to about 4.6 million. That's a general trend because of the way the number of miles that people are driving, the more efficiency, better efficiency of vehicles that we drive today because the tax that's collected is fixed half per gallon. So the general collections of that have been dropping for even years preceding the time slot on the slide here. And then the next line item is the city's residential, current residential street mileage, which I think is one mil per local street. And just because of the overall property values, the capture from that has dropped from close to 3.5 million to just over 2 million. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Administrator, but I think right now, the projection for next year is that that was around 2.25.
Yeah, 2.25. The budgets for '13, '14 were built on a much lesser tax base. The actual was about 2.35, and this year's budgets are being built at about 2.3. So that's actually a budgeted number that you have there.
The next couple of lines in here, I wasn't going to each detail of it, but there's a public Act 298 of the refuse millage in the city. And then there's line items in here for miscellaneous income, interest, and other grants. And then there's a line item for the use of fund balance. And so it shows how much over the last five or six years, there's been use of the fund balance in this category. But my understanding is that the fund balance now in this fund is pretty low, if not mostly depleted. Another little quick snapshot at the bottom here is some additional funding. That's what I could glean from federal aid over the last several years, money that the city's been able to use in federal transportation dollars. And you can see the 14, 15 here at the tail end is a projection for this coming construction season based on the two rather large projects on Evergreen Road. Obviously, over $7 million, that's quite a bit for some years past. It's hard to depend upon that completely because it is competitive. We're going to talk about that a little bit later on. And because there's only a small subset of roads in the city that are eligible, after Evergreen Road gets done here through several segments, we're going to be running out of federal aid eligible roads to continue to go after that. Slide 12. Just take that same data and graph it. And I think the trend, those trends, I make sure it came across on the slide, is that the main source the city has is the combination of the current one mil per street and the Act 51 share. And generally speaking, those two are declining. They're then on a steady decline. The other uses from internal fund transfers or fund balance are really not a long-term source of funding in that category. So if there's any highlight or overall point to get across, I think that was the key. Moving on to slide 13. Just a quick few bullet points about what's going on that we know of in the state of Michigan for road funding. The state's been kicking the can about road funding for years, and nothing's been happening, although it seems like this year there's a heightened sense of discussion, so who knows where it's going to go. But there's been a lot of discussions over the last decade or so about different methods of raising new revenue through the state. Combination of increasing registration fees, increasing the gas tax, transitioning that to a wholesale tax instead of a fixed tax at the pump. EMT, trying to come up with a mechanism to measure how many miles people drive, and then you would pay based upon the miles you drive. That's more of a user charge or a user fee. Where it's going to go, no one really knows for sure. The latest stuff that I've read seems to be just falling back to raising the gas tax again. But I think one thing that seems to be clear is that waiting for the state to generate revenue to fix local streets, even if something happens, I don't see a good, strong share of anything that happens at the state level come to try and fix local streets or subdivision streets. And that's going to be, I think, a key point to keep in the back of our mind if you talk about any other needs for road funding, is that as the public sees discussions about things happening at the state level, generally speaking, a lot of that money doesn't translate into money that's going to touch the street right in front of my house. I think there's one statistic here on the bottom of the slide, that today, at the current formula rate, the state's... This last year, they had a surplus of some funds, and they threw an extra $100 million through the formula for distribution. There's been talk of, you know, several hundred million possibly for next year. Just as a point of reference, if $100 million is passed statewide and goes through the Act 51 formula, it translates to about $300,000 for the City of Southfield. So when you see some big numbers being talked about at the state level of 200 million, 300 million, 500 million, whatever it is, just kind of multiply that in increments of 100 million, and you can see what it does for funding at the City of Southfield. And you actually have a lot of miles of road compared to your... More than most of the other communities in the state. So you're getting, compared to local governments, you're getting a pretty good share. But still, that's what the formula deals with. About 40% of the formula overall goes to state routes. 40% goes to counties, and then the other share is distributed to the city of the... Transition on a little bit then to projections. And I'm trying to get too wrapped up in some of the technical pieces of payment management. But the next couple of slides try to illustrate a point that I think is important to also understand. And that's just how to best invest in the road assets. The analogy is always kind of drawn between this and maintaining your car. Buy a car, you drive it off a lot. You know, you don't wait till it's completely dead before you go out and buy another car. Usually, between you change the oil, change the tires, change transmission fluid, whatever that might be, because you know that you're going to get the best value over the long haul of that asset. So payment management's very similar. And the way that the program works and the theory that beats behind it is to try to apply the right fix at the right time through the life of the payment cycle. This table takes the Pacer ratings 10 through 1, and just gives a little bit of an example of the types of treatments that you might be applying at various levels. So up the top end, you're not going to do anything, but if it gets down into the eight, seven, or six, you start doing some crack sealing, maybe some thin overlays. You start getting down to the fours and fives, you start doing what we might term rehabilitation, where we crush the road and put a new cap on it. And then really, once you're down into poor, three and below is where you consider it, that it's shot, and you're going to let it die, and then we're going to rebuild it completely. Graphically, that kind of looks like, or we attempt to illustrate it a little bit with the next two slides. So slide 15 says if I have a payment over about 35 years, and I'm going to start out here when it's a brand-new road, and I'm going to kind of run it until it's shot, it's down by three or four, and then I'm going to rebuild that entire road back up again, and we get about another 15, could be 20 years, depending on what type of payment. But this is really kind of meant to just be a graphical example. But over the long haul now, I've gotten 35 years of it, and I've rebuilt the road twice. If I took the same kind of examples on the next year, and at the appropriate time, maybe four, five years in, six years in, I do some crack sealing, and I can slightly increase the Pacer rating in the road because I've maintained it a little bit. And then maybe another five, 10 years down the road, I do a thin overlay on the project. And then maybe 10 more years in, I grind up the road and put a cap on it, what we call a strong or a structural rehabilitation. But over the lifespan of that road now for 36 years, I've invested less than I did by running into failure and rebuilding completely. Those are some harder points, I guess, sometimes to particularly get across for the public because oftentimes, the public sees, you know, an overlay going down, and then wonders why, just within 10 years, we're going back and we're doing another overlay. And they start to wonder, well, you know, I got other roads that I haven't touched for 30 years or 25 years. Why not? You know? And so I think that if there's anything that's on a big-picture scale, it's to understand that there really is some science and rationale behind doing crack sealing and overlays, that we expected the pavement to start to have cracks at a certain time in, and it's applying that right fix. Everybody's going to want the brand-new 25, 30-year pavement right in front of their house, and yet the smarter way to manage that asset may be to do the maintenance. With a concrete road, it's going to be a series of patches. Over 20 years, I might go in there two or three times and fix some patches on the ground and start to fail. We now then took the payment management software, tried to run some projections. So the next couple of slides, 17, 18, primarily, are some graphical representations of making 4 million, 6 million, 8 million, 10 million, right on up through types of investments in the city road network. And this is the entire 244 miles of city roads. So at a $4 million, which is the bottom curve on this projection, it shows that over the next 10 years, you're going to hopefully maintain or slightly decrease the overall rating, Pacer rating of the network as a whole. And what's important to know is that in that category, you're still going to continue to increase the number of roads or the miles of roads that are in that poor condition. And those are going to be the people who have to drive those or are in poor condition are generally the ones that are the most local, because it's going to get, you know, going to get worse and worse. And there's some examples of those roads in the city today. At 6 million, you start to see a little bit of an increase. At 8 million and 10 million, you can see a better increase. We're trying to zero in on the right model to be able to move the needle over 10 years and see an increase in the overall network condition, and also see the number of miles that are in the poor condition start to decrease. In other words, to a point where the money would get programmed to do reconstructions. And slide 18, this one. You start to see that at the $10 million investment level, you really do see, currently, you've got just under, about 25% between 45 and 30 in the poor condition. And here, at $10 million per year, that was built, that's still there, but you're going to start to see this amount of miles in the poor condition decline. If you can get up even higher than that, you can get to those roads and they can be reconstructed sooner. But I think anything less than that, you're just going to continue to see the miles that are poor, which again, will be some of the most local people that are driving on those roads, continue to get worse. Slide 19. Probably spoken to some of the points over there, I was just trying to put it in words what we're talking about. So at the bottom end of that, four to $5 million per year, you are going to see a slight decrease in the average Pacer rating, and the miles that are in poor condition are going to continue to increase quite a bit. At about $8 million per year, you do see the overall network rating increase because you're going to be doing overlays on some of those streets that need overlays. But the category they're in, poor, are still not going to be touched to the point where they're going to, you're going to see that decline. But at $10 million per year, you do start to see some reconstruction being programmed on some of those poor streets. Two key points I guess I'll also make while we're talking about these projections, that the model is just looking at the overall area of pavement that you have today. So that 244 miles of roads, some are two-lane, three-lane, or four-lane, five-lane, whatever. We're not talking about doing a lot of enhancements and other things. I mean, quite often, as councilmen, when you get into reconstructing a road or touching a road, it makes logical sense to talk about doing lots of other things that are nice to do while you're rebuilding that road. These numbers are based on just maintaining the pavement area that you have today. So, you know, decorative enhancements, street gates, pedestrian facilities, now motorized improvements, upgrading the traffic signals, if there's bridges and culverts that need major rehabilitation, if there are areas that may need capacity improvements, those types of improvements could potentially all be above and beyond some of the projections that we're talking about here. And that's good to keep in mind, so that if you do move ahead with funding changes, you understand what the intentions of those projections were. And then also, as money, as projects come up, like the interstate projects or telegraph road projects on state trunk lines, the current, the way the law is currently written, and there's been some talk of changing that. But today, the city still has to participate in those projects to a small share. Small is an overall percentage, but still, they can be, as I think this councilman will, they can be pretty significant shares. And those types of things have not also been included in these projections. Any questions? I guess the next slide kind of wraps up.
I have some, but we'll wait until...
Okay.
I think we should have done an entertaining question at this point as it relates to infrastructure protection.
I don't know how to do that. Do you have a second phase of a presentation?
You know, the last slide right here talks about how that translates into millage. I think the administrator asked us to pull together that conversion, and then that kind of wraps up the roads piece of it. So maybe I'll touch this real quick, and then for discussion about millage, we took the $10 million per year and... ten million per year and, and today, in your current highway budget, it's hard to tell exactly, but roughly somewhere between a million or two million is able to get used in capital maintenance or heavy capital work. So that could count towards the, the ten million dollar need that we were talking about. As we get into the presentation, another strategy is to be coordinating improvements for water main and sewer improvements, utility work in some of these neighborhoods that need work, so that while you're in there doing one, you can get some efficiency or, or cover some of the costs for repairing pavement if you have to touch it for the water main. And so some strategic use of some of the water funds may help, may help offset some of that need. Assuming that those were each about two million dollars per year, that leaves about six million dollars. And it's my understanding that at the, at your current rate, a mill generates about one point two five million, is that, I think that was correct from our discussions.
Correct.
Right? So at three mills, it generates about six point seven, seven five million per year for funding. And then the last bullet just kind of illustrates what that means for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With that, I think that kind of wraps up the roads piece of the presentation if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me just start out by, by saying this, that, you know, over the years, we've had ratings of our roads for years. Public works has always been ingenious, has always brought us up to date, usually once a year showing what, what roads are, who need, what the rating was, and, and then you could schedule it to be repaired, whether it be concrete, whether it be core reconstruction or, or diamond cut or whatever we did. And through the years, what's happened is, as far as I'm concerned, is that we schedule a certain portion of the city to get done, we invest the money in it, and, and the, the project never gets completed properly. In other words, you know, I can go back to, to, to the map that we have here, and we still have problems with Inkster Road. So, so in a scale of, you know, if you had a perfect way of packing this, you would schedule Inkster Road and then whatever be, and the other roads, say Franklin, then, then Inkster, then Evergreen, and whatever have you. And you would eventually, in a ten-year period of time, or even a fifteen-year period of time, you would have done all the secondary roads and completed them. And, and if you did the right maintenance on them, they would still be pretty good condition, regardless of the zero weather and the winters that we have. What's happened is that, that the jobs that are being completed are not completed properly. And I can go back to, to five years ago, we had Telegraph Road, for example. And, you know, we spent money on Telegraph Road, they put asphalt in, asphalt's falling apart. You go underneath the bridge, I-696, it's completely gone. Then there's a crack goes from the bridge almost all the way to Twelve Mile Road in the, in the northbound east lane. Right? Five years. And you look at Inkster, we're still messing around with Inkster. And, and then last year, we did Nine Mile, and we're still messing around with Nine Mile. So when you look at, at, you know, if I looked at that and I said, okay, what is, how do I attack this, this problem with these roads? And, and everything would be on, on this list over here to get completed, do it right. And either the inspections or the way they're constructed or reconstructed or whatever's happening with a, the product that's put down, something is not working. And as far as I'm concerned, the money we put into it is just throwing right down the drain. You look at Nine Mile between Beach and Inkster, you know, that was done, the bridge was done, Nine Mile has fallen apart. Nine Mile between Greenfield and, and the expressway isn't working. I think something has to be done to look at what we have done so far and what have we messed up on, so that when it's done, it's done. And we're still on, I think, seven years on the, on maybe on that Telegraph Road getting the, that water over to, to the islands. So looking at from my point of view, everything you're saying is, is great, but unless it's done right first time and maintained, whether it needs seal coating or powder to cracks or whatever have you, we're right back to, to, you know, number A, B, or one, stage one, and we're not going anywhere. You know, we just keep pouring more money into it. You know, I mean, frankly, what was a million-dollar job, we end up paying eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars and, and to fix it the right way. It's almost as much as the road cost. Inkster Road still cracking, still filling potholes on it. It was all done, what, it's two years ago, right? Two years. Now we had Nine Mile done last year, they, they waited too late in the season, the asphalt was cold or whatever it was. It's, it's garbage. It's not, it's not the kind of a road you want to accept. And so I'm sitting here looking at everything that you're talking about and everything is great, but until we can get one job done and get it behind us and say, okay, I got that road five years, or ten years, or whatever it is, then, then I can go on to the next one. But I can't be three projects behind and looking forward and saying, okay, where do I go from now? Look at Evergreen Road, supposed to start in May, now it's June because the contractor did put his papers in. For now, I'm going to go into winter months, June, July, August, September, we're going to be in the, in, in the winters. If we have early winter, we're going to have snow on the ground before they finish Evergreen Road. And, and, and so that's what we have to really address, is, is how can we get whatever we approve done so that we can move on to the next one, next stage, or the next stage, and the next stage? And I looked at Eleven Mile Road, we're talking about in front of where Blue Cross Busheer was, and, and I at first just looked for the, the acceleration lane, but Eleven Mile Road's gone all the way east to the surface that was already done. In other words, from Inkster Road to that break wherever it is, everything road is gone. It needs total reconstruction. But now I, I'm saying, how do I catch up and buying some time on what I have and, and having, oh, and I mentioned Civic Center Drive, that thing was supposed to be beautiful. You know, we put that little skin on it and all that so it won't have cracks. You go right here to Evergreen and, and Civic Center Drive and it's cracking up. And so, you know, they did Last Year Road, you go follow down Last Year Road, and it's cracking. And that was just done, what, two years ago, Eleven Mile County job? So I, I, you're hearing frustration from me, who'd been around a long time, and I'm saying even when Bookie was here, we had his rating, we set a schedule, this job is, is scheduled, this one is done, you know, if you call, now call it shovel ready, and you move on and you move on and on. But, but what we need now is total reconstruction and catch up on the stuff that we are supposed to have done right. And then we got to look back at the stuff that's fallen apart today and, and somehow find money to do that. Look at Greenfield Road, we socked a million dollars into that just to make the county come back on that job. I mentioned that only because that million dollars could have gone for our city roads, you know? And, and here we are stuck with paying obligations that the county and state have, just so you want your city to look neat and clean, you know? And so I don't know how, you know, somebody told me if you're a Democrat, you get asphalt, if you get concrete, you get, you're a Republican. I'd ask them, why the hell do they do this physical language? Concrete up at, at Twelve Mile Road north and then allow the asphalt down here where it's already falling apart. There's a hole in Nine Mile, Myron knows, you go to the acceleration lane, you got a, got a four-inch hole, five-inch hole there already.
Another one that's getting bigger. So they're bigger at Swanson, too.
So, so, you know, so I guess everybody here is in engineering and, and, and trying to help us out, but, but I think the, the first thing that I want to deal with is how do we get something that we approved here to get done, done in a fashion that we can accept it and we're not going to have a problem with it, if we do the right maintenance on it, we can buy ourselves five, ten years of it. And, and, you know, I might tell them, here, we got to go back to Inkster, so Inkster's on here, and you got to go, Franklin Road is still a mess, and Nine Mile Road is a mess. And, and, and I think is, you know, I don't know, Twelve Mile Road, you go to Twelve Mile Road, you know, and they just get, they interchange Twelve Mile Road and I sure, that's already cracked up. I mean, I got these roads as much as I can every week, and I look at them, I make notes. And, and it's really embarrassing to say, hey, you know what, we did this job, I'm really glad it's nice, clean, it's neat, whatever. The last thing, not to, the only one speaking here, is also, why in the world don't we examine why we have any of these problems that I, that I have mentioned? And, and I think primarily that, that they're not, they're rushing the jobs, as, as when they're on concrete, they're pulling up the, the forms too early before they, before the cement has really cured, because if you go down any road, including Last Year Road, it was just done, you know, where they, the middle road is, is all cracked already, so now they'll put coal pack. And then they, they cut, there isn't a answer for me, why do they get in the cut every thirty feet along the road? You do it in Florida, but you don't have the weather here. You do two seventy-five, you know, thump, 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 you think you got a flat tire. I mean, something is wrong with, with how we build roads in Michigan, so that you don't have this up and down all the time. And, and, you know, and we talked about some time ago, having fabric in, in cement. I don't know if they do that anymore, maybe somebody can answer that. They put fiber, fabric into the concrete mix, and you do that in Germany and it holds, it holds the roads together better. But you look at every, every road, no matter what it is, wherever it's cut, now it's, it falls apart, then you put blacktop, then you put coal pack, and, and then the road is screwed up and gone. And now you go the other way, you know, Greenfield Road is a real good example, where they cut it every so often, now it's a railroad track, you know, thump, 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 totally disarrayed. So something's either wrong with design, how we're building roads today, with the product they're putting on the road, but we're not getting any life on these roads. And if it continues the way we're going, you know, we're going to spend all our time just trying to fix what we already built up. And anyways, and, and I guess I, I'm looking for not only a strategy, but looking at Southfield, what is the strategy that we have to bring the road that we did construct back up to something that is supposed to be right, whether, we can, I don't know, how we can fix what we have done, bring those up to date, and then, then code it so that we can move on to new projects? But, you know, I was even thinking doing what they did in Burnham, I don't, Mike's not here, anyway, they showed me where they skinned asphalt, they just put it down in base, but you give them three years, five years, your residential, there you are, I don't know how they, what they call that.
Chip seal.
But, you know, and maybe, maybe that's how we're going to catch up. You know, you can do more miles with, with less money, and with the same amount of money and, and you get roads looking nice, because nobody wants to do business in a town, you know? You go into town center and you drive down every green road every day, pretty soon you get a mindset, you know, it's a man, this place is falling apart. And, and it affects people moving into the city. And, and so roads are very important, infrastructure is very important. I just looked at the Golden Bridge they built on Fifteen Mile Road between, between Last Year and Telegraph. My God, and I, I can't believe that bridge, Bingham Farms, I mean, it's all rotting and it's all beautifully, I don't know who's seen it, but I don't know what that sucker costs, but I, I see the bridge is built, and it comes to our city and it looks like, like this kid, and then get out and move on.
You're absolutely right. Bingham Farm President was bragging about that bridge and we can't even.
Yeah, but it, you know, you go, I just come from Florida, you know, they have bridges over Florida and Ohio, they even have pot plants across the, the, I don't know where, where all this money is going and not to Michigan, but, I mean, it's almost to the point where they're saying, hey, look what the heck we're doing here, and when you drive by, and there, each bridge is, is like a pilot product. In other words, it's like somebody says, okay, we'll do a new design here, and you go and see five of them in a row. Go through Tampa and you're poor, I mean, all the money that is being spent, and you look at Michigan roads, you come in from Ohio and, and you don't even want to go to that Michigan, pure Michigan.
I want to let you answer the question that, if you can, from Mr. Cobby. From Mr. Cobby, we are going to be covering in the agenda, underbowl, just the projects we're wanting and the quality of the roads, and that's on our agenda at, at the end of the year.
I'll, I'll take a few comments and if anybody else in the team wants to add in. And you did cover a, a number of topics, a number of projects. I guess I, I'll try to maybe articulate a few generalized points. I, I, I think there always is an effort to look at what has worked in the industry and what, more importantly, what hasn't worked in the industry and, and try and always improve that. I will say as some general trends, there's been a lot of effort in the last couple of decades to use more and more recycled materials in a lot of the pavements that we make today. And for obvious reasons, that, that's more sustainable, we've got tons and tons and tons, literally, of concrete and asphalt pavements that we're grinding up and, and rebuilding new roads. And it'd be nice to be able to say that we can reuse a lot of that product. That certainly did spark a lot of unknowns as far as how some of that material would perform in the pavements. And so particularly in concrete, in the nineties, late nineties, really two thousands, there were a lot of premature failures in concrete. And since then, there's been a lot of adjustments in some of the specifications to, to either limit the amount of recycled material that goes into it or add other things to try and combat some of the things that the recycled material does. And the same thing with, with asphalt pavements, some specs now allow to forty, fifty, sixty percent of recycled aggregates in the materials. And it's not fully known exactly what that does to the performance of the pavement in the long run. So we've been trying to control that with giving some modifications to specifications just in the city of Southfield or other local, local municipalities to limit the amount of recycled asphalt that goes into a brand-new mix for some of those reasons. So I think there is always an effort to try and improve. You also, you mentioned the, you know, doing things that will stretch the dollar a little bit, like doing cave seals and flurry seals and some micro-surfacing. Those are thin surface treatments to try and seal up the surface of the pavement, help the moisture from getting in and really blowing it apart. I know the city's been trying some of that up in second twelve, thirteen area a little bit, see how it works. The downside of that is, and some of these thin overlays, the downside is it does fail quicker. I mean, it's, it's intended to. If I do a, a milling overlay kind of, like on Civic Center here a couple summers ago, we're going to see cracks come through the asphalt pavement within the first five years. It's, I mean, it's expected, it's known to happen. But if I can get on that with an overlay sooner as opposed to waiting for it to be a complete reconstruct, I could go out here and mill and re-surface Civic Center four or five times in the next twenty-five years and still be further ahead than if I completely ripped it out and built it. I mean, those may be generalizations, but that, that concept is, is what I'm trying to get across. So it does still, at the end of the day, come down a lot of it to limited, limited funding. With Michigan, I think it's about nineteen cents per state gas pack today compared to some of the other states like Florida or even in our region, Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, we're, we're half as much as, as most for what kind of funding we generate for the roads overall, which puts more and more pressure on them to try and do, do more with less. The, the federal pool for Oakland County is down to about sixteen or seventeen million dollars per year. That's what all of the communities in Oakland County are competing over for their federally eligible roads. If you go back fifteen, twenty years, that, that pot of money used to reconstruct several miles of road every year, you could see major freeway, or major secondary streets being reconstructed. Now, pretty much the entire pot is being used for milling overlays, what we term Uh, now, pretty much the entire pot is being used for mill and overlays, what we term these, these 3R jobs, uh, just because that's, that's, that's all the money that's available. So, I don't know that that's answering all of your questions directly, but it's a few general, general points.
One of the things, you know, using Lasher Road as the example, though, I mean, something, maybe even from the engineering standpoint, even, even things that are being bought through the municipality, and, you know, they roll it out, and, you know, come to the room, and we show you everything, but it looks crazy. Unless you really have time to just digest it and look at it, you know, I mean, I, I just cannot even believe what they did on Lasher Road. I mean, it's, it's so crazy, they, they took and, and took up all the, the driveways, and some they did cement, and some they did asphalt, and some, they had a, a, a in and out on their driveway, one was asphalt, one's concrete. I mean, the, the concrete wasn't even cured, you stay on, stay off of the road, and they're bringing asphalt trucks and, and rollers onto this new concrete to put asphalt in the driveway. And, and the asphalt stuff is big stones, and, you know, and all coming out now on the concrete, uh, uh, street, and cars are running over it, now pitting the concrete. If you really look at this seriously, I mean, the way these things are engineered, and then they had a road that goes down the northwest, uh, north-south on the east side of the street, so that residents can get into their houses, so they build a, a road, but when it got completed, they took the driveway and cut it in half, and in some cases, they got half asphalt and half concrete of the same drive. And, I mean, then you go down a 12 Mile and Nevergreen, and they put asphalt, and I swear, the guy who put it on the west side of Lasher Road, that oughta be drunk or something, because that asphalt winds in and out in the middle of a lane, I mean, it doesn't even make sense, and it's all coming apart now. And so, somehow, we're really, if people who can't look into the design that closely, you know, maybe don't understand the, the kind of construction of them, or don't peel into every little segment, you guys have to come up with, with something that is, is pure, meaning that when it is done, we can walk back, as Jim Schrepp used to say, and celebrate. And, and everything that is done, we can't celebrate. And, and, and I think it, you know, both engineering firms here are here, somebody's gotta step up to the front and, and be partners with us, so they can celebrate that job as much as us. And if it means, you know, that Dan doesn't get the job, you know, I don't care about Dan getting every job in the state, we, we went out, every little Italian contractor himself, and he gets everything now, and they don't know how to pour cement, they don't know how to pour asphalt anymore. So, I don't know where we're going with this, I mean, I'm not gonna throw money in this stuff anymore unless, I'll tell you, we're gonna talk about bonding, and I'll tell you, anybody that does any work in this city is, is gonna have to either do a perfect job, or they're not gonna get paid.
There are a few slides, too, to try and address some of the plans for, uh, ramping up quality control on the projects that are gonna be upcoming for this year, and bond and warranty, so we don't know if you wanna put some of that discussion off till we get to that, or...
Yeah, we'll do that.
Was there any else?
Um, I'm hoping it's me.
Okay. Everything Don said was correct, correct 10 times. I was gonna say some of that, but I won't repeat it. It comes down to when the contractor gets the bid, and he comes to these roads, he puts a bunch of crap in that road, it doesn't hold up, and we don't, we don't have oversight on that, we don't, if they test it, they tell it's okay, but it's not. So they're getting their money for nothing. And that's what's happening with all our roads. Don said everything correctly, and, uh, I can't even remember what he said, but correct. Uh, but we have to, we have to do something about the contractors after they get the bid, and they start their work. I think that's where your problems are, they're putting down glue. And I see it, I saw a lot of it in the, in the subdivision a couple of years ago, and then when the contractor comes to get his money back, they give it back to him in two months. He's not responsible after that. Why? I saw the thing myself, I saw the road piling up in the corners and everything, sure, let's do it over, pay me. What, what's the matter with us, don't, don't we have people, the oversight? All this, all this sounds good, but it's not real. The realism when it comes to building the damn road isn't the same as you put it out on paper, that it, that it should be. So who's honest and who's dishonest? What's happening to us? We have no say, and we, we don't even know what's happening to us, so you see what's happening. So what are we going to do? Do the same thing?
Hopefully that, we're gonna address these concerns again, Mr. Lance, when we get to...
I don't see how you can, you have all these engineers and giving us a beautiful story, do they have any responsibility in the actual putting the pavement down, or putting the cement in?
The engineers?
Yes.
It's, it's the higher level of inspection.
There's, there's some of your, there's some of your problems. Yeah.
No, no, I think we want to, go ahead, Don.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to speak to some of the projects that we were talking about, um, that Mr. Ficassi specifically mentioned, these are projects where we're trying to extend the overall life of that road, um, none of those projects were full reconstruction projects. So those are projects that, you know, we're expecting to get a 15-year life out of, coming back and seeing cracks in a road that you've just resurfaced as opposed to reconstruct, uh, you know, that's not unusual to see. Now, the fact that you say there's cracks out in Lasher Road, that was a total reconstruction, I mean, that was a road commission project, but those are the kind of comments that really concern me, and, and that I've been asking questions to the county about, a lot of research is really done at the state level, and that, you know, they budget, and they have divisions for research to try and address when they start seeing repetitive problems like that. Um, yeah.
Please, if they put asphalt down on Telegraph, and they didn't want it to crack, and they, they didn't want it to pit in their potholes, then they should've said they should do a reconstruction of it as they did north of us. Instead, they just lay down asphalt, whatever they do as far as base on that isn't working. And so, they're gonna make us hang with that asphalt job that they have, so whether it cracks or not cracks, it's not cracking north of 12 Mile Road, I'll tell you, towards concrete, so why should it be cracking in, going into the bridge of I-696? If you're in the right lane, you're going a hole.
Right, I mean, I'm not...
So I'm trying to figure out, I understand what you're saying, but, but then somebody ought to say that expect this thing to crack in five years.
And that's part of what we wanted to also convey tonight, or this afternoon, is that we need to adjust our expectations to what we're doing to the roads, because when a mill and overlay comes through, I mean, it's, that's a brand-new surface, it looks flawless, and for all anyone knows, that could be a, a brand-new asphalt reconstructed road that we're expecting a 20-year life out of, but these are mill and overlays, and, you know, we do some heavy mill and overlays, meaning like we're going to mill down four inches, so we're trying to get as much life, but it's a, it's a big cost and benefit, um, formula that we're trying to extend, extend the life here. And I'm sure that's what MDOT was doing, they probably, that piece in Southfield was probably originally constructed at a different time, it was in better shape than 12 Mile North, and so they're going to try and go with that mill and overlay to extend that pavement life, and if the part to the north was reconstructed, it's because it, they didn't have any other choice. I mean, that's typically gonna be any road agency's approach, is to try and stretch these dollars as far as we can.
Well, I, I know what you're saying, but, but if something is going to fail in three years, and I'm spending the kind of money I am per mile to fix it, then I've got to make a different judgment on what I'm gonna put down. If I have to put down total reconstruction, and I get 20 years or 15 years out, I might get it, get it off doing a full reconstruction, and doing a patch job, and having a poor road after two years, until I can get back to it, and I'm, I'm gonna fill it just full of coal pack and, and garbage until, until I can get back to it. So in other words, if, if, whatever they're putting down is not gonna last us enough time to, to get through the city and get everything up to normal, then, then what we are committing to have happen isn't, as far as I'm concerned, is not the call I wanna make. And, and just like I was saying about Evergreen Road, now, I don't care what they say, if they haven't got this thing ready to go in June, like it's supposed to be starting, they're not gonna finish it this year.
Well, I'll have an update on that later.
Well, I'll tell you, knowing the way things go around here, it's not gonna be completed this year, and I think the engineers will tell you that.
Um, no, I just have one more point that occurs to me. Oh, I think I was gonna speak to, all these major roads that are federally eligible roads, that competitive pot of money that Rep spoke to at the federal aid committee level for Oakland County, you know, each year when we apply to those, you know, these applications are long and somewhat complex, and you're trying to, our consultants are very good at trying to get the most points as we can on our application, and we get a lot of points for spending the smallest amount of money per square yard of pavement. So, you know, oftentimes, we're, even in our applications, we're maybe saying, we're just gonna do this, knowing that once we actually get that funding, we may throw in some extra money from the city to beef it up, um, but like this last year, when we were applying for 2017 project, the federal aid committee as a whole, as soon as the meeting started, said we are not funding any 4R, which are reconstructions, we're not funding any 4R roads, we're gonna use all of our money on 3R projects to extend the dollars. Um, our Evergreen Road project out here, that was really the last 4R project that the federal aid committee funded, and typically they will, when they were funding a 4R project, they would fund oftentimes just one or two 4R projects for that entire fiscal year's funding, and then all the rest, because reconstructions are so much more. 4Rs are reconstruction.
3R is resurfacing.
Yeah, 3R is typically a mill and overlay type of fix, so they, they're, the way they have the points set up is they're almost forcing these best management practices for extending the life of the roads, so when we're competing for funding, we have a much better chance of getting funding for these 3R or resurfacing jobs as opposed to the total reconstruction.
So is that all of your questions? Is that all for you? Tim?
No, it doesn't feel you saying anything or talking, it doesn't mean anything.
Well, we still, we've got a lot of items to cover in this agenda, and one of your concerns there is project warranty, so it's coming up.
Your quality, and I just say this to you, not caring what they put down.
Right. So...
I was like taking a test this morning.
I have a question going back to slide 18, so I don't know if you wanna pull that up. Uh, so, and you might, you might have mentioned this, if we spend nothing, or the current amount, we have less roads in poor condition than if we spend a little bit, so it's obvious that, that the trend is to bring fair roads to good, not poor roads to fair. And I was wondering, I, I mean, I'm sure there's a logic behind that, and I was wondering if you could walk me through that, and I'll say why. Uh, you know, I, on our last meeting, we talked about that we're doing 13 mi, or we're doing Evergreen Road between 12 and 13 Mile, which apparently is poor on here, I don't agree that that's in poor condition compared to some of the other roads in the country. Um, so as we're putting down monies to reconstruct, you know, fair roads to bring them to good, we're gonna get asked questions about the poor roads in the city. So we have to have an answer as to why not as bad roads are getting more attention before the real bottom are getting the attention. So that, that's my first question, I do have another, so.
Do you want to jump on that one first?
Sure. Go ahead.
Uh, that's a great question, Tom, from Ross, I think that, that, that point is a key concept that's, that's tough with some of these pavement management, uh, uh, programs, and it's not unique to this community, many things across the board. But if, the theory being, if I had $1 to invest in my road today, what would be my best use of that dollar? And, and the premise for this is, if I can go seal some cracks, I'm gonna get the best bang for my buck, as far as the overall health of my network, then I will be to try and put that dollar into a brand-new, removed and replaced square foot or square yard of, of, of concrete. Um, and knowing that I only have a dollar, then where do I wanna go, where do I wanna go spend that? And crack sealing above and beyond is the cheapest bang for the buck that you can have. Then you move up into some of the surface treatments, we talked about doing thin, like one inch, I think, uh, Tom Ficassi mentioned Birmingham, doing some, some surface treatments, you know, thin micro-surfacing treatments, or a real thin, thin, another cap, it's just to try to preserve that, it would be like, and, you know, analogous to the oil changes on your car, you can have a Ford you own car, but if I can keep changing the oil in it, maybe I can get another couple more years on it. Um, and so, when, when the model's trying to program this money here on the lower end, there isn't enough money to touch the poor streets, so it's, it's forcing the money to be programmed to do more of the maintenance activities that are a better bang for the buck, and in the meantime, the other roads that aren't, because of the funding limit, are, they're gonna sit there and rot even further, so you're gonna see some of the fairs slip down into the poor, you're hoping to put more of the fairs up into the good, and that's a, that's a hard thing.
It's, no, it's really hard to follow. Um, you know, if there's logic behind it, I'm, I'm okay with using data-driven reasons to do road reconstruction, but I'll, I'll give you a clear example. Um, and I really don't agree that Evergreen Road in that area between 12 and 13 is poor, and it's poor on this map, I, I really don't agree with that, especially compared to Rock Creek, I don't know if anyone's driven down Rock Creek, certainly not a major road, but people drive down Rock Creek, there are holes in Rock Creek, and it, it was up to me to put the money to invest on a mile stretch between 12 and 13 on Evergreen, or that mile around Rock Creek, I'd rather see Rock Creek get the attention than a few cracks on, on, on Evergreen, than holes in the road, um, on Rock Creek, or, uh, uh, not Rock Creek, um, Lee Baker, I don't know, my mind is all over this place, Lee Baker, I, I knew it was a two-worded road, Lee Baker has holes in it, um, and I'd rather put the money in Lee Baker, that mile stretch, which is crumbling if you drive down it, than Evergreen, which I really don't think is that bad. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm not the engineer, and I'm not the, the road, the road person.
Just a couple of quick comments related to that. One, um, I did bring the map along from my habit, but as I mentioned, only a small subset of the city streets, which are just gonna be a small subset of the city majors, are actually eligible for federal aid funding. So in many cases, like Evergreen, for example, because there is this pot of federal aid, as, uh, city engineer Mr. Holt pointed out, we're strategically trying to go after funding whenever we can to touch some of those stretches of road, that same dollar that we might be getting for, we might be getting for Evergreen Road between 12 and 13 Mile Road, wouldn't be, wouldn't qualify to be able to be spent on a local street. So that's one of the dynamics that's at play a little bit. Um, and then, you know, back to this point again, in, in practicality, this isn't usually what happens, I mean, there's enough concern for that road that's just physically impassable, that eventually you're gonna have to touch it, and so what really happens then is you end up postponing the preventative maintenance, or the, the thin overlays or the things that ideally you would wanna be doing on the other streets. And so, this is, you know, just trying to illustrate that, and if there was gonna be a change in funding level, and you really wanna start having enough to do the overlays, and the steel coating, and the maintenance, and the sealing that you wanna do, and still get to some of those that really need to be reconstructed, unfortunately, because of the condition today, you really, unfortunately, probably need to be up in that $10 million range to be touching it. And I, I know there's concern and criticism over how some of the money has been used, or how the projects have been delivered, I guess I would say, most of the miles of road are in the local street category, most of the projects that we're talking about here on Franklin and Inkster, aren't even in that local streets category, because right now, at the current funding level, there hasn't even been much money to put towards local streets. So I think last year, Edwards Street up in sections 12 and 13 got reconstructed, I think that came out fairly well, we're monitoring to just make sure that was a new concrete road, but there hasn't been a lot, a lot of concern unfortunately to the locals, just because the funding hasn't been there.
Okay. I mean, you answered my question, that's an answer that I guess I can get, um, I do wanna say the administration that I really don't see, you know, if we can find, I, I'm I'm sure there are other priorities other than that stretch of Evergreen Road, in my opinion. Then I have a second question going back to slide thirteen. Has there been discussion, walk me through, and I don't, you know, I don't know how deep you wanna dig. In terms of the miles of road is how the funding is allocated, what about the usage on the road? We have three times the population that goes through Southfield than the residents of Southfield. Our roads are more used than up north or, you know, anywhere else. So is it, is the funding allocated based on just the mileage of roads that are eligible for state funding? Or is there an equation in there that, that the amount of cars, the amount of traffic that goes over these roads? Cause I think that would boost Southfield up on the list, or at least should.
Um, I'm not a hundred percent expert on Act Fifty-One, there may be some other few or more, but I can tell you on a broad brush scale, the two largest portions of the dollar that go through the Act Fifty-One formula go to the DOT or the local missions first before cities. So right off the bat, you're getting smaller than one third share of the ton overall. And then secondary, the correlation to use of the road or volume of traffic is primarily based by the classification of the road. So every road across the country has what's called the NSB, National Functional Classification, ranging from the local street to front your house all the way to the interstate. And the formula programs the higher dollars per mile of road at the higher you are than classification term. So generally, cities, the streets that are under your jurisdiction here that are city locals or city majors are at the bottom end of that. And I don't know the dollars per mile off the top of my head, but it's a fraction of what the state would get for a trunkload. The other factors that do come into play a little bit, the population in the community does play in, so, you know, the same two cities with the same miles of road, but one with a higher population gets a slightly higher proportion of the value.
Yeah, our issue there is that we have, you know, two hundred thousand people here during the day, but on the census, we're seventy-two. All right, those are my questions.
Okay. Mr. Focassi?
Yes. I'd like to, uh, piggyback on something that Jeremy has said, and that is, spending the money to go from, from fair to good seems to be more of a popular decision than moving from poor to fair. And there are two ways to look at it. One is, once a road gets in poor condition, doesn't really matter how long you built, how long you ignore that. Once it's poor, it can't get any worse. So it can go all the way from some potholes to gravel and it won't get any worse. So in order to, and you spend your money on moving up the rest of the roads or some other roads from fair to good, so when you do the mathematical calculation, the average of the roads comes out to be in the five or the six range, which says, hey, your roads are, on the average, are pretty good. But we have to face the folks that drive up and down the gravel roads. And, now, I haven't been on, on Evergreen Road, no, I haven't been on Evergreen Road, kind of thirteen mile, so I'm taking Jeremy's word for it. But I have come off the lodge, up along Nine Mile, to get to Nine Mile. And is that ours?
The service drives.
The service drives?
No. No comparison between the two.
Yeah.
And they're both poor.
Yeah. And, I mean, that's like driving through Beirut in the worst days.
In the gravel.
Yeah. And, uh, something needs to be done to that because the amount of traffic that's on that road coming off the lodge up to Nine Mile Road says, "I'm coming into Southfield and this is the kind of roads that I'm dealing with coming into Southfield." So whatever the strategy has been for fixing roads, I think that needs to be reevaluated. Now, the other question I have is, the other comments that I have is, when we talk about the roads being repaired and then seeming to fall apart pretty quickly, wasn't even, the asphalt wasn't even cold on the Ince Road, we were out there looking at the cracks. So when Lee says that, yeah, you can expect that, I don't think you can expect it as quickly as we saw it. Besides that, we had to read, spend a lot of money on the, the ditches because the filter government says that, you know, they almost have to be straight drop off and no, no shoulders. So we spent extra money out there on that. But to me, we're either getting substandard, substandard material, quality construction, ineffective inspection, or poor engineering, or a combination of all of those that make these roads start to deteriorate so quickly after we spend all the, all the money. And I agree with Mr. Focassi that we're gonna spend all of our money packing up the roads that we just fixed, and we won't have any money left to do another road because of either one of these or a multiple of these things. My question is, is it possible to get the equivalent of a forensic engineer to come out and inspect these roads, do whatever testing a forensic engineer would do to find out if we're doing something wrong, or are our expectations way too high? Because all of, I think all of the, the explanations that you can give us, when we all walk out of this room, we're still gonna say, "We're getting bad jobs on our roads."
The, I guess, to some degree, forensics or post-project analysis to understand what is, what happened work is always part of what we do every day. I mean, all the consultants and work we do and your staff, I do that. I don't know if there's someone that specializes in trying to come out and do a specific forensic analysis on road. I know that a lot of the projects, and Ince Road and some of the other projects, I haven't, aren't gonna be able to directly involve them.
Well, the engineer should be able to do that.
But I think, I think, because obviously, but we do, we do core pavement and do analysis on it afterwards, and if there's something that was done that was out of spec or out of compliance, one of the things that we're gonna talk about, we're kinda getting in here anyways, but a little bit later on, is it's always harder once something is placed to fight with the contractor over whether it didn't meet spec and force him to go take action. So we're recommending, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna try to, carry through this year's project, to spend a little bit more on the upfront when it's going down. We've gotten away in the industry, we've gotten away a little bit from doing as much testing on the materials as they're being mixed, as the cement or the asphalt's being, being brought together before it actually shows up at the job site. And so we've talked this year with staff and with the administration about having more people at the concrete plants or at the asphalt plants when the mix is gonna come out to your job site is actually being matched. We can specifically monitor how much of the recycled product is going in, what kind of temperatures they're having, is the equipment properly calibrated and maintained so it's gonna show up at the job site, and then maybe even test it again right when it's being placed, which is a standard process. Because that's, that's really our best chance to fix it. To let it get placed and then go check it a year later because they start to see a problem, it's, it's tough because now you've got a lot of dollars on trying to compel the contractor, even if there is a warranty or a bond or something like that, and to compel them to go out there and try and correct it. So, and again, I'm not, I don't mean to be avoiding your question, I don't know if I'm answering it a hundred percent directly, but it's some of the things I think we're trying to make sure that we ramp up the policing on so that we don't have any types of problems.
Well, you can blame it on my inattivity, but, um, I would, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, I was watching a TV program on how do they do this? And I was absolutely flabbergasted at how quickly someone at the asphalt plant can change the mix by pushing a button. And like I say, my inattivity is, I would've thought that in any road construction, somebody would be there just to make sure they didn't push the wrong button, that you're getting the right, the product that we're paying for out the end of the chute when it comes out. So that we don't have to go back a year later or two years later and fight with the contractor about four claws. Those contractors are gonna try and do, some contractors are gonna try and do whatever they can do to save money because that's their bottom line. And if they can get by with a mix that's a little leaner or a truck full of cement that's a little, has less of a mix to it, it looks the same.
Right.
It looks the same and it goes down the same, unless you put too much water and it comes out like soup. Uh, it's, you know, and we won't know it until it starts to fall apart.
Right.
And he's got his money and he's gone.
The industry has got away, that's what I said, from doing as much rigorous testing on behalf of the owner, whether it's the owner's employees or the people hired by the owner, compared to years past. It's shifted more and more of the quality burden on the contractors and trying to, you know, create the optimism that would set the contractor to want to do it right, but that hasn't necessarily proved to be the best method overall in how something's been about. So we're, we're talking about trying to go back a little bit to being more of a policing agent on contractors or any contractor side. And some of these industry trends are set by the biggest owners that they're wishing to pay roads and that. And they've developed a lot of standards and classifications, as you mentioned, they do a lot of these. They tend to be the go-to for where other entities use their processes, their procedures to respect, and we're finding that that may not always be the best case for locals and for counties too, so.
I have one last question. And that is, the million dollars a mile, is that, is that for total reconstruction or is that just grinding and resurfacing? Or what is the million dollars? What does that represent?
It was a rough guess of a total reconstruction. And some roads are higher than others because they're a higher loading classification all season, but just, just to give a broad brush, value of the asset overall.
Okay, so the, the million dollars a mile is total reconstruction, but we've been talking about, that's probably not gonna happen here in Southfield, but it's gonna be grinding and capping, which means that our dollars aren't gonna go proven? Or is the formula that you have, the amount of money that you have down here, is that based on just the capping of them?
Well, these, these projections on slide seventeen and eighteen are based upon a mix of fixes. So anything that's already gotten down into the pacer of three and below, even four and below at this point in time, is probably gonna be a reconstruction. And so we see that land out as a reconstruction. The year that you get to the street, if it's still at a five or a six, eight or rating, there's usually some treatment that may be less than a reconstruction that's gonna be a better choice for that particular load. And we haven't, these projections about, just so that people have appreciation, is not programming out every mile of road in the city and saying, "This is the treatment that should happen to this road and it should happen in this year." This is just looking at the aggregated total of the number of miles that are in each of the rating categories and what a treatment should be. If this was programmed, say, at a ten million dollar per year level, the next step would be to go try and map out a five-year to a ten-year CIP and go figure out what types of improvements you would do in each of those, in each of those areas.
Okay.
While we're on this one, real quick, I do think, Councilman Focassi, you had mentioned, or Fred, I'm sorry, you had mentioned earlier, this doesn't tell the whole, this doesn't tell the whole story. And I think that next slide, slide eighteen, we really put this in here because if you only look at this graph, it tends to, tends to lead you to believe that, hey, a six or seven or eight million per year, my network's getting better. Well, how good is it to say to the public, well, my, my pacer rating went from a five to a six, when I still got a third of the roads in the city that are a pacer rating of three and below? Because those are the people who are having a hard time even getting down their street. And so this, this is trying to show that you really need to get out here to the point where you're gonna actually be putting a dent in some of those that have, that have fallen into the poor category.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there no way else under the exception to, to, to?
I, I just want, just want to comment. We go through this exercise, and I think it's real important to frame this conversation. Remember, Southfield's the first suburban suburban community, most of our infrastructure fifty, sixty years old. The fact is, we really haven't had a progressive program. I'd like to do some analysis in the future. A lot of our other communities, particularly in the east, have already leveled bills, some as high as five and a half mills that deal with infrastructure. And I'll use Ferndale back in ninety-four, implemented a strategy that started dealing with their streets and reconstruction and rebuilding. With two hundred and forty-four miles of road in excess of, you know, three hundred million dollars of, of street highway infrastructure that needs to be dealt with, we need to, it's time to put in place a maintenance program. I know this dialogue is painful, comes with a lot of challenges. This concept of putting money in streets that are maybe fair and not getting to a poor one is very difficult. I like the analogy of, I've got ten dollars to spend, where can I get the biggest bang for, for our buck? The politics on it aren't very nice. Because if you're the resident living on that street that's, you know, that poor and you're not, that's the bitter pill. But we have to figure out how we put something in place and, you know, within our annual audit, we don't put a value on what's happening to our streets and highways. We do for our water system because it's an enterprise buck, but like any asset, it needs to be preserved. You know, we talk about, you know, head out the south line where all these new subdivisions are going in and three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, basically they're using six hundred dollars a linear foot of fundage to build every linear foot of their infrastructure. So we've gotta start thinking about how we replace this. And, you know, this exercise of the rating, we've been doing this now since oh-eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, you know, the recommendation is that we come up with some dollar amount to be put in, where the money comes from, but there has been some conversation about a ballot bond question, you know, maybe it's a ten-year ballot where we ask. We're very much victims of failed state policy as well as federal policy. We're kind of just, you know, I think the city the last few years has done a real good job getting what federal dollars we can, but it's just not enough money. And it doesn't deal with the Lee Bakers, the Rockingham streets. This concept at least allows us to deal with some of those local residential streets. I am somewhat regretting my original position to our team was to lead with the quality assurance and that in my cover letter. I really wish we had led with that because project warranties, quality assurance and warrant, and I think Council needs to hear kind of what we've done just the last few years in our contracts. And we will hit that in the next topic. The next area is future construction projects. We have a couple of, you know, the local government does not have, it seems like either the, the power or the ability to, to get involved in these major road improvements like the US Ten or Southfield Road to the point where we have, and they'll come in and individuals will come in and tell us what's gonna happen and then we accept it. But, you know, when you look at, as Byron talked about, these service drives, why those service drives are what they are is because when they did Southfield Road and they did US Ten, they were, used those as construction roads. And they took all the concrete out of these, on, on expressways and hauled them out on our, on our roads and, and tore them up and then left the scene and their job looked great. And I'm stuck with, with all these side roads that they use for construction in, in the shape they're in. One that is in front of Federal Mogul, you know, that was used extensively and they used, now as ever, they used Burt Road. And they tore up Burt Road. And down where, you know, Nine Mile Road, that's when they used Ten and, and they used it, in fact, they used the staging of, of the contractors, used that staging at Kirkos Place to haul cement and, and the broken concrete on our roads. But it seemed like nobody gained responsibility on putting those roads back the way they were after they got through with them. And, and so I think that's also a point we have to really get on them and, and put more fight into it, I guess, because, you know, they say, "Oh, we're gonna do the US Ten", that's fine. They're gonna do Southfield Road, that's fine. But nobody says, you know, somebody did the Mount Vernon the same way, they used that going into, they had the batch plant. And that, and George Washington subdivision, they're going through the holes today. And all these construction roads that they have used are all hours and they're all in bad shape. And, you know, and I don't know how we demand that they, they use our roads for construction, that they have to put those back in, as they see them, and then they leave, we leave our problems to us. That's really what happened to those roads.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad to hear the quality control again brought up because I think that's extremely important in such a large, such a project. But my concern is, I mean, it's one thing to have a road that's a little bit rough and doesn't look good, but we've got so many serious potholes and these are, these are dangerous. And these are, these are dangerous. Lots of those, Bird Roads, they're dangerous to drive down, you could lose a wheel, you could cause an accident. And when I see, I've been on Greenfield Road, I've seen the county go in and do their coal patching. It'll last for a while, but in some places it just unlasts long enough, it comes right back up. And how do we, if we don't get those potholes first, in some way that they'll last one in a couple of days, then, you know, that's, that's just as dangerous and we could, I don't want to see somebody lose their life or have car expenses that we're responsible for. That's very serious, I mean, we've got too many of them. So that's, that's something that has to be addressed. There is something, I mean, it'd be lovely if all of our roads looked new. If all of our roads looked new, I'd love that, I really would. But if it's merely a little bit of, you know, because it's in there so much, but when you have so many potholes, you drive around the city like some of us do, it's just downright dangerous. It really is downright dangerous. But that, I think is our priority right now. Not something that, you know, they come in there and they do it, and I've watched the county do it on Greenfield Road. Few days later, a lot of traffic, especially big trucks, gone. So I think that, we've got to take care of that situation. That's it.
I would, a couple of comments. I would also add quality control to the spot repair.
Yes.
We budget, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands for spot repair every year, and a lot of it is not good. It lasts a couple of years. River View, I was on the other night, and the cul-de-sac was done over. And the road, River View coming down to the cul-de-sac is much older, and the bottom, the base of the cul-de-sac was redone, and it's all falling apart. And that was, that came out of spot repair money. And I could, you know, I could cite you a number of other examples where the original road is still in better shape than the spot repair. So there needs to be quality control on that. I don't, I don't know who goes out when these jobs are assigned. We had a fiasco last year on Tappahastock or the other street there. Anyhow, in that neighborhood, Twickenham. I, you know, I have no problem with, I love data and that you do a rating. But I also think there, this is not foolproof. Especially if you're doing visual inspections, you know, when Gary Meechen was here, George Washington with the map, and Gary said, well, I'm sorry, but on the pacer rating or road And, you know, I, it goes a little bit to what Jeremy was saying. I just don't think this is totally foolproof. I looked at this and I, all the red, I thought about when I've driven these streets, and most of it I would agree with, but some of this, I also just say, the guy I really appreciated was Tom Bookenich. Because he would, he'd take the data, but he'd also, because he was so steeped in Southfield, he would take into consideration traffic volume. Some of, some of the roads become more of a political issue, and you, and you can't just hide behind numbers. It becomes, you know, especially for the elected officials, especially for the elected officials, it becomes, you know, we get the heat about it. So, and Tom is always very, very sensitive to that. I think it, you know, he was one in a million. He, you know, grew up here and worked here for so long, he, you know, he's got it. So this is great, but, you know, when it, obviously there's room for error if you're talking about, you know, just visually looking at a road. And then there's the practical side. It's like Jeremy said, if I've driven Lee Baker, if I lived on Lee Baker and sized the holes that are on that, that's in on that street, and then drive Ever, Evergreen, I'd pick Lee Baker. Thank you.
Does anybody give me any, any input on this new thing that Stirling Hite's got, that's a intra, what is it called, intraheat, 2000 degrees for patching? We have it up in the east coast of Lake Manche. I haven't heard of it since then. But they just got one in the Combe County.
You're talking about the Dura Patch?
Well, no, it wasn't Dura Patch, it was something.
But it's laser, it heats it out.
Laser heats, anybody see it or have any data on it?
Well, it does work. There are some that have been done here, if I may. There are some that have been done here as test examples and those types of things. It does, it's not a large production product, okay? It sets the, the heat down on the pavement, it recycles it, adds some new asphalt to it, put it back down, and then you roll it and compact it. Does it do a good patch? Yes, it does. But it's not something that, that you're going to drive down Lee Baker and be done in a day with that machine. It takes you three weeks to do that, in that stretch. So, I mean, so it's not something that's fast. And, and I think that as a council, you have to think about, okay, you've got a lot of very poor roads, and if you want immediate relief to those people, then there's one direction you can go. You can go put an overlay on it, you know? And it'll buy you seven, six, five years, whatever. But understand, you're throwing away all of that money, and that's what Rhett was talking about, is let's just say you've got a hundred, 100 miles of zero to three, okay? It takes, and let's say it's all two-lane road, you know, you're going to have probably several million dollars in overlays just to go run an inch and a half out on top of it. But it does give the homeowner's relief, instant. But all of that is a throwaway number, because it really isn't fixing the issue, it's giving you ride quality. If you remember about 10 years ago, the road commission got into a heavy program where on all the major roads that, they went out and they put an inch and a half overlay with no prep on the road that's there, okay? $60,000 a mile. Then they came back with their crews and graded their shoulders back to them and all that other stuff. And all of those overlays and all that stuff got them through six, seven, eight years, and now they're all coming apart, okay? So it bought them a little time. But it's all throwaway, okay? Is that throwaway worth that to get your residents some, an instant relief, okay? While you strategize a more formal plan to come back and visit those roads again, okay? Because if you, as Rhett says, once you put that overlay on, the ride quality is going to get much better. But what's underneath, it's still junk, okay? You, you put a new frosting on the cake.
But Jeremy and I think Ken were talking about though, is, and so you take and you put the money into, into a 10-year program, all right? What's going to happen to this Lee Baker, you use that as an example, when you, now you sign more money up here, and this thing here is either got to be completely gone because you're not putting any money into it. And if it's just got to get worse, it's got to go back to gravel or something, as opposed to giving some help and assistance to some, you know, I mean, trying to spread, you know, you're not up here, you may be down here, but you brought this guy up so that people are not, I mean, are living in a quality type of a street.
Yeah, they're not back in Beirut.
And we got Farmington Hills, or Farmington, anybody help me out, Farbrook. People are calling on that, you know, I was still a gravel road.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, are we going to go back to gravel roads again? You know, I don't know how, you know, how to adjust, how to adjust so that we get a livable community and people stop saying that, you know, that we're going to.
Before you ask it, Gary, I'm going to ask that you silence the noise back here. The next time I'm going to ask, you be removed from the meeting.
There's no noise here.
The council meeting, and we have.
There's no noise here, or someone eating.
The next comment is going to be. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think it's this body's responsibility to say, hey, I've got some people that are way down at the bottom, and I can't wait to get to them for 10 or 15 or 20 years until the funding gets there to totally rebuild it. We've got to give them some immediate relief, okay? But you have to have the expectation that that immediate relief is not the permanent relief. It's, it's, it's just like these milling overlays, they're not the permanent relief. They're to extend the life of what's underneath there, out a little bit further until you can come back again, okay? So, so it really is something where you've got to say, hey, we've got 60 miles of really bad roads, and we're going to go in there, we're going to take all the loose stuff off it, and we're going to hire a paper, and we're going to spend $3 million just putting an inch and a half on it. And we know it's garbage, we know it's going to go away, but it's going to take those roads and get those people in and out of their houses, okay? Or you say, I'm not coming, I'm going to revert back to gravel roads in the opposite end of that spectrum, and we're going to go fill it with rap and grate it off, and we're just going to maintain it with a road grater until we can get back to it. That doesn't come free either. And I did want to say that this chip seal and some of this other stuff that you are talking about, these thin overlays and stuff, when you really analyze the cost of those, you're about 70% of putting an inch and a half of asphalt down, okay? So is that a good investment to make that, that large of an investment, and something that's basically liquid asphalt and stones being sealed together and setting up, becomes a chip seal? And if there's a hole underneath it, it'll come back through, okay? Or is it better to take it and clean the loose material off and just spread an inch and a half and leave it alone? And say, okay, we're going to accept that. And you still may get some potholes, but you've still got to go out and patch. You know, you know, Justin or somebody may have to send that crew down there and do a 10 by 12 patch in the middle of one of these roads. But it, it's serviceable on the short term, okay? But it's millions of dollars, again, that you're throwing away to get through on a short-term basis. But you have a tremendous need, if we go back to that. I mean, you had how many miles of poor roads here? I forget what that was, but it's, it's a large number. When you, when you go back to that, 66 miles of roads. So let's just say you're spending, in today's world, 75,000 a mile, okay? You're spending some big money, you know? You're spending, what is it, eight miles or 12 miles? About $5 million just to go put an inch and a half on the local roads. This doesn't address any of the major roads, it doesn't address any of the state roads or anything else. This is just your local roads in your community, okay? So is, is that commitment to your residents, that we're going to do something, you've got real problems, okay? And we're going to go spend $5 million with the full knowledge that we're not going to get back to you for five or eight, 10 years, but we're going to try to give you some relief. Okay? That's really the question of this body, okay, is where do you want to go, you know? And we're here to try to help you solve all those problems. Mr. Farcasi, I'll explain to you some of the other stuff that we're doing on QAQC and all that other stuff when we get to that part of the presentation, okay? Because it is fair questions, and believe me, both firms have been looking very hard at what's going on in the city and what's going on with all of the clients that we service, okay? And we've had major renovations and requisitations for all the jobs you're doing. We're fighting today. We issued at noon today, back to MDOT, Evergreen Road for rebidding on May 21st, okay? We've got provisions in there that they don't normally allow in a job, okay? So there's things that we can talk when we get to that point in the presentation. But understand, MDOT builds freeways, MDOT builds state tram lines, they don't build local roads, and they don't build your major roads to the attention you are. Because if they have a pot of money and they have, something goes wrong, they go get a little more from the pot and they come back and fix it, okay? If they want to try something new, they go to the pot and fix it because it didn't work. And what we're trying to do is avoid that.
So what's your recommendation?
For what?
With this situation we have.
For this situation, yeah. In my world, if you had, let's just say you had this golden pot of $10 million, I would probably get into the bad neighborhoods and I'd take care of them. I'd clean it up, I'd get an inch and a half down, I'd let it go for, I'd tell them when you came. This is not permanent, we're coming back to you. Or you give them the option, say, I'll put an inch and a half down, maybe you want to do an SAD in your neighborhood and do it right the first time. And you pick up the other 75% of it, and we'll give you 10 or 15 years to pay for it. Because we know we're not going to get back to you. So if you'd like to have those perfect curb and gutters and that drainage and all that be done one time and get it over with, we'll put it on an SAD for you, okay? And we'll pick up with the cost of that overlay once. And you give the resident the option. And I'll bet you 95% of them are going to say, put my inch and a half down, because they may not be here when the other one comes, you know? You know what I mean? So what would be my recommendation? There are major problems in the subdivisions, there's major problems on the major roads, okay? Give them some relief, if you feel that you have the wherewithal to do that, and you can justify to everybody that votes in this city to spend some money in those really bad neighborhoods, give them some relief. It's unfortunate they got to this point, but they're not going to get any better if you don't do nothing in the next 10 years.
Thanks.
There's, there's this concept of leveraging water and sewer investment in these streets, Section 12 and 13, that we can dovetail our water and sewer investment, that's a way to utilize water and sewer funds to make some street improvements. That's why water and sewers are core.
The presentation, and on the slides here for the water system is more brief, there's not as much background as Siri on it. And I guess just to kind of segue in, the intention for the last few slides of the road need was to give you an appreciation for how bad or what kind of condition the situation is. And we started to get into some discussion here, Gary mentioned too, the different ways to fund that back. The examples are just thrown up there for milling here, there'll be lots of different ideas for how to go after SADs or whatever. But I think the message needs to be that the overall need isn't going to change, it still is what it is, however it's funded. But that does segue a little bit into the water system then, because really in recent years, areas where the local subdivisions have been, have had major infrastructure work done, this summer, Section 31, last summer, Section 12 and 13 area, it was really the fact that the water system had gotten to the point where it really needed to have some attention. And then while we're in there doing some of the water system improvements, to the extent that we impacted the roads, we've made some improvements to the local streets as well. So there's definitely correlation, and it makes sense to do that work simultaneously as much as can be accomplished because you get some economy of scale. So just a real quick background on some things related to the water system. This past year, there was an update to the water system master plan completed, working with staff and consultants, partially because it's required by the state of Michigan, DEQ, as part of your licensing that you issue, what they title a reliability study update every so many years. So you'll see the term in here, master plan, the DEQ has a phrase called reliability study update, and some of the, some of the items there are really the same kind of, same kind of information, so a little bit of interconnection. Just a few quick, a couple of quick highlights on the water system overall. There's about 360 miles of water maintenance that the city's responsible for. I guess if you wanted to use some of the same analogy that we just did for the roads, if you call a brand-new mile, a mile of brand-new water maintenance, about a half million dollars, this could be darn near a $200 million asset as well for the water system. You currently, you can get all your water from SAQ with the Southfield County Water Authority. I'm sure members of council already have some of this background, but there are 13 connections, 11 of them that are used to SAQ. You serve your residential population of about 77,000 people, but then as was pointed out earlier, you've got a daytime population that encodes almost 200,000 people, and that places a big demand on how the water system is used. There are about 20,000, well over 20,000 accounts overall. There's more information on the breakdown of all this if you need to. But just a quick snapshot from this most recent report shows the trend, you have years of about 9 million gallons of water per day. That trend has continued to decline in a few years, which is pretty consistent with most of the suburban communities. Both residential and business use has declined, and some of it is also seasonal based upon how much is used for irrigation in the summertime. And a quick comparison of what you sold to your residents versus what you purchased from SAQ, has your non-revenue water or water loss. from SAQ has your non-revenue water or water loss less than ten percent, which is a pretty good target. On a side note, about two-thirds of your consumption is from your own residents and about a third is from the commercial use. The next slide, when we do the update to the master plan and reliability study, we do update the hydraulic model. Not a lot has changed in this city from a growth standpoint, I just mentioned the last master plan was on, but there wasn't one item that I know was of significant discussion over the last ten years of both the council and the city, and that was in the northeast corner, Texas ten through twelve, working on setting up a high-pressure zone to be able to bolster fire protection in that area. And through the completion of several projects up in that vicinity, there's been a significant increase in pressure that was shown both with the models and some high tests. I didn't get the flow data in your presentation to begin, but we have seen a significant improvement in the area. Really, I wanted to segue mostly into the asset, what we titled asset prioritization, which is very similar in comparison to what we were just talking about for Pacer, except you can't just go out and drive through the centers of three hundred and sixty miles of water main pipes to get a feel for what the condition is, whereas the Pacer rating that we did here this last week was done in a few days, because you can get a pretty good windshield survey, not perfect, but you know, a pretty good feel. For the water system, we try and use some less tangible items to get a general gut feel for what the condition is. So we mapped all the water main breaks throughout the city, we've got a large-scale map if people want to see it, but printed out, working with DTW and their logging of where they do water main break repairs. So we look at the frequency of breaks in certain neighborhoods, the cost of what those breaks are to fix, we look at what the model shows for average pressure of the system and flow, where there may be less than adequate fire protection. And then we also look significantly at the age of the pipe, so what timeframe was it when the subdivision in that area was built, how old a water main pipe, and what type of pipe it is. Certain types of pipe that were used when the city was being built have shown more or less life expectancy based upon the current day. And then we also coupled it with the Pacer rating, so looking at the same streets where we had high water main break, lower diameter pipe, older pipes, we also tried to put some prioritization there with the road division as well. Blending that all together and trying to spit out somewhat of a model to predict where the tension should be for any investment in the water system in the near future. Just a few quick bullet points, and some of this was captured in the last discussion about roads, but you know, the majority of the pipe in the city was built between nineteen forty, nineteen seventy, so you're reaching, you're essentially reaching this kind of magic fifty-year mark, and everybody said, well, it's going in the ground at that time, well, it's going to last for fifty years, it seems like, you know, forever it'll be the next generation that's dealing with it. And in some cases, we've got water main pipes that may last a hundred years, and that gas of fifty may be half. In other cases, we've had some that aren't lasting that long, but nonetheless, that magic fifty-year number has come and gone for some pipes and right here, right now for others. So a lot of the system is operating on what we might call borrowed time, and the more that we can get in and do rehabilitation or replacement of pipes today, it is going to help reduce maintenance costs. I know section thirty-one work is programmed for the summer, you know, is a direct result of really a high, high, high priority, how much is being invested on an annual basis by DTW just to repair water main breaks. I mean, all of a sudden, you're spending much money fixing dozens of breaks in the same neighborhood through a year, through over a couple of years, you're practically paid to replace the pipe. That's not really the problem yet. The one is trying to figure what's going to happen soon enough to get there before that, that's the problem. So the next several slides take this data and pairing it up with the Pacer discussion that we just had, and trying to program the right type of fix in the subdivision, and working with DTW and engineering city staff, we zeroed in on target areas in the city. Administration had asked to try and put together a program for what might be the higher priorities neighborhoods in the city and how much it would cost to do water maintenance and street rehabilitation. So we can walk through these to the detail that people want to, but really we can thumb through slide twenty-five, twenty-six is the cost estimate for street work and water main work, showing what the areas that are highlighted on slide twenty-five, the cost. And if you want to kind of walk through, beginning at slide twenty-seven, we'll just go through some of the neighborhoods that show up as being the highest priority. So this is up in section eleven. There's a lot of information on here, you can probably see the hard copy a little bit better in front of you, but just to give you a quick flavor, we're trying to show where the water main breaks are, so you can see the diamonds on location, certain streets have a much higher density than others. In the background behind it are the Pacer ratings, excuse me, just in that good, fair, poor, green, red, and blue category. And then age of the pipe, and in the corner is a quick estimate for what the infrastructure replacement or repair costs were going to be. So in this neighborhood, for example, we estimated about twenty-five percent of water mains to be touched and about twenty-five percent of the streets to be repaired. So as you thumb through these, you get the feel of the significance of value of some of this work. For example, the section thirty-one contract from this year, by the time you add it all up and done, is about a seven, eight million dollar project, and that's just about half of one of the sections, so.
What's the time span for these water main breaks?
This was looking at, I want to say five years with the data, I think it was five years with the data.
So nine through fourteen?
Yeah.
Do you want to entertain a question?
Sure, we can do, we can do them as we go or whatever.
Yeah, Ken and Meyer and I went to the National League of Cities meeting in March, and they echoed, or you're echoing what they said, that you know, all over the country, all these water mains are aging out, and it's going to be a one-trillion-dollar national problem if we wait just twenty more years. So I mean, this is obviously investment we need to make now. They had mentioned there's some federal legislation, I think you and I were sitting in on that session, there's some federal legislation. Am I mixing up jurisdictions or is that money available, federal money, to kind of tackle some of these problems?
The only real funding mechanism that's offered, it's really offered, seeded by federal money and then it's natural with state money.
Do you know what bill I'm talking, do you know what legislation I'm talking about?
Unless there's some new program, currently it's the.
I don't remember.
Okay. Currently, the revolving fund program that City of South Bend has applied to before and used both for sewer and water improvements is the biggest vehicle. Every year, they debate a little bit more about how much money to seed that with, and it's essentially a loan mechanism, subsidy, so it's lower interest loans to do the improvements, but you're still looking to retire the debt with the government. As far as grand dollars for drinking water, unless there's certain criteria for.
I think it was that loan, I think it was the loan program that you're talking about.
I wasn't going to spend a ton of time on each slide, I'll just come through them a little bit. Page twenty-eight is over in section thirteen. This area, the eastern part of section thirteen, was some of the worst several years ago when there was a similar type of analysis done, so lots of water main breaks over here. If you remember, I didn't find one, Fred's last pride, but if you remember, some of you may have been here when we had a quick presentation on that project. The neighborhood's got six-inch pipes, and when we started pulling, DTW probably knows about it, and I do, we pull some of these pipes out of the ground, the tuberculation of the pipe is down such that the floor area through the center of the pipe is about three inches, two and a half inches, I mean, it's completely tuberculated on the inside. We've done some procedures to clean some of that tuberculation out and reline it. Your DTW is pretty progressive even when compared to some others about doing lining. The lining's still for water, for sewers, it's very cost-effective. For water mains, when you compare it to what it costs to take a pipe out of the ground and put a new one in, it's still, unless you're under a major road or something where it's getting into the ground, it's going to be really tough in most of these neighborhoods, you can dig it up and put a new one in cheaper than you, then you can line the other one. And it has to do a little bit with how it's processed, but. So section thirteen, this other area that's highlighted was still a priority from the last water master plan, and you can see the scale of some of the projects. Section fifteen. And if there's any questions on any, we can go through, but you can kind of see the assumptions that we're making. In most of these, it's complete replacement of the water mains, and then the road work would be either reconstruction or repair if it's in fair shape, it might be a slab replacement program. Section twenty-four, twenty-five, which is slide thirty-two, there was the other added improvement that over here, Gary may give us a few little more, he insisted on doing sanitary improvements.
I'm sure you're all familiar with the Cherfield issues and the house flooding down in there. One of the problems with that particular location is that it is a separated area, but it outlets to a combined area. And so when that storm sewer downstream overloads, it packs up, okay? It packs up in both the sanitary and the water. And so what we are proposing is to put a pump station somewhere in the twelve-mile pier side and not allow that sanitary to be gravity-connected to the storm source, and then pump it back easterly, or westerly, into the Evergreen Farmington system, okay? That will, that should stop the basement issues on that particular area.
This is thirty million dollars.
And these were done to try and give you an appreciation for what it would, in these neighborhoods, this would be a replacement of all the buried water mains. You can see in some neighborhoods, there are streets that are worse than others, if you were going to try and scale that back and just do some of the worst streets, but then simultaneous allow you're in here to do the paving improvements. It could be focused, you're getting, if you were going to do a larger project, you could put economy and scale by trying to do it all in. Publicly, you don't want to tear the neighborhood up all the time.
Do these numbers take engineering into effect or is this?
Yeah, these are like project level cost estimates, engineering construction.
I just have a question. When you talk about engineering costs, how far in advance does it make sense to do engineering costs when we have a, that would be ready to go, you know, when we have the neighborhood stable.
The market stimulus?
Yeah, stimulus, evidence to, you know, get your projects ready, you know, you can't fund them, but then you hear the point when that's not realistic. I mean, if you can't do the project, like, we're not going to have thirty million dollars next year. So how far in advance does it make sense to do pre-engineering?
I do say that the, for example, the projects this year on Evergreen Road, the city started through some shovel-ready concepts and early engineering back in the ARA timeframe in two thousand and nine. So, you know, for some of those types of projects, having some projects queued up, particularly if there's some grant programs or funding opportunities like revolving fund, they might apply for it to come along, having some ready to go are always good. Now, having more ready than what there is realistically funding, you know, to be able to do wouldn't necessarily be the best use of every dollar either, but having a few in the hopper, the can, there you go.
What educated consultant, no more five years, if you can't do it in five years, if you can't do it within three, is there a rule of thumb?
Well, I remember the days when you used to have a couple of road projects, large road projects, drain projects, sewer projects, that were always in the can, ready to go service, okay? And the reason for that is, we don't know until we get into projects if we have right-of-way needs or any of the other things that go along with it. In roads, it's often environmental concerns and clearances with ship-o and everybody up and down the line and all those other things. And if they put a stimulus project on the table tomorrow, you have no projects that are in the can, far enough along, maybe the service drive, maybe we could expedite nine-mile road, but I mean, you don't have anything that you would call shovel-ready. A project, we turned in eleven-mile road today, or Friday, for a paving in front of Blue Cross, okay? From the time we started the process to the time you'll get your bids on July eleventh, Matt?
Yeah, it's seventh, I think.
Seventh, okay? It's absolutely a minimum of eight months. That's when you're finally lined and you're ready to go. That is the MDOT process, okay? So when you talk about having some in the can, certainly something we would strongly recommend, you used to do that all the time, okay? And then when it got tight, you don't do as much advanced planning and you're trying to stretch your dollars, but these are the kinds of projects that are large-scope projects. I mean, they're not small projects, and some of them probably have more urgency than others, and so you pick and choose, and what happens if in three years or four years you're not ready to fund it? Then probably what it takes is a little more engineering whenever you get ready to fund it, to go back and update plans and what might have changed in technology from that design to the current day design. Not a huge redesign, but it is some updating cost. You get four or five years out, you want to stay cutting edge. So. Nope, I have, yep, exactly.
Really, I think, I don't have to spend a lot of time on each one of these projects to kind of get a feel, the slide twenty, the overview one, sorry, I'm putting back here, slide twenty-four and twenty, twenty-five and twenty-six, with the large maps give you a flavor for where the method that was used came to the prioritization, and then what the overall estimated cost was here. And I'm sure there's other needs, this is really from sitting down with staff and consultants and trying to figure out where the highest priority would be for the five-year. The last slide of the water system stuff after the projects is slide thirty-six, and it just mentions that in our discussions with staff, and I don't know whether DTW wants to add any more comments to it, but there are some other needs besides just piping the ground that are part of the thing, capital needs dollars. There's about fifteen thousand five-eighths and three-quarter inch meters in the city that are nowhere to be well beyond what their measuring service life was originally, so that's probably a feature needs, state upgrades, major equipment, for example, like factors, and I don't know that these have been quantified exactly yet, but it's just as a reminder that these are major capital studies, doing a rate study and improvements to some of the sanitary sewer locations.
The focus on this was on the pipe because it's tying into the road, a lot of the areas that we have bad water, we have bad roads. And just for a matter of reference, all those sections that Brett has taken you through and those huge costs that are with them, that's ten percent of your system. That's ten percent of your system. All right, let's move to the next slide. Sanitary sewer, we just briefly talked on this, this is, we'll get right away, I'll stand up your phone. This is again, like I said, to get a pump station in place and get the sewage pumping this way, because you have a couple of different syphons and stuff like that that this storm drainage goes out through that is under the freeway, okay? And because of what's been happening in this area and the potential for that storm water to back up through the syphons and back into these neighborhoods, is why we say, we'll take the storm sewer, we've got restricted covers, those kinds of things, but let's get the sanitary out of there so it's not hooked into the basement drains and stuff like that, and take it a different direction. And my slides aren't quite as colorful, but I'll try to be colorful when I talk. Section twenty-four, again, eliminate the pump station and the direct connection to George Coon drain, new pump stations, new force main, it's about two-point-one million dollars. This is a project that Fred has asked us to put on here to try to get some consensus if you want to go forward with this kind of project, or we want to move it to the back burner and move on with other things, okay? So. Okay, eleven-mile road, I just mentioned that eleven-mile road is up for MDOT letting. Okay, the project costs have gone up, we've heard your concerns about mill and fill. When this was programmed back before we were involved with the project, it was programmed as a mill and fill. Because of the issues at Inkster and eleven-mile road of not wanting to see reflective cracking, we've gone out with city staff and we've looked at that road, it's basically pretty well destroyed, okay? And we said, why don't we elevate the road above the concrete that's below it, put all new curb and gutter, and new driveways to every driveway along the route. What is that gravel in between the existing material and the proposed material will allow you to isolate the reflective crack, okay? Same thing we did on Inkster south of eleven-mile road, where. Same thing we did on Inkster south of, of 11-mile road where the road was done all the way down to 9-mile road, is we elevated that road a couple of inches in order to not have to do about $2.5 million in unstable soil undercut, okay? So this has caused this to, to rise in cost, but everybody, it was a consensus of everybody because of all the issues. If we went in and tried to do base repairs, we would basically have been in a total reconstruction. There was so much that was gone that there was nothing to say. Okay, so the collective decision was elevate the road. We could do that. We got a few catch basins to put behind the curbs in a few locations. Most of it works over the top of the curb and put in new approaches for everybody, all concrete, and new concrete curb and gutter to impair it and new asphalt up on top, okay? So that is the project that, like I say, is in the July letting.
And to the council, the budget that's been transmitted in the mayor's budget includes this additional cost on this project. Is Miss Freeman's here? Is she here? I was going to ask, I just point out, go back a slide, which building federal logos going in.
I believe it's Tower Four-
I believe you're correct.
Um, go ahead. How far, how far east from the intersection at Inkster and 11, is that going? Because the concrete, yeah, the concrete gets-
Right here. We're going, we're going to the concrete.
All right. Now, that's, that's what the state put in before, is that correct?
That's what-
East of, east of where your hand was.
From the Pebble Creek Drain, east-
Yeah, is that one of the, the state just did?
Yeah, the, the intersection project.
Yeah.
The interchange project at Franklin and, and I-96, 626, uh, was, uh, this was a trade, okay? That you guys got them to rebuild this road as part of that project.
Okay. So this is going west from that point?
Correct.
Okay, yes, that's really bad. And what, what were the, if you erase the gray, what will happen at the intersection of Inkster 12, Inkster 11?
At this particular location, we're taking out a small portion of this and doing a full depth pavement patch.
Okay, all right.
To blend them together.
All right.
Next one, Red, you thought we should speak to.
I just wanted to ask, do we have that planned for this year?
That is, yeah. Plan for this, to be done just before winter bus, yeah?
We can get that done?
Yep.
11-mile.
11-mile road, we should be starting work out there early August.
And that road commitment was very cra- I was in four meetings with federal logo. That was their number one concern about that location.
And Fred asked us to advance it because this was really a 2015 project, everybody, the funding team with the advance, and we got it out the door and got it up there as quickly as we could, and we're on the July letting.
We pointed out earlier, I think we had mentioned that the, a little bit about the application process for federal funds in Elkhorn County. City had submitted the service drive, northbound service drive through Northwestern Highway between 8-mile, 9-mile application originally for 2016. Based on some jockeying of other communities and opening of funds, it was able to move up here earlier this year to the 2000, I guess it was last fall, to 2015 funding spot. One of the things to point out, again, as was mentioned, was trying to compete with other projects in the county. You get a lot of points for how you calculate the dollars per square yard of pavement touched. And so one of the proposals here is to give us a pavement, I mean, back when this road was originally put in, the demand and service needs for, for the mall there was, I'm sure, much greater. And so it's felt that the landage that's out there today isn't really necessary for the traffic volume. So by putting on what we might want to call a road diet, kind of a term you might have heard, it's a buzzword they get to put around, but basically we're going to not put back all the pavement that's out there today. There's no sense in having more to maintain than what you're going to need. It helps, helped to, to score points. So it was originally, it's programmed for a rehab, it would be a mill and fill, uh, which is, that was how the application was scored. We're currently evaluating whether you're going to get adequate service life out of that versus a reconstruct, you know, based on some of the comments here that, in the earlier discussion about roads, it's really one of that point where it's probably more likely at this point to, to pay for the reconstruct. But anything above and beyond what's currently in the federal application that might go into a reconstruct would have to get funded locally. So if we applied for the reconstruct, we wouldn't have gotten anything at all. But by applying for a rehab, you can get that and you still are better off having something in your, in your copper. So I know there's been a lot of discussion, Fred was just asking us last week to put our heads together and come up with any way possible to try and do something out there this year. I know I agree with it, it's, it's a tough road to go down right now. And there just really isn't a way with the federal procurement process, like Gary had just mentioned, for 11-mile, when he turned his plan, he's got about eight months. If we turn in plan tomorrow for this project, it might make the September bid letting, which you're never going to start doing construction.
I didn't agree with you. What would, what would be the startup date on this?
It, it, well, first off, the, the project's not in the, in the can already designed. I mean, we've done some familiar work, but even if we started tomorrow with the MDOT procurement process, you couldn't have a bid letting until probably the September MDOT bid letting, uh, and you just wouldn't start construction at that point. So the only way we could think of is if, you know, if you funded it locally 100%, you wait, you don't have to go through that procurement process, but then you're going to lose your federal aid and you've got, you know, a significant chunk of federal money to help rebuild this. So realistically, it's probably going to be a matter of, of working BPW to maintain it for another, another year as best as possible, thanks to that Justin Kelly, and have it queued up to start right away in the construction season of 2016.
2015.
Just a quick question. Just a quick question. When we were doing Evergreen Road, then we wanted to reduce the lanes. Oh, we had to do a traffic study. Was the traffic study done in this to do, to do the road that, or is this swag?
And, well, so far, swag as we go through the, the, uh, the MDOT procurement process that may require a system of data, but just ATMs on the section of roads last month fixed off the front end without doing a, even a full zone study. The lane, a two-lane service drive is more than handled without this, for example today. And that would still put any auxiliary, auxiliary lanes for St. Alex and Drive and the service and the high office.
I just wouldn't want to jeopardize the, the project by getting all the way down there and then, well, did you do a traffic study? Then we have to start all over again.
Correct. We'll have to prove that to the process, but it'll come to the same end.
I just want to comment, as Redden indicated, you know, we have a commitment for 1.2 to a federal aid. There has been a couple of conversations with the county road commission about horse trading, you know? You know, and from my position, I would be comfortable recommending that we fund this locally to move this schedule up if the county would, if the road commission folks would agree to horse trading equivalent amount. And that seems to be the stumbling point in the conversation. There's a meeting tomorrow morning. I don't think there's much appetite in the way that committee is structured to do that type of horse trading. I want to walk away from this meeting knowing that there's a consensus from council that you're comfortable with us pursuing this road diet from three lanes to two lanes. The other piece of this that, you know, maybe we need to come back and do some type of Band-Aid measure for a year on this road, that's hard for me to recommend, the concept of maybe spending $200,000, $300,000 for what would be a one-year fix, knowing how tight these dollars are. So I wanted to, you know, councils sign off of the road diet and is this road so bad that we should be pursuing a cap of some sort? And I'm going to state this, very ironic, when we do Evergreen Road northbound, they're going to put a one and a half inch cap.
Uh, because, if I may, uh, because of the condition of what's happened over the winter, we inserted a one-inch minimum overlay on the two northbound lanes because they will be used to maintain traffic on the, or one direction each lane, each way. We couldn't come to this body and say, move your traffic over here and run your traffic down those two lanes the way they are, okay? So we were doing some isolated widening to make things work, and I, and we said, no, we're, we've got to fill the chuck holes and put at least a one-inch of asphalt down there. So you're not wasting a lot of money, but you're at least going to have something that's serviceable. When we get to Evergreen Road, we'll even make, that will even be a bigger point when we get to what's happened recently on Evergreen Road, okay?
As, as far as the horse trading is concerned, that only works as long as we were ready to put up as much money as the cost of this in other projects. Just if we were only going to put up, you know, two-thirds of this money, we don't have the other third.
We have other projects, primarily along service drives, that have similar cost ratios. This one's probably a better deal for the state because the road is losing a diet, or is losing a lane.
Losing a diet.
Losing a lane. They're not warming up on the concept of preserving. Like if they would come back and say, we'll give you a commitment of 1.3, you know, when the dollars were equivalent, I think some of our other service drives could be good candidates. But they're, I know Red's had conversations, Lee's had conversations, I had conversations, they're not really warming up to it.
Something to say, what Jeremy said, if you had choice, you'd put a billion dollars in the green field, or would you put it in the northwest?
Yeah, take the money from 13-mile, Evergreen, and bring it down. I'm serious about that.
You made a choice, eh?
Absolutely.
And so we ended up with what the county should have done, and, and we're going to have to put our own bill to do our street again. I mean, it's crazy.
We're paying for the neighbors and paying for our own.
Yeah, we're paying for the neighbors and we're paying for our own.
11-mile road at BASF, you recall in 2013, the bridge, oops, 2013, the bridge here at Kearney Green was rebuilt, okay, with a new deck and that type of stuff. The rest of the road is severely alligator, cold patch on top of cold patch, and we understand that BASF has come to you to talk to you maybe about how to fix that road, either through a special assessment or some other means. Cost of the road, we did it both ways, concrete or asphalt, and it comes out about $850,000, maybe say 30 grand if you go with asphalt, full-depth asphalt. So what we did is we, because they're looking at an expansion, we believe this is a opportunity for the city to go to MEDC because of the high, high-paying jobs that are going to be brought to that facility, and have a discussion with them about the ability to seek funding for this section of roadway, okay? If there's a local share, then I'm sure it would be appropriate for BASF to pick up that share, either through a direct contribution or through an assessment, if that's what you want to allow. But the consensus is, is should, should there be something by the staff and administration to seek MEDC funding for this section of roadway to meet their needs for 2015? Again, this will not be a 2014 project. It's too late in the season, in the process, there's two comers. Future construction projects. I think that we, and we came and we talked about, and you'll see some roads that are already being worked on here. 9-mile road, we had a discussion, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Greenfield Road, Northwestern Service Drive, and then the DDA roads within the, within the Cornerstone District. What we were asked to do is to put together a federal economic development grant for this area of the projects, okay? The total projects come up to about 18, 19 million dollars. These are all the roads that are in there, okay? All, you know, you've got Northland Drive, and we went out and rode these things, some of these things, we, we were lucky to get up to 5 or 10 mile an hour.
And which ones are eligible for federal aid? Only Greenfield, 9-mile, and Northwestern?
Only this road, this road, and this road.
The others are 100% the city's?
That's correct. The other road that we put in for federal economic development consideration is Bridge Street and Hill Path, okay? Because of the condition of the concrete roads that serve that industrial park. So those two are in the, the list of projects. We went and did estimates for a number of improvements, including, it comes up to about $20 million with everything included on all those roads. And what is included? It includes all the design fees, most of these where the mill and fills or total replacements with five inches of bituminous, new street lighting, new street, new street lighting, ADA ramps, new sidewalks in gap areas, and concrete patches over in Bridge Street. The, the reason that 9-mile road and Greenfield and Northwestern are in there is we're going to use those as part of your local match, as part of this grant. You're making contributions to the area, so we want to capitalize on those local shares to, towards what you have to put into the project. So while this looks like 9.9, 9.9, your part of your 9.9 has already been paid or is going to be paid in 2014 or 2015 towards this economic grant if you're successful in doing that. I believe there's a meeting on-
May 27?
May 27 with the federal economic people in order to review this application and have it considered for potential funding. The fundings are released quarterly for federal economic development, and Fred can probably speak to all of this probably much better than I can, but that this is the area and the, that we've been told to target for federal economic development funding.
The job generation and social economics of this part of Southville, southeast corner, are ideal for the economic development funds. It's a low-income neighborhood. We're in a unique position that we have 9-mile Northwestern Highway in Greenfield. Three years from now, that opportunity won't exist for the city to come up with a local match the way we are doing. They have a strong emphasis on healthcare, a lot of the things the DDA has been committed to the last few years, lead itself, they want an economic development strategy, that part of the city has a real good strategy. The industrial park has good job generation numbers, some buildings that are struggling. We can put together a strategy. I think the DDA is considering these options, but we're going to submit both and have the DDA look at both, providing, which is, we get authorization, look out for, submit those. And I can see a downtown town, that's off of Bridge Street, and a north-
Eight and Telegraph. Just north of the Bridge Street Bridge. One of the other things that we were asked to look at is the potential for an SAD in this area. And what we found was that based on the average 100-foot lot, that if you were to allow an SAD or develop an SAD for the patches in there, that it would be about $16,700 per 100-foot lot. Paid over 10 years would be about $1,670 per year plus interest, okay? So for each industrial user in there, that would not seem outrageous, okay? I guess to get your notes back in good condition. My local street on my, my local baby recently on my street was 14,000. Southville. Want me to take this, or you want to take this? You can go to the meeting.
Yeah. Just a little meeting. So, Southfield Road, this is a, the road commission road. We are currently participating in the cost of an environmental assessment that is underway. We had a meeting last week over at City of Laser Village, not only for a status update, but then to see what are our funding opportunities for getting this road actually done. Right now, because the environmental assessment is underway and they're exploring all the design alternatives, right now there is no funding in place for any portion of this road project. So we're still several years out, and we can't really even apply for any grants or road funding yet for portions of this project because we don't know what that final design's going to be. So we really need to complete this environmental assessment phase so that we know what this road's going to look like, and then the county or, and/or the cities can start applying for some federal dollars to move these projects forward. There's, most of the time, the way these projects are more successful at the, through the federal aid committee is to do them a mile-by-mile type segment. I know there's been talk about seeing if there's larger grant opportunities to get an entire corridor done. The road commission right now, they're saying they don't think that we would have a very good shot at that, but as this final design comes through and we can see- good shot at that, but as this final design comes through and we can see where the feds are, to see if there's a type of earmark or tiger grants is one of the things that we were looking at for this large sized project. We're told that the tiger grants are highly competitive. They tend to be focused on a lot of best management practices with a lot of focus lately on transit. And this isn't really a corridor where we'd be proposing any new transit. Some of the things that we think would be positive for something like a tiger grant is a great improvement to the pedestrian and non-motorized users of the roadway. But that's where that is. It's looking like the environmental assessment is probably going to be another year to eighteen months before that's completed. And so at that time then, we're trying to get federal funds, which are usually programmed three or four years out, so.
Total rebuild, huh?
Yes, total reconstruction.
Yeah. My question, who's driving the timeline? Because it seemed to me that it was the road commission of Oakland County that was putting all this pressure on us to get our act together, but now we're waiting for them to do the specs of the environmental study before we can do anything. So who's, who's putting the pressure on all of us to get this?
Well, I think it's up to us to keep pressure on the road commission. What they've done, they've hired, Spalding Decker is the lead consultant for the environmental assessment. And where it seems, you know, to us that nothing's really been happening, it's just we haven't had any meetings lately because all of these design alternatives that were presented at the last public meeting, the consultants have been going through all of the traffic studies and all of the analysis to see which of these alternatives are even feasible. So there's a couple of the alternatives that have come off the table because these type alternatives maybe can't handle the traffic. They said that we should be hearing, probably this week or next week, they're going to start scheduling our next steering committee meeting. And then after that point, I'd like to come back and give you an update. I'll have some more detail. They didn't really get into any specifics at this meeting. Laker Village called this meeting, they've got some new people in their administration over there, I think they needed to get up to speed and see where everything was. So we all came together, but didn't really leave with a whole lot of new information.
And I know this is obviously to the Southfield border, which Laker Village is right down in the middle. Is Beverly Hills still engaged in the full process?
Beverly Hills was at the meeting as well. Because anything that happens, the environmental assessment, I believe really just goes to Thirteen Mile, but if something really changes, the limits typically extend a little bit past. There's always a transition phase. And Beverly Hills has also recently done some type of overlay district for that corridor north of Thirteen Mile there, so they definitely have been wanting a seat at the table and have been part of the steering committee now.
I just want to comment. Since I've been here, we, a number of times, you've submitted federal earmark applications for this project, as well as various trips to the mayor, to DC. We've, the projects outlined in a pack, in a package of possible projects. This project originally started, when I got here, the county was in a position, there was no, no need for an environmental assessment. Every document we ever gave to a earmark or to the US conference of mayors or any other group, we always included that there being a need for an environmental assessment. You don't redesign a road like this without, using federal funds, without going through this. I was somewhat appalled that they wanted to admit that. I sometimes think that it was part of a stall tactic, because the county, at the end of the day, the county, any of their funding, doesn't have the money to do this project either. The numbers of the earmark requests have been four, between forty-five to sixty million dollars for this project. The thought process now is to complete the environmental assessment, form the 501(c)(3), possibly look at this tiger grant application and a federal lobbyist.
Mr. Creager?
Yes. Has Laker Village changed their view on the five lanes going through?
Well, I think that both Laker Village and Southfield are both leaning towards having a median there, just not the, a super wide median like Telegraph Road, a more narrow median. I think Laker Village originally, when they talked about on-street parking, that really cannot feasibly work on that road. So some of the alternatives are, it's almost like a side service drive, like you might see in some areas along Woodward Avenue where, you know, there's parking along those frontages. It's just separated from the main roadway.
Yeah, it's curbed between.
It's a safety, right, it's a safety issue. You can't have people backing out when you've got those speeds and traffic selling and what like to get there. So do the designs have to be exactly the same for each segment of the project? No, they don't. And different segments of a project function very differently. I mean, between, or the south half, when you're south of I-696, it's like you're coming out the Southfield Freeway, and then you're going up to I-696, it's like there's much heavier, heavier traffic in that area. And so there, I think there's more opportunities for north of I-696 to do some more innovative things and try and slow people down, but the road commission is the road commission. They do roads. Their primary focus is to get the vehicles through there, regardless of what alternative we come up with, the road commission does not want any negative impact on the flow of traffic down the road.
It's kind of interesting because the traffic really peters out at Fourteen Mile because it's Southfield Road.
Right.
Because it's five lanes, right up to Fourteen Mile, and it goes down to about two lanes. And it seems to be handling the traffic all right.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, right.
Although it'd be interesting to see what that does to the traffic on Fourteen Mile. I think a lot of people come up there and then they're swinging right on Fourteen Mile to get over to Woodward or something. And then, you know, once you get north of Fourteen Mile, it's pretty much all residential through there.
But you would think there would be an awful lot of people coming like Birmingham to go south.
I think what you see is a great opportunity for transition. So you can, you can see where they're looking at the traffic counts and what the communities are wanting to see. And they're trying to work with us. I think the road commission, by turning it over to Spalding Decker, I mean, they, Spalding is being paid by the road commission, but that's, the steering committee is all here, so that as a group, the steering committee is directing Spalding Decker, not directly the road commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you look at Evergreen, Southfield, and Greenfield, I think Southfield's in the, clearly in the best shape among the three. So is it a reconstruction out of need that the city set to the county? Is this a reconstruction out of the county saying, you know, were we doing traffic on Southfield Road? What was the need? What is the, why are we even talking about Southfield Road? Is it, who drove it? Who's saying what we need to do it? Is it the city to the county, or the county to the city, or?
Well, I think that Southfield Road has been mentioned by the city for many years. Because of conditions, the road commission is really looking at it, also because of safety, things like that. Those speeds are quick and trying to make a left turn from any of those businesses along there, it's a pretty intimidating type of traffic movement to make. So the road commission has wanted to put that boulevard in to improve safety. And, you know, they did at one time have some funding for different sections of that roadway, but because the time that has gone by, some of it was STP funds, which is through the federal aid committee, and those expire, so the, you know, the road project couldn't be done that year, so it basically just got pulled. And then there was some other funding sources that we saw just kind of keep getting pushed forward, future years, and now they've disappeared, so.
Yeah, I was, I just, it feels like the county is basically saying, you know, hurry up and wait.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's what my frustration with this project is, is that, you know, the city certainly wants to fix the road, but it's like the county is coming down and saying, do something, do something, and now that we are moving forward, nothing, there's no action.
Well, they, I mean, they had plans ready to go for the first phase of the project, which was going to be within Laker Village, and that's when Laker was saying, hey, wait a minute, put on break, this isn't what we wanted to see for this section. And the road commission hadn't, you know, really talked with the local agencies about doing something different there. So that's kind of what triggered the whole environmental assessment, and I think maybe the road commission was being optimistic, optimistic to think they weren't going to have to do that environmental assessment. And once Laker Village stepped up, it really triggered the whole thing. So that's a process that we have to go through, and once we submit to FHWA, then that timeline for their approval is unknown.
I think eventually what's going to have to happen is, it's going to have to be a deal between Laker and Southfield and the county to do from the expressway south to the expressway. Because it seems that where everyone goes in and departs, so the traffic probably is less between the expressway and Twelve Mile Road, and then we pick up from Twelve Mile Road north. And I, and I kind of think that's, that eventually is going to happen because I live through I-696 with Laker Village, they even put this park in the route, just so that they could stop the expressway. So there's, there's no way, and I'm sure that environmental study was nothing but a tactic to stop it from going through the city. So unless we cut a deal where we just eliminate Laker Village, that make our streets look nice, in other words, I thought the money was already allocated for Southfield Road until Laker stepped in and said they wanted environmental.
Some portions were, and that apparently has gone away.
But I think we have to go back and try to fight for, for those two sections. Ten Mile and Southfield Road, that intersection's going to have to be redone anyway, and...
Well, and that's going to be up to us to put some pressure on the road commission. They are not very proactive with just road maintenance. It seems like every big project they do, it's federal dollars or it's nothing. So, you know, they came out and did some patches for us a couple of years back at that intersection because it had gotten so bad. I mean, and that, it was a good improvement, but, you know, that was a temporary fix, and most of those are coming apart now, and we're kind of back to where we were, so we're putting more pressure on them to try and...
Twelve Mile and, and Southfield Road is just getting like Ten Mile Road now. I mean, you can't make a, a westerly turn from Southfield Road without going in on the ditch, and they've got real big holes there, and they have never patched anything. Twelve Mile Road in itself, all the way down, has not been patched, any, the cold pack or anything else. So, you know, it's, it's, when somebody dis opposes, it gives them an excuse not to do anything.
The road commission...
That's what really the deal is.
The road commission was at the meeting last week, and when people were talking about maintenance issues, you know, they made it sound like, yes, we'll be maintaining it until that happens, because it's very likely we could be looking at, you know, 2019 at the earliest, that, you know, we might have a chance for some funding.
We even have, we even have a barrel there at, at the bridge, you know? You know, think of that, I think it's sure that much phase is sinking.
That is being repaired.
About us?
Yeah. We kind of put some pressure on the road commission. Excuse me about that.
Yeah, there's, all along the, the Southern Park, Lane of Twelve Mile, it's all gone. It's all sinking, so.
They, I mean, what they will commit to is to keep it safe for us, so when...
It's not safe.
So when serious issues like that come up, we need to make sure that we're communicating that, and I know our DCW regularly talks to the road commission's maintenance crew, but sometimes it might be a heavier spot repair that needs to be done. I mean, there's some, you know, realistically, it might be that it's ten years out before something, a real road construction, project happens there.
So somehow we've got to be able to put some pressure on the road commission. I mean, I just, I just think that just, you know, picking up their jobs, you know, we picked up, there's no removal on, you know, Twelve Mile Road, Lasha Road, Ten Mile Road, and they're easy to get, you know, they'd give us a couple bucks and we'd give us a job, and, and they're not responding to these, these serious situations on their roads in the city. Like I said, well, we have to put a barrel up because the panel sank, you know, and then we're going to have to go back and fix it. You know, that is their responsibility. It's nice to say, you know, to us, you know, oh, it's too bad you got a hole in the road, but, you know, you get a lawsuit, you know, they're liable. And I think I was sinking my truck down that hole. Anyway, I just think we got to keep pressure on them.
Okay.
And, and not let them get away with this. Keep telling them, hey, you got a problem with that road.
Okay. Most of this we have probably talked about already. So this Oakland County Federal Aid Committee, this is how all of our federally aid eligible roads that are awarded federal funding go through this process. So this is all an application that's point based, and, you know, it used to be very heavily weighed on road condition. They've kind of backed up on that. It's not as heavily weighed anymore because what the locals were complaining of is that our roads were having to get down in that Pacer rating of a four before we could even apply. And then the funding was four years out, so by the time, you know, we actually got funding, we were, Evergreen Road out here, where it's completely deteriorated. So that process has actually been improved upon, I think, through that application. There are some areas that we still struggle with, that we're going to have to come up with other ways, and that's why we were trying to give the big picture, because some of our federally aid eligible roads just do not score well. And our service drives are a perfect example of that. There's quite a bit of emphasis in the scoring on traffic counts, and our service drives cannot begin to compete with a major trunk line like Evergreen or something, and we just seem to have a really hard time being successful to score well enough to secure any federal funding for these service drives. So we had that unique opportunity for that road diet, for that northbound Northwestern Service Drive, so that was really why we were able to secure funding for that piece. The other service drive that we have funding secured now for future 2017, I believe, is our southbound Northwestern Service Drive, which really starts all the way over at Bird, all the way down to Ten Mile. And that's a huge project, and basically, there's not really a big road diet or anything that was part of that one, but because we made it such a large project, that economy and scale wise, the prices came in better. And also, in reality, it's one of those situations that, once we actually get to the design phase, we will actually be probably proposing a heavier fix than what our application showed. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a game to play to try and get the federal funding, and then come to the table and fix it the way we really want it fixed. So I'm working on that.
Tell me, what role does CMCOD play in, in establishing priority for, for roads? You know, I sit on that task force, I stopped going because it's so political and they get votes before you even get a chance to vote.
Well, they, I think what they try and do is keep the politics out of it with the application. Oakland County is, I think, kind of the model for these federal aid committees around the state. They have a very, a process that's supposed to be free from politics, which is why their applications are, it's all by score, and...
What does CMCOD, you know what CMCOD has to do with, with most of these projects?
CMCOD is at the tables. They are part of the federal aid committee, so they're part of the group with the locals that are deciding, like, if we're going to fund any for our projects, something like that, at a committee level, and...
But our projects are scored on points. We don't vote on that. So it's a combination of these factors as we...
Yeah, all the applications are submitted. There's a subcommittee that goes through and basically just verifies, double checks that the scores, that the applicants submitted that they agree with. Occasionally, there are minor changes to the score. And then they just list them on a big spreadsheet and say, okay, this year we've got fifteen million dollars, and they just take them down. They start at the top with the highest score and go down as far as they can.
How do the members vote? And if it has no, they have just a guy at the table. Why, I mean, why are you going through this?
I'm not going to vote.
I stopped going, the mayor's on that, and they just don't, I mean, they vote, but they already have the documents and the votes for whatever projects they're pushing.
I can help a little bit, just a couple of... The CMCOD works with the MTO, all the money has to get programmed through the MTO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Once, they work with MDOT to make sure that the federal targets are set for each community, or for each county, based upon population, miles, road, et cetera, in the formula. But then once it gets down to each county level, they really are just there making sure that the county plays by the federal rules. They're not going to tell each county how to prioritize it, they just have to verify that a committee does exist, and that somehow you're going through a process to determine how you want a portion of money, and that you're doing it in a, in that are consistent with that they set the rules. So they don't really get into telling each county's committee, hey, you should put it here, or put it here. They just want to make sure you're doing it correctly and fairly. Ultimately, there is a voting process for it, but as, as Lee had mentioned, really, even though the committee does vote, they really rely upon these points, and then the voting is more of a, of a formal process.
Supposedly, they are supposed to direct federal funds to counties and municipalities. So they have the control over the federal dollars. Do they understand? Do you understand? Do you, do you know? Man, I go, they just have a vote, and everything is, you know, is already set, and so they've already took the deal, and so, I mean, I tried to get stuff done in Southfield, you don't even, you're not even on the list.
One thing that SEMCOT does do is they're the clearinghouse, as I said, and they have to get you on the TIP, Transportation Improvement Program, and you cannot receive funding unless you're on their program through their clearinghouse. So, as these counties submit these projects, you have to be on that program in order for that federal money to flow through. So, while they're not directly involved in the votes, they are behind the scenes managing what projects go on that way.
Yeah.
What's that called again? In the transportation?
This is just a couple of things about the funding process.
This is just, we've kind of touched on this, with the, any of these projects that obtain federal aid have to go through the MDOT bid letting process, and so this fight is really just to show that, you know, for example, that service drive project, you know, even if we turn plans in tomorrow, about how many months out you are before you can actually expect for a project to be awarded, and-
This would be your next day. May sixteenth would be your next day to submit plans, and that gets you on a November seventh bid.
And a November seventh bid, typically, that's that bid letting date, but by the time they, the contractors issued a notice to proceed, it can be three or four weeks would be typical before projects actually start. So, these projects have to be thought well out in advance, uh, even when we put the pressure on our consultants to design quick, let's turn it around. We did that to H R C, you know, a few months ago, 'cause originally, that eleven mile piece in front of the old Blue Cross building, we were going to construct next year, and then because of the federal mobile move, there was a big push to get that done this year, and they were able to do it, but, you know, we found out about this a, a few months back, so it's kind of at the last minute, and we're squeezing it in at the end of the season. So, a lot of this, we, we've talked in bits and pieces about, about project warranties or the quality assurance, quality control issues. Um, the warranties were something that is used on some MDOT projects. Um, when we were looking at it and kind of weighing the pros and cons and how some people are doing this, I'm, I'm not sure, like, which agency's exactly why they're doing it, because what we are finding is that it increases the cost quite a bit to, to your bid let construction costs when the contractors are bidding on it, and really, the, the extra cost that you're paying upfront and trying to administer to get the contractors to pay, because you have to really define exactly, okay, exactly what constitutes warranty work that they have to come back and do it. Um, it, it turns into administrative and some fighting with them about it, because they're gonna say, oh, this wasn't our construction problem, this was this really hard winter. This, you know, you guys, we wanted to do more undercutting under this piece of road, it's been, you allowed us to do. It turns into a, a smarter financial decision for the city to come back with our own crews. We have a very aggressive joint sealing project that we do every year, and it's really a lot cheaper and quicker for us to just come and be able to take care of any issues that come up. That being said, we're trying to put some extra dollars and some emphasis into the quality assurance piece on these MDOT projects in particular. The, the MDOT process, as was mentioned, in recent years, has really put the quality control responsibility onto the contractor. So, the contractor's doing it, and the cities, we're there and we are there for the quality assurance. We're kind of running some parallel tests. The things that we have been talking with our consultants about were already mentioned. Um, getting back to some of the things that we probably used to do before the contractors were responsible for the quality control, such as inspections at the plant. Um, any plants that are used on an MDOT project have to be certified by MDOT, so the idea is that all these plants and the quality control that the contractors do is enough to ensure good construction materials are going down. Um, because of some of the issues we've seen on the projects, and because of direction from this body, we're gonna spend some extra money, and it's not a whole lot of extra money to do some extra quality assurance, you know? We've got people that are out there testing anyway. We're gonna send another person out to the plant and make sure their equipment is calibrated and that things are being done per the specification.
The typical way that quality control works on a big job, let's say Evergreen Road or any other job, is people will come in and they'll, they'll go to the plant in the morning, they'll watch a couple of loads be made, and then they go out to the job and they test them the rest of the day. That, and because-
What, you mean the engineers?
Yeah, the, well, the geotechnical engineers, the soils engineers, okay? And, um, what, what has happened over the years, as Lee said, is these plants have become certified, and so for them to keep their certification, they gotta guarantee they're gonna produce this product during the entire process it's made. What our concern is, as is O H M and everybody else's, is that, once you leave the plant, you don't know which button you hit, okay? And it's pretty hard sometimes out in the field to tell if that mix got changed, okay? Unless you're seeing some pretty dramatic changes in the air, or the slump, or some of those other things, once you've left the site. And I'm not saying that, that that happens, but certainly, something is happening that's causing this quality to go down. And so, uh, we've talked with Lee and Fred and everybody about putting, on days of production, to put a person that stays in the plant. That's maybe fifteen, for Evergreen, it's probably fifteen or twenty days of the, for the entire project. And make sure that from the first batch to the last batch is exactly what you specify, okay? And, and other things that we're changing is, is like on this road here, we're gonna have load transfer on every joint, okay? We're gonna have dowels through every joint, so that don't go vertical, and that kind of stuff. We're going to check the air content. What, what we're finding in a lot of the roads that are breaking up is that the air in the concrete is low. It's, you know, they give them a range, you know, a plus or minus one and a half percent, and these guys will tend to make it right in the middle at the plant. By the time it goes through the screed, or through the rollers, or whatever, it's, it's down in the lowest range of, but still acceptable air. So, can you reject that air or that concrete because of it? No, because it's in the plus or minus one and a half percent. So, what we're doing, and in, in your specification for your local roads, as well as this particular project out here, is we're testing at the back of the machine. We wanna know that the air is right, right behind the machine, after the, all the vibration has gone on and all that other stuff. Contractors don't like it, because you're digging right in a brand-new finished surface of pavement, and, but we're gonna go in and we're gonna be digging in that wet concrete and doing our testing for air at that location, as well as having somebody in the plant while it's going down, and we've upped the air account, okay? We've, we've raised the amount of air in the tenant, because you can raise it somewhat, but you don't wanna raise it too much, because it becomes a durability issue, okay? But if you had a choice of being slightly high or slightly low, you'd rather be slightly high, okay, for durability. Um, the other thing that's being studied, that's, uh, that we're watching carefully, is at MDOT, they're, um, they're watching the type of road salt that people are using, and what they're using on the surface when we're done, okay? The magnesium chlorides, okay? If you, uh, they're, they've finished a, a preliminary study that shows if you're using magnesium chloride instead of rock salt, that the odds of you having a joint failure are probably two to three times higher than if you're using rock salt, okay? Doesn't work quite as good, okay? But it, but when they saw those joints in those pavements, it exposes the mortar. The mortar is the weakest part of any road, okay, and it lets the water flow in the mortar, which then breaks up and then exposes the rocks, which then cause the joints to fail, okay? So, they, they're doing a pretty extensive study right now on magnesium chloride's impacts on concrete roads, as they are seeing it with their own products now. So, the other thing that we've looked at is the spacing of the joints, and, you know, it used to be, well, you know, most spacing of joints was twenty feet, you know, for a twelve-foot wide lane. Well, the more recent studies being done all over the United States says that you really shouldn't be out more than fifteen feet, or you're gonna possibly get a mid-panel break, okay? So, the, the spacing has come down. Okay, what does that do for you and the joint sealing? Just added twenty-five percent more joints to your project, okay? The clickety-click of two seventy-five, or whatever you wanna, it's gonna be a clickety-click, okay? But if it keeps the panel panels from having defractures, we call them in the corners, where it does that arc-cracking, and those other things should be less. Um, the other thing we're looking at in, in your mixes is, we've got some mixes that we, we call, uh, uh, MDOT, or thirty-five hundred P and four thousand P in our spec, but it's not an MDOT spec, it's got larger stone in it. And why do we want larger stone? Because the strongest piece of concrete, of the concrete is the stone. The weakest part is the mortar. So, what do you wanna have more of? You wanna have more stone, you wanna have it locked in better, where you saw those joints. In local streets, you want that aggregate interlock, okay? And if you're getting more than, than, um, six percent or so commercial traffic, you want load transfer, even in your residential streets, okay? So, you have to do that analysis to say, what is the right joint for this particular road with this particular traffic, okay? The reservoirs for the asphalt to go in, you know, a lot of them like to cut them, you know, a quarter inch thick, okay? We're looking at widening those out a little bit, okay, to get a little bigger reservoir of rubber in it, so that it has more bonding to the vertical faces, so that it can contract and expand without pulling away from one side of the joint. Those are the things that we've done in the last year, okay? Studying up and changing our specs of what we do, and we've shared them with O H M and that kind of stuff, so we are watching what's going on. You know, what, what's happening on Greenfield? You know, I know Tom Blust and those people say it's not A S R, but if it's not A S R, it's gotta be that there's something blowing that joint apart. I mean, I mean, for that age of pavement to have those kinds of problems is a huge problem.
Now, we have the items that you listed, Gary, in writing, in terms of what H R C could use to be on the development of future Evergreen Road, future projects.
We have it in our specification, well, sure, it's in our written specification, our twenty-five pages.
Can you make sure that, um, we have a copy of the data, involve everybody to the fire, because, you know, we've got a lot of verbal commitments in the past, and yet we're, we're still, you know, the city's still on the short end of, in terms of quality of roads that we have.
We understand, and I guess I would like to back up to like Nine Mile Road. Nine Mile Road, are we, what are we walking at later this week? We're walking Nine Mile Road later this week, okay? There is a pothole on the south side of the Eastbound Lane. It's where he dumped the dirt, the topsoil, on the pavement before he put the wearing course down. Obviously, that's probably why it's come loose and it's come off. There are six pages of typewritten punch list items on Nine Mile Road to be fixed, okay? Project's not final out, we have plenty of money to go fix it ourselves if we, if he doesn't fix it, but that job is nowhere near ready to be closed out, okay? So, there's rough asphalt returns, there's all sorts of stuff that's occurred there that, that the contractor had problems in putting down the mix. And you come to a point in time in the season where you say, well, we gotta cover it, we gotta get traffic on it for the winter, but you're coming back next year to fix it. Well, now, at that point, we're back at, come back next year to fix it, okay? The things, though, the expectations of, for the council and, and all the general people of the city of Southfield, the residents and everything, that you have to understand, I, I was here many years ago, when you had a concrete road, you got a concrete road totally rebuilt, and if you had an asphalt road, you got an asphalt road rebuilt. And, um, and budgets have made you do mill and fills and those kinds of things, and as Lee's pointed out, and Brett, when you do a mill and fill, there's nothing, there's two dissimilar materials. You've got concrete down below, and you've got asphalt up on top. They move at different coefficients of friction, and they're gonna open up, they're gonna crack. And the only way you can, you can avoid that is to separate and not have the asphalt bonded to the concrete. So, I mean, those types of issues, I mean, are, are real issues, that, that the only thing you come back and do is to joint seal, to keep them watertight, so they don't open up as per-
Now, in terms of accompaniment of the comments as it relates to Lasher, what, what can be done at this time with all the inconsistent seams, driveway and asphalt and concrete seams, what can we do on that road?
I wasn't involved with it, it doesn't sound like me, other than maybe, you know, some random meetings was involved with it, it was done by the road commission, but certainly your desires of, if you want all new concrete approaches, I can remember the day that this city never allowed an asphalt approach to go back in, and that wasn't that long ago, okay? Now, all of a sudden, you got a blend, or you got half and half, or whatever you got, okay, of asphalt and concrete. It's just, your standard is concrete approaches, make it concrete approaches, but be prepared, when you do a job, that you're gonna be held to that same test, okay? Okay, 'cause they're gonna watch and say, well, why do I have to do it if you've got a blend of approaches somewhere else that are asphalt? But if you want concrete approaches, then put it in your specs, okay? Put in your standards that they will-
Oh, that's our fault, then we have that.
Well, I don't know it's your fault. I think that putting half back in an asphalt and leaving the old, other half concrete, to me, is pretty short-sighted.
And that was a county project, like, the county went to those homeowners, they got what they had before, they had concrete, they got concrete, if they had asphalt, they have asphalt. Now, on Evergreen eight to nine mile, we're doing all-
All concrete.
All concrete. After hearing council's outrage over La- Lasher, we wrote that into the spec, and of course, that is all on our documents. So, you may have someone today who has a gravel asphalt on Evergreen eight to nine mile or asphalt, when this is all done, everything is concrete.
Yeah, Brett, let me just say this, Gary, you know, it, it didn't make sense to put asphalt. That's what really irritated me. I mean, they waited after they poured the street and the sidewalk, and then came back on that concrete that wasn't even to be driven on yet, and brings asphalt trucks on, the, the, uh, everything, all the equipment, and then they poured the asphalt, and, and it didn't make sense to me, you know? How could you put the roller, that heavy roller, it'd be going back and forth over the concrete, pushing down the asphalt? And, and, you know, that, that just doesn't make sense. So, when these engineers who, who were for, for the road commission, they oughta know better than that, and that's what really bothers me, and you look at the asphalt job they did on Twelve Mile Road, you know, I mean, how do you ever do a, a half of a lane? I mean, go down in front of Brother Rice and see what half of a lane on Lasher Road did. You can see, they just pull up a coal pack, and it, it just separates. And, and so, you know, some things have to be, you know, looked at by them to make sure that their, their roads are done right, you know? And, I mean, we don't have any power, everyone on our share are ten, twenty, thirty percent, and they go about their way, you know, sit up there in a park in the wreck and have all this junk laying around, and, and you miss it. I mean, if you're not, if you're not into being an engineer and looking for these things, you know, you're not gonna, you'll go ask a guy, hey, you know what you want, asphalt? Or concrete, you know the difference? And that's what they did. And then they took half of them, where they got the road on the east side, and they cut them in half, so one of them, some of them are half asphalt and half concrete. I mean, it doesn't, you know, I mean, for a person who's in the business, it didn't make sense, and we walked there with, with Lee and, and Mike, and we walked there a whole mile, and, you know, they just say, oh, we'll come back and do it, but we'll come back, never happened.
Yeah, I think that, uh, as, as we've had conversations before, you know, every project, it would be good to come in front of this body and walk through the particulars of the project before it goes to bids, you know? We're a strong advocate of that at the time that we're told to start a project, of what we've been told to do, and does that meet this body's, uh, its expectations or not, okay? And then to bring it back and preview it just before going to bids. This is what's in it. You know, that's, it's, it's making you informed, so you have your, your buy-in into what the project's gonna be, okay? Uh, just like Eleven Mile Road, we, you know, we came to you one time as a mill and fill, now it's gonna be separated and raised, okay? Now, you're aware of that, you know what's gonna happen and those kinds of things, but the other stuff is, uh, I certainly believe communication's a great thing, and to get to you guys and say, hey, this, you've got a million and a half dollars, based on a mile of two-lane road, this are, here's two or three options that you can do. What's your pleasure? You know? And you can, you can make a, a decision that what you think is the best decision of the city of Southfield to fix that one. I don't- I don't, I'd rather have more communication than less.
Um, I'm for Mr. Frazier. Oh, Lee, you mentioned that, with the warranty, that the city would fix the issue during the first three to five years because of the cost. To me, it's bad news for double paying, if we're paying to get the road fixed, I mean, we're gonna come back and get it if it's not, if it's hard, if we're not getting, if we're not quite understanding.
Well, something that is, you know, like, for example, on Nine Mile, where there was pavement that was done, you know, after it was poured, you could see the next week, like, well, you know, these certain areas didn't turn out well, the surface wasn't correct. That's something that automatically, you know, that we put, point out during a punch list type of thing. And that contractor will come and they'll cut out a patch and they'll replace it, and they don't charge us for that. Um, when there's an additional.
Right, they didn't do it right.
If it wasn't done correctly. Right, and that's part of the project, without a special warranty. When we build in warranties to the job, it's pretty much saying, okay, we finalized out the job, everything is acceptable, and now anything that happens, you know, for the next three to five years beyond, we're gonna come back, and what it really is, is end up fighting with the contractor about getting them to fix something, or what the cause of some new crack or some new failure was. When we finalize the project, the surface is good, it's the way it's supposed to be, this is what we expect, and this is acceptable to the city. And that's when they get paid. We don't pay them for all the work until it has been inspected and approved by the city of Southdale.
So, you know, we need to tighten our extension process, or pick up different contractors and do the work, because we're not gonna pass by with the work being done. So, regularly, what can we do to protect ourselves?
Well, we, you know, we do build currently, in our, in our contracts, we build a two-year maintenance and guarantee bond requirement in those contracts. So they go out to a surety, and they buy a, a maintenance and guarantee policy in the amount of the original contract amount. So if it's a million dollar project, they buy a million dollar maintenance and guarantee bond. And so, within that two years, if we go out and we find there was cracking, there was some defect that we believe means that they didn't build the project according to the spec, then we would, we would initially go to the contractor, and if you get no satisfaction from the contractor, you can make a claim against the bond, which is the surety.
Yeah, we've been doing that.
We, you know, we have, um, on instances, we've gotten to those points. I recall we've done it on a sidewalk project, we've done it on a road project. And, but let me tell you what the surety typically will say. Yes, we have this bond, but there is a dispute between you, the contractor, the city, and the contractor. Contractor's saying, oh, we did nothing wrong, we did it exactly, and you accepted the job, and maybe it was your snowplow equipment that caused this crack, or your garbage truck or something. So the surety will say, you guys decide, and if you can't decide and you end up litigating it, once there's a final determination of, was it the contractor's fault or wasn't it, then we'll pay. So, pretty much to some extent, it's a pot of money that will sit there, but you usually have to litigate to get the answer on, did the contractor do something wrong? And if you litigate and get that answer from either a judge, a jury, an arbitrator, then you can go back to the contractor, to the surety, which would have the money, and say, now pay us that money. So it's a, it's not a, it's not necessarily an easy process. I mean, obviously, from my perspective, the, the best handle we have is before we accept the roads as substantially complete and we make those, those final payments. Because it is hard.
Once you make their final payment, they're not all that excited about coming back because, no, they've been paid, and, and we don't have that leverage anymore.
Are we doing that on the federal contracts?
The federal contracts?
Well, the federal, the MDOT-led projects do not have.
That's right, and I just wanna point that out, because the, the projects we're talking about this year are all, are working under MDOT's rules.
Right, it's not a, a.
And so I just, I think council needs to have that distinction.
Right. All right, I'll come back to my question. Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, my question, well, the same as, as our president's. Um, but my question is, what's the incentive for the, for the contractor to do the best job they know how to do if they know we're gonna come and fix it?
Well, they, they still have to get approved by us.
Yeah, but if, we can approve it today, and it looks good, and three months down the road, something happens. If you buy a washing machine, and you get a warranty on it, the guy plugs it in and hooks up the hoses to it, and you do a load of wash and everything looks fine. Two weeks later, or three weeks later, or a month, you know, something goes wrong, you have a warranty, he comes back and fixes it.
But when you think about the type of failures you might see in the first few years after a project has been completed, typically what we see is not the road completely falling apart, it's typically some cracks here and there, maybe sooner than you were expecting. We're trying to work some things in on our Civic Center project, and then again on Nine Mile, we used, uh, this fabric that they put down, um, between the layers of asphalt, I believe. So this is supposed to help prevent reflective cracking when you're doing these mill and overlay projects. So, I mean, there's certain things that proactively we're trying to do. They're not cheap things to add to a project, so we're gonna be closely watching it to see, it's like, okay, are we getting a better life out of this overlay? Does this seem to be delaying, you know, the, the occurrence of cracks? Because they are gonna crack eventually. And the thing is with the contractors, when they walk away, what you are gonna see are cracks, if something does show up, you know, in three years or the first three to five years. Well, joint sealing is the cheapest thing to do, and it's certainly a lot cheaper for us to, and we do joint sealing every year, so if we send our contractor down Inkster Road, like this year would maybe be an appropriate year because Inkster was paved, it's been a few years now, four or five years.
How about that one?
Three years.
Great. But, you know, now's the time when, when I'd like to send our joint sealing contractor down there, take a look, I mean, I know there's not a lot of cracks, but if there's some, let's just get on top of it. And this, you know, this still has a nice right quality, it doesn't mean that the road is garbage, it's not potholes, and, you know, it's.
Well, they shouldn't, well, they shouldn't have to, you know, this sounds like we're building roads with just work, and this is their career, this is their job, this is what they do every day during the construction season. They oughta know how to put a road in so that it lasts, so that we don't have to come out later on and fix what they didn't do right. I, I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of it as being the contractors putting something down incorrectly.
We were, Don and I were with.
Gary, Gary what?
Yes, and Gary, and Mike walked Inkster Road six months after they had the road in it was cracking.
Oh, sorry, Eleven Mile?
Yes.
Right.
And Jim, and Jim was there.
Right, that was an area where, closer up by that intersection because of some shallow, um, pipelines, that was a more straight-up traditional type of overlay. Concrete, the rest of it, we did the, that stone layer to kind of separate between your concrete road structure and your new asphalt structure. Up here, there was no separation, the fact, and we did see cracks there a year later. And, I mean, HRC came forward with that, they ended up paying to have that joint sealed for us. Um, but, I mean, I talked to people at the road commission, I said, you know, we're, we saw some cracking after a year, and they looked at me like, huh, that happens sometimes. I mean, they were not at all alarmed by that. You know, it's not a total reconstruction, it's a re-cupthing.
In my next life, I'm gonna be a contractor.
Yeah, both of you.
I mean, we're, you know, doing the best here, with what we've got.
We've got a couple people.
But, but one of the, the things that's not being talked about, but it's a cost to the city, is the folks that we sent out to fix the, the roads, they're doing what we want them to do. They're, they're mowing grass or whatever else we had originally scheduled to do because they're out patching the roads that, uh, are watching the, the other contractors patch the roads that, that need to be patched. So it, it's really a cost to us in excess of what it's, looks like for us to go out and fix the roads, so.
I mean, that's a true statement. Our overall condition of our roads, when you look back to our whole road network, is on a downward trend. That means our streets and highway crews, who are much slimmer than they were in the past.
Right.
Are having to do a lot more pothole patching, because we have a lot more roads that are pothole patching. I think we all understand where this is going, and that's why we need to do something to correct it, we need additional funds, and if the, the change isn't gonna happen from the state level, we'd love to see the, the city, you know, dedicate more money to this, so we can make it right.
I've got a question for Gary. And you, you said that, the salting of the roads, uh, did they use the wrong kind of salt, rock salt versus?
Magnesium quarters.
Yes. Is there a timeframe between the time the road begins to cure before you should put salt on it, so that it doesn't deteriorate the surface of the road faster?
In an ideal world, you wouldn't put, eat rock salt, you'd use chemicals, uh, melters the first year.
Can, can we build that into our, that, can we build that into our process, that, you know?
Before, before allowing a little, little more time for it to work?
Yes.
It's not as fast as rock salt.
Not considering the road is a leg, then.
Well, whatever.
We can't do it, we can't do it.
Yeah, whatever, whatever snow control device or, uh, product that we put on the road, let's make sure that we don't do it too soon, so that we're at, we're at fault by.
We deliberately avoided salting Westbrook, uh, a couple of years ago, to see what would happen.
Yeah, I don't even, why do you say it? No, no.
No, 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 no.
No, I don't know.
We'll do the chemical.
Okay, whatever, whatever is least abrasive to the surface of the road.
But at, at that point, we do not have a machine to apply a chemical, straight chemical to our roads right now. We, we have, we have a way to mix the chemical with the rock salt.
Yeah.
At the truck, at the spinner, but we do not have a tank and sprayer to just spray the roads by themselves with just, uh, with, with.
Mix it or go.
That's a conversation for another day.
Right. We'll, we'll do a review, there is an official snow policy, but we'll, we'll sit down with our engineers and our team and do a review of procedures used on newer streets versus older streets, so allow them to cure.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
I was just, something came to mind, and actually was touched on briefly, as it relates to the warranty. Um, as two orders pointed out, you've got an M and G bond on your project today for local, local contracts. Um, in theory, under the method with the M and G bond, or even on the MDOT contract, it's our role to work with the contractors to try and hold their speed of the specifications. Then let's assume they, they cut grade appropriately, they get appropriate density, they are under the right temperature, the right moisture, the right ideal conditions, in theory, it's supposed to deliver you the product that you want. This, this warranty discussion is really kind of analogous to, you know, you, besides just buying the washer from Best Buy, it comes with a ninety-day manufacturer warranty, they try and upsell you on, on a warranty on the way out the door. And, and if you, you know, a lot of people will look at that when they're buying their appliances and say, if I buy an appliance on Ever, or if I buy a fifty-dollar warranty on every single electronic or appliance I buy, am I better off on the long haul keeping the money I would've spent on warranties and just putting it back in my pocket for the one that failed? And so I think you have to look at the three-year to five-year extended warranty, and what we talked about really is that extended warranty policy. If you're gonna do that, kind of like a, a little bit of a no questions asked, if I have a failure in the first three to five years, you really, the contractor's gonna buy that warranty, buy that bond by adding cost to the project, they have to pay for that. And, and the question really to ask yourself is, do I think that in the long haul, I'm gonna be better off by having that cost of that warranty, which is estimated to be somewhere in the five, we'd say five to eight percent range, uh, in my own pocket to go do work, whether it's with my own forces or not? That, that's, that's not to take away from the fact that we're still working very diligently on every project, and we're talking about maybe ramping it up more to make sure that they follow the rules. Thank you, I just thought that might help.
That was interesting, I'm excited.
Um, so, uh, the, what happens on Nine Mile, where they put down a surface that's very pitted, um, it doesn't even look like it's a new road. So, they're not, obviously, they're not gonna repaint the whole road, right?
No, and really, the, besides some specific areas around some of the turns, where, you know, the surface is obviously more gravelly, that is that specific type of asphalt mix for that road. It's a more open grated mix, and after, you know, there were some initial.
Why would we learn that?
Pardon?
Why would we learn that?
You know, it's a, it's a standard MDOT mix that's used on major roads because it's strong. Um, after that project, it was one of those conversations we've had internally, okay, no more three-C mix, because people don't like the way it looks. And the majority of that road, it looks the way it's supposed to look. I mean, and it's going, it's structurally sound, it's not, you know, ravelling or anything like that. Um, I mean, besides a couple of the localized areas that we know they had trouble with.
You know, I think, um, I, I don't know if that's cheaper, but if we're gonna go out and ask the public some money, uh, and again, knowing that the public are not road engineers, they, they just drive and they wanna make sure it's smooth, uh, and it's attractive. So, you know, I, I think we open ourselves for criticism when you get it, you know, you've done a mile of road down there and it doesn't look very good. So, it says to me that, um, the city is, is spending money but not getting quality, even if it is.
Yeah, I think.
You might know it's quality.
Some stuff.
But if we're gonna go for, um, a, a special assessment or a road bond, uh, you know, whatever, we've gotta be able to defend it, and we're not gonna be able to educate the public about mixes of asphalt. I mean, you wanna put them to sleep, uh, start that conversation.
Noted, no more three-C.
Is it cheaper?
Uh, oh, four-C, sorry. Um, but I don't even think it's necessarily a cheaper type of mix, I don't think there's a whole lot of difference in cost from one mix to the next. Um, when you're looking at a major trunk line, you know, there's a certain menu of mixes that you can choose from that can sustain those traffic.
Really?
So.
Yeah, and, and just for the record, Ten Mile Road, from Telegraph to the Lodge, is the same exact mix?
It looks worse on Nine Mile.
I know the position that we have, the public works director is taken, but it seems to me the council's saying they want, they want us standard, they want us consistent, and I don't know who's making the decision to use different mix for different roads, and who's deciding if we, we aren't demanding that we do all concrete like we used to, but that seems to be what's missing. It seems like there is some internal decisions that are being made, and I'm not saying they're bad decisions, but they're not meeting the expectation of the council. And, you know, I, I'm a strong believer we need to fill that position, but there has to be a certain level of expectation beneath what this council is saying from when we're letting these roads and doing these contracts. So we're not in the, in the, you know, she's not doing anything wrong, it was a mix that was offered, but the council is saying they have a different expectation, and, and some kind of way of a disconnect.
We, we would welcome the opportunity to come back and run the council on more of these, as I think has been said earlier, the communication. And we can, you know, when Nine Mile was done, I, I think the adjective that council was, was correct, pitted, and then folks were comparing that to the look of the, the smoother appearance of the finish of Civic Center Drive. And, you know, I'm not sure how the aggregate mix was picked, or, or, but we could certainly start qua, you know, putting those standards into play, I mean, this conversation helps us out. And we knew after we saw Nine Mile, but I didn't know until today, though, this is the same thing we have on Ten Mile?
Yeah.
Because it clearly has a very different appearance, so I would, um, it's somewhat baffling. But we could certainly work to better define these, uh, standards of that. Uh, it's part of, part of this dialogue that we, we need to have. Um, these things have been kind of just moving along, specs are being written, and no one's saying, what is the finish? To, uh, asphalt versus concrete, that's really coming down through the federal aid committee, and most of our funding is three R jobs. Uh, on the new concrete, we got the message after Lasher Road, Evergreen Road, already gonna have a concrete driveway, and, you know, when the asphalt incur more two dollars extra, make that happen.
You know, I, I would, I think, someone in Jordan's had a hit on it, but someone said, I think, this is a government body. me, this is a government body. We expect our experts to advise us and not just come back and then we're saying, because we don't work concrete, we're trying to person here for concrete. I don't care how much we talk about it, we don't know that dynamic. We got a whole team here, we have internal staff. And so, somewhere along the line, that connection to the quality and the expectations, it should be, we should have someone come to us and saying, you know, you have an option for a warranty. This is what's happened in the past. This is what we advise. Because the council has an issue with outcomes. And so that's the piece that I, you know, and everybody here is not for dingham, but we're not getting where we want to be. And once it's down, we're living with it. And every time you ride over that road, it's frustrating and irritating. Because we're kind of stuck with that. And that's not where we should be. And so, how do we connect the dots in advance? So, we're all on the same page. And we know whoever's doing this contract knows council's not going to buy that. It's not acceptable.
Well, it clearly starts with the specs. And this is why this slide was-
Right.
They wanted council to better understand how the bid process and the funding and then the quality assurance. At the end of the day, if council wants us to move warranties into these projects, we will. But I think there have been lessons, you know, unfortunately very expensive lessons learned on some of our more recent road projects. And I believe that simply because we haven't had a more recent history of doing some of these projects.
I think that the money issue has forced us to really look at everything. And that's the reality. When we look at, you know, $6 million, that's not a walk in a parkway anymore. That's a huge commitment. And so, to say that I'm taking, I'm taking this from my budget of planning for this and I'm not getting what I want, and you're going to continue to see that.
And Mr. Smith, there are several items that we're looking for, which is, is that the new one you're going to add?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the first one is on page thirty-eight, and that's the water sewer improvement section twenty-four. We'll take a consensus at this point. Mr. Lance?
Yes, Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Cybert and Mr. Cragger.
I'd like to ask a question first. And that is, we've been hitting the water sewer circle pretty hard. How quickly does it recover?
The, it nets about six to, five to six million a year of annual revenues for the last three years. Net revenues after expenditures and debt service.
Okay. Because we've got a lot of projects. If we can go through this pretty quickly and find that we're painting ourselves into a corner, on this project, I would say yes. But I just want it to be, you know, one foot on the brake pedal.
Yeah. It should be noted, I believe we got about $2 million a year coming out of debt service. And we'll lose $3 million of that within three years as well. And that's part of the forecast. We'll be doing kind of a five, five-year on an annualized basis, we'll do a quick snapshot to year ten and then some recommendations. But your net change in position, revenues over expenditures, ten, eleven, was 6.1 million. Eleven, twelve, seven point three. Twelve, thirteen was 4.3.
Okay. But is that normal expenditures, not going in to do special projects?
This, well, you did have a large Obama capital projects in twelve thirteen. You did a lot of the work on the section twelve thirteen.
Just a warning that we need to do some projections so we don't paint ourselves into a corner.
As we start the budget process, you'll see more thought processes given to that.
Do you want more, Mr.?
Exactly.
All right. So, we're saying yes on sanitary sewer improvement section. Next meeting is at expenditure is page forty-four. And that's the future design construction project being the BASF for the Nine Mile Road.
And actually, I want a permission to apply to the M and E DC. We'll bring that through a rate for the next, May nineteenth meeting. And then we'll continue to explore the SAD because the company did approach us about that. And then I'd like a consensus to proceed with preliminary design engineering.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, hold on one second. So, I don't say yes just yet. Because this is the, when I was working for the state, this was a project that we had worked on and tried to get them to M and E DC funding for this. I really strongly would like to see BASF firmly contribute to this project, not just in a hypothetical way. I want to see, you know, this is a road that only leads to their property.
I agree.
No, the whole public drives on this road.
I, at one point during their tax appeal, and it should be noted, BASF has now acquired the building. They were previously leasing. Their job generation, when we were going through the application for permanent drain, they were not, they were very reluctant to make a large job commitment. And now, Mr.-
Yeah, this is, this is when I was, I was working in the state reps office, they had tried to work with us to fill out their application. We worked with the city so that they could get some funding from the state to make it happen. But there was never a firm contribution on their part, and it is a road that only leads to their property. I'm very uncomfortable with having the city commit to this construction project without BASF sitting at the table saying, you know, we're going to make an X dollar commitment.
If it's an SAD, they'll bear the largest piece of it. If we can secure M and E DC funds, there are 150 new jobs coming with it. And even in the tax appeal, we actually tried, we actually asked them if they would consider taking ownership of the road. And that's going back almost two and a half years.
Right.
Would you, can you just, you're complaining about the road, would you just-
Take it?
So.
So, what can be done to firm that up?
Well, the SAD, we would recoup the engineering-
Are you putting any in this? You're not putting any city money. It's either going to be M and E DC money or an SAD.
Or both.
Right. Combination.
Okay.
Or we would upfront the money on an SAD, but they would be paying it back with interest.
I just want to make sure that's clear before I say, yeah.
Mr. Lance, you're saying yes as well?
Well, we would recruit that in the other grant. That would be-
All right. And here's to number forty-eight, page forty-eight. And this is again a future construction project, and that is the federal economic development administrative grant.
And I'd like permission to submit the grant. We'll bring this to the May nineteenth. Again, the uniqueness of this position, this grant, Greenfield, Nine Mile, Northwestern Highway, that the local match would come from existing projects. The next funding deadline, I believe, is June sixteen. And the next one after that is September. So, we would present this at the May, the May nineteenth meeting, permission to apply. But I've already engaged the engineering company, HRC, just to give us cost estimates involved in the project. It wasn't discussed that it could come back. We're looking at doing that water main along, in addition to the Northwestern-
On the Service Drive.
Service Drive. While we're redoing the Service Drive, we'd like to redo the water main to improve the westernly part of the DDA's water flow. So, that would also be part of the match.
And this is a process that's quite a lot.
Well, but your local match is going to come from matches you're already making. Greenfield, Northwestern Highway, and Nine Mile. This is a, two years from now, this opportunity won't exist. We're leveraging what's already being invested.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Lance?
Yes.
And Moss, and Cybert?
Yes.
And Mr. Cragger.
Yes.
Okay. The next side of meeting is at expenditure is on page fifty-one, fifty. And that is the, another federal economic development administrative grant.
And I'd like permission to submit the grant. We'll bring this to the May nineteenth. Again, the uniqueness of this position, this grant, Greenfield, Nine Mile, Northwestern Highway, that the local match would come from existing projects. The next funding deadline, I believe, is June sixteen. And the next one after that is September. So, we would present this at the May, the May nineteenth meeting, permission to apply. But I've already engaged the engineering company, HRC, just to give us cost estimates involved in the project. It wasn't discussed that it could come back. We're looking at doing that water main along, in addition to the Northwestern-
On the Service Drive.
Service Drive. While we're redoing the Service Drive, we'd like to redo the water main to improve the westernly part of the DDA's water flow. So, that would also be part of the match.
And this is a process that's quite a lot.
Well, but your local match is going to come from matches you're already making. Greenfield, Northwestern Highway, and Nine Mile. This is a, two years from now, this opportunity won't exist. We're leveraging what's already being invested.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Lance?
Yes.
And Moss, and Cybert?
Yes.
And Mr. Cragger.
Yes.
Okay. The next side of meeting is at expenditure is on page fifty-one, fifty. And that is the, another federal economic development administrative grant as well.
Fifty.
Page fifty.
And again, this is just to commence with the SAD process and the grant application, as well as a discussion with the M and E DC about possibility of doing M and E DC economic development for the industrial part.
Is it, we're saying to commence design engineering, but is there some council wouldn't get some of the funds that you're applying for?
When you see the language on the nineteenth, I will soften that trigger. I only need preliminary cost estimates to move forward with the applications. We can pull the trigger on the-
So, the design engineer is the company?
I need only preliminary cost estimates.
All right. Let's give it a listen.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I did one last one I would like to send here. And that is, do we want to consider, and I know we're under time restraint, according to our city attorney, going after a bond for road improvements under our major street. Is there something that this council is willing to entertain at this point? And so, what would be, you would drop dead stage, that you would really have to make a decision? Do you do enough time to-
Well, we, we kind of backed up with the city clerk in terms of when, I don't see how it's possible for August, but we backed it up from the November date. And between when it needed to be submitted to the Oakland County clerk and when language, if we're talking about a millage, which is what I thought we were initially discussing, to be absolutely safe, right around June twenty-eighth, the language would be, need to be done and into the attorney general for his review and approval. Now, if we, we know that even when we did the millage back in 2011, we didn't have as much time as states. But we also know that Miller Council has a little bit of ties, and they can always, and they did that for us in 2011. And they were able to shorten that time. Usually, to be safe, you want four to six weeks in the hands of the attorney general, just to be safe. So, every, the June twenty-eighth is the six weeks. So, if we go into July, we're probably still okay. But as you keep moving forward and don't have that language in, you're probably getting into a, kind of a murky area. So, ideally, right around June twenty-eighth to have language.
So, I guess I want to say, do we want to schedule another meeting to look at that a little bit closer?
Probably.
All right. There will be a consensus on it. Any opposition to another meeting?
I don't have any problem with another meeting. I'm a little chilly on going for a bond. I'd much rather, I'd feel a lot more comfortable, and maybe this isn't the next meeting. I'd feel a lot more comfortable using what we've already kind of given consensus to. So, people can see that we've actually done something. And then we could go to, go to the public and say, we want to finish what we've already started. But if we haven't started anything, and we say, we're going to do it, but we need more money, you know, by raising taxes, I'm a little, I'm a little chilly on that. So, but I'm, I'm open to another meeting. In case I miss, coming to the meeting earlier, I would like to say.
All right. Do we need to schedule that meeting because we are under, under the grant?
That's irregular.
I see right.
Until we can have the-
Oh, looking for the-
Is the road next week?
We have a twelve for the budget.
How much time do you think you can, I don't know.
Aren't we meeting early in the week?
I'll vote.
Okay.
Stop, stop, stop.
We can do a five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Okay. Battle first, we're going to go to the nineteenth at five o'clock.
Well, you, you got that, you did, you do rule ten?
Okay.
She's giving rule ten?
We have a lot of time.
I think that five thirty is-
Five thirty may not give us enough time.
All right. Maybe later.
We have a motion by Mr. Cass, or by Mr. Dino for rule ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Make sure that we have a meeting scheduled for May nineteenth at five o'clock. Meet the hall. And this discussion on a possible marriage for us.
Can I get, okay, we have a motion by Councilman for Cass, or by Councilman Lance?
No, I don't.
We have another discussion. Do you want more?
She wrote it out. Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Cass, or by Mr. Lance, schedule a meeting for May nineteenth at five o'clock. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council, let's take a ten-minute break.
Can we, I want to give you an update on the project. If we could just take five minutes?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, it's kind of, it's something for developments with Evergreen Road.
Okay. So, the, our South Evergreen Road project from eight to nine mile, that has actually started. The contractor is out there doing work. Right now, they're, it's mostly exploratory work right now. The road is not closed yet. It's expected to be closed one day next week. And then that will get that project officially affecting traffic around here and making progress on getting the utilities installed and then widening that road out.
We highlight the closure. Which lanes are, northbound is-
This entire road is going to be closed, Evergreen from eight to nine mile. So, the side streets will not have access to Evergreen, except the one neighborhood on the west side of Evergreen, just north of eight mile. They only have access to Evergreen, so they, of course, will, there will be a road open for them to have access. For the residents and businesses that are on Evergreen Road, there will be one lane of traffic southbound so that people can get to their homes or get to the party store, the auto parking store.
What about the school?
The school, it's, the buses, we've been talking to them, they're going to come up through the neighborhood and let off on the side street. And we've been coordinating, coordinating with them. But it's the same thing for the school too, you know, until school is out, if people are, they can drive down Evergreen Road, drop off at the school where they need to. They would then have to continue south to eight mile to get to where they're going next. So, they have to get going. And then we have our, our North Evergreen project. This is the one that Councilman for Cassy alluded to, that there were problems on, at the M dot level after this project was let. The low bidder did not submit some paperwork on time, so that bid was rejected. The second low bidder was over $1.3 million higher, which was 22% over the engineer's estimate. So, this has, really just all come up in the last few business days to see what our options are here. And it's really going to be in the city's best interest to rebid this project. And so, that bid letting is May twenty-first. HRC was working diligently over the weekend. Those documents all had to be resubmitted to M dot today at noon. And so, we did get those in. So, we are on that May twenty-first bid letting. The way that this is going to impact our road progress is, the project really isn't going to get underway till probably right after Fourth of July, we'll be starting, which means that we are not going to finish this project this year. So, we will have, all the southbound lanes will be constructed, the curbs will be in. And the curbs for the median, though, not landscaping, you know, that will still be waiting for spring like was originally planned. During the winter months, when we are shut- During the winter months, when we are shut down for the construction work, the southbound traffic will be on the new pavement on the west side of the road, and the northbound traffic will still have two lanes of traffic. That's where we were going to put that inch of asphalt where necessary to make, you know, that surface more drivable. So we won't be down to one lane in each direction for the whole winter, but we will be on a partially reconstructed road.
Excuse me, I missed one of the things, we're late submitting something, um, is there any appeal process that we can make?
They're not meeting.
Who's not meeting?
The road commission.
Is there, who, Oakland County or is MDOT?
Oakland, MDOT. That's the problem. They canceled their main meeting.
Okay, so is there any appeal process? Because this is major.
Right.
So, is there an appeal process?
There, the contractor who lost the low bid has an appeal process, and that, the board that would have heard that review would meet May twenty-second. However, when that was being discussed with MDOT, the folks at the Federal Highway Administration said to MDOT, even if you appeal this, this is, um, the lack that, that this was late, that put at risk all of the federal funds. So you, you have, the, the low, low bid contractor failed to submit a major piece of information required by the Federal Highway Administration by nine minutes.
This is, this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Nine minutes.
Had the Appeal Board met, had a monthly meeting, they meet the fourth Thursday, and for every year until this year, they were meeting once a month. This year, they only meet every other month. The appeal date was May twenty-second. But I think what's interesting though is MDOT came back and said, listen, we can, quickest way to do this is to rebid at May twenty-first, and then we don't have to deal with the Federal Highway Administration arguing about this appeal. And who would have been on the hook for the additional one point two?
It would have been the.
It would have been this. I mean, this is, it, this is absurd, and when folks get to answer this, it's a big thing to be real.
This, this happened with multiple projects for that April fourth bid letting. Um, and that had initiated this special provision that allows the contractors to submit documents instead of having it submitted with their bid, as historically they've always done. They were allowed a grace period until two PM that day. So there were multiple projects that the contractors were late submitting, and this is, I'm, been a huge headache for MDOT as well as local agencies, especially for a project like ours that was on a very aggressive schedule to begin with. So, I mean, this has completely messed this up. Even if, you know, that low bidder were to win the appeal, that appeal process wasn't even, you know, when we first thought that the, they were able to appeal, that still wasn't even going to happen until May twenty-second, so our schedule was already being affected. So the fact, the only upside that there is to having this spread out, because the schedule is less aggressive, I mean, we couldn't physically get it all done now, it's construction season. We're hoping this opens the, the bids up to some more competition. So the, our schedule was so aggressive that really only the biggest of the big contractors would have been able to do it. Um, we're hoping to give us more competition and possibly better prices, you know.
Mr. Cass, Rayter.
Yeah, you know, I hate to say this, but everybody's seen, already seen the bids. So this is like playing poker, and you've seen the opponent's whole card. And, you know, um, I guess we might get the job cheaper, but, um, cheaper than, you know, the second bid is gonna be cheaper than, than it was before, but, boy, this really sounds silly. You know, we're government, and we're here to help.
Right, this is really out of our control. MDOT has told us on this new bid letting, they will not have that special provision in. Uh, you know, it will go back to the way it historically has been, where all documents have to be submitted at the time of bid.
You know, there, and I, and I, there has to be something we can do.
I can't accept that a nine-minute mistake is gonna cost us a road construction season. Uh, you know, there has to be some sort of strongly worded letter approved by this council in order to send to the appropriate person, and maybe we can get attention. I can't sit here and we just throw our hands up. And I'm not saying that we are, but we can't leave this table without something communicating from this council, strongly worded, that we all sign on to, because maybe, you know, speak more than, than, than city staff, you know, fighting on our behalf, if we are.
You gotta go to Colonel, you just gotta go to Colonel and Debbie.
But something has to be done.
At the federal level.
Because what, and my, what turned my type of position on this is when the Federal Highway folks will deny it, if the federal funds would be at risk. And when MDOT, but this, through our lobbyists, not only our lobbyists, but City of Romulus was in a similar position under the road project, this went, our lobbyist, Danny Muchmore, Pat Harrington. Also, I know Bobby Showtak made a call, Stidle himself was on some of these calls about this. We played a number of angles to try to get people, you know, we said, look, there's eight land square feet of office, major employment center. We went over all, all of this. Let me point out, this though, our, this, the city itself, we routinely reject bids that are more than a minute late. And I, oh, I see that pretty much on every other bid opening, there'll be someone who's two minutes late, and they wanna just scream foul, and we say no.
It should be pointed out too, that our deadline to resubmit was noon today, or we would have went back another letting. Okay, so we've made these changes. We've actually added some things that should be cost beneficial to the, to the city that we couldn't get in the last bid package, they wouldn't let us put it in. So, but it is in, Lancy, it is gonna be advertised on Wednesday, and the bids are gonna be due two weeks from Wednesday. So it is, the motion based on guidance from administration and everybody was make this deadline, so we had people in over the weekend doing that to make this deadline, and it was posted. Okay? You're not, as Fred said, you're not alone. There's thirteen projects that fell into this category on the April fourth letting, and Taken Road, huge project up in Rochester Hills, eighteen million dollar job up in LaPierre County, all of those were all impacted by the same thing. Okay? So it's, it's a, it's a huge problem. And you just got into the middle of that by nine minutes. And their, their, their opinion is one minute, or nine minutes, or three days, same effect. And that's what they told us today about submitting. One minute in the afternoon, you're on the next letting.
But, but certainly, I would encourage you as a council to write a letter to the, to express your displeasure with it.
I, I think we should.
And we have a board meeting once a month, this is during, this is during peak construction season.
I, I'd be in favor of making that.
And what hasn't been said, we were originally supposed to be on the March.
And they didn't, couldn't get us on the March letting, so they pushed us to April with an expedited award. And now you're on the May twenty-second.
I'm still without any.
I'd like that all entailed in the letter too.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just the rest of our projects that are gonna be going this year. Uh, the Greenfield Road, that's the road commission's project, um, that is on schedule for a June sixth bid letting, so most likely that construction will start in July. That's a month earlier than they originally had told us, so there's good news somewhere. And we've got our section thirty-one water main project, we just had our pre-construction meeting today. They are, um, we're just waiting for signed contract books, they anticipate the start May nineteenth on that project. And, oh, this is another call I just got last week from the road commission. They, it's not a total replacement, but there's a lots of road bridge south of ten mile over by Southfield High School. It needs some heavy maintenance, and the road commission is going to be doing that this year. They got funding, it has to be spent this year. So while we are going to have Evergreen closed from eight to nine mile, they are going to have that bridge shut down to traffic from nine to ten. And that's, that's not gonna start until, um, August, beginning of August until October. Or no, no, I'm sorry, I got it, I got it wrong.
That's not that old a bridge.
Pardon?
That bridge isn't that old.
Oh, I'm not sure. And I, I don't even know the details of exactly what they're doing.
It's been replaced in my lifetime.
Everyone else is now.
No, a lot of these bridges are old. This one has been replaced in my lifetime.
Yeah, maybe it's.
And your point is?
I'm sorry, and I misspoke to their schedule because they're going to be open by eight that, end of August, before the schools back in session. So it must be starting in July, opening day, end of August. When they called me about it, they were really just calling to ask, you know, what permits from the city were necessary. And the gentleman I was speaking to, he didn't even know that we were gonna have Evergreen shut down between eight and nine, so. But I said, can you guys put it off a year? You know, they said, no, this is funding, this risk funding that came up, and they got some allocation from the state, and it has to be spent this year. And Telegraph Road Irrigation. Well, Council, for Cass, you'll be happy to know that that's finally getting started. They're supposedly starting this week, they could be out there today. Um, and we had a pre-construction meeting for that last week up at MDOT's office and the Oakland County office. And they're gonna be starting, one of the good things I was happy to hear is the subcontractor that's gonna be doing the irrigation work is a subcontractor that has worked on our irrigation system that, that we had in there for years, so we're very confident in his ability to get the work done and what he's doing.
Are they gonna replace some landscaping too?
Right, that's the part that we are participating. MDOT's paying a hundred percent of the cost for the irrigation system. Um, because we were not happy with the quality of what MDOT called topsoil and restoration around the planting beds, um, they are paying fifty-fifty with us to take out four inches of that topsoil and put down fresh topsoil and, uh, grassy mix. So, and this is all being done under close review by the city with their specifications.
And beyond the assessment, all right? The土地 property owners?
Pardon?
They're collecting the assessment.
The SAD, yes.
We're gonna take two items before we break. The way Pete Hart, um, the roads, uh, the community relationship, man, you're gonna do that for us.
Yeah. I get it, that one minute actually to bring this down, or bring up there.
All right, yes. Michael, we're gonna do one other item before you start. So, come along.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Council, in your package, you have a recommendation from, you have a recommendation from me for the city assessor appointment. Um, ladies and gentlemen, as you know, Council, that David T. Duraney has been our, our appraiser for the last five years. Um, he has served us and he has expressed his desire to retire. Uh, his last full day of employment, employment will be May ninth. In pursuant to the city charter, it is the duty of the mayor to appoint a city assessor with approval of the city council. I'm here therefore to present to you my selection of Michael Radcliffe as a city assessor, and I ask that you approve this appointment. Michael Radcliffe, as many of you know, worked for the city of Southfield, um, for a period from nineteen ninety through nineteen, I'm sorry, between two thousand and six. During that time, he served as a deputy and as well as the city assessor for the city of Southfield and the commercial appraiser. Since he left the city, he has gained, and this is the beauty of my recommendation, he has moved on to higher levels of responsibility as an assessor in that field that has increased his, his, um, experience. He has served, um, as a property tax consultant in private industry, where he represented the commercial building, um, um, community. He's also served as an assessor in another community, um, of Taylor, and recently, he served as the assisting, assistant equalization director for Wayne County, and also the acting director of Wayne County, or, um, uh, director. The other thing that I think is notable that we've taken to consideration in seeking your approval, is that he has been the instructor for the State Tax Commission and the Michigan Assessors Association for state certification of other assessors who are seeking to become assessors in our, in our state. He is certified as a Level Four. This will be my fourth appointment that has brought, brought with to the council. I can tell you, the, the challenge of finding a certified Level Four that has commercial experience that's needed in a city like Southfield is really, really, uh, a very, very difficult task. You'll have some Level fours, and there are not that many, that are available in our state, and you will have them, and they will not have ever experienced the, the level of sophistication that we need with the number of high-rise buildings and multiple, um, the multiple families that we have here in the city of Southfield. So I am bringing to you, his resume is in the package, and he is here, uh, please come forward, Michael, uh, so he can answer any questions that you may have, and I am asking for you to approve the appointment, uh, for Mr. Michael Radcliffe. Uh, your appointment will grant him a beginning start date of May the twelfth for twenty fourteen. And, uh, I submitted to the body for approval, and, uh, Mr. Radcliffe is here for any questions you may have.
All right, Council, any questions?
The only, the only thing is this, you must have had an easy life, 'cause you don't look any older than that.
Right, now. Well, this, we, we will, we will need a rule ten on this appointment.
I'll move a rule ten up to court.
But we have a motion by Mr. Price, supported by Mr. Charles Chalk, a rule ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll move the appointment of Michael Radcliffe, as a city assessor.
We have a motion by Mr. Price, supported by Mr. Dino, to approve Mr. Michael Radcliffe as a city assessor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Welcome back.
May I, Michael?
I appreciate your, uh, consensus, um, this is coming back home for me, and I, I do look forward to it. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Shake hands.
Absolutely. I appreciate.
And also, Madam Chair, uh, I will be presenting today as per the charter, the first regular
scheduled meeting of May, uh, the budget for the city. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, you always get the letter, uh, there are some things that I have highlighted that is extremely important, important to us in our budget year. And one is maintaining the high quality of city services in our city. Uh, we have made a commitment to, um, in this city, and we've done it since tough economic times, as our budget improves, I want my message to the council to be that we must be diligent to make sure that we maintain a balanced budget, where we're operating within our means, and that we understand if it had not been for our, the good fiscal policies of the council, we would not have the resources to maintain ourselves. Code enforcement, public safety, we talked a lot today about roads, water, and facilities, and infrastructure. In this budget, um, and communicating with our city administration, we have made a concerted effort to ensure in this budget that funds for infrastructure and buildings that we own, that we budgeted for them in these major road projects. So today, Madam Chair, I'll present, um, the budget to the city and, uh, look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, and we will continue with the last portion of the goals to be met.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'd like to provide you just with a brief overview of some of the ways we are keeping the public informed about the current and upcoming road construction and water main improvement projects throughout the city. Uh, one of the chief, uh, communication tools that the city has, of course, is the city newsletter, and this was the lead story in the Southfield Living, uh, that went out just recently. And in addition to that, we have a, an active campaign on social media that we're utilizing to keep the public informed, as well as press releases, of course, and we've had a number of positive news articles as well, the most current South folks on that road should have seen, well, the articles in the Free Press News and several in the Oakland Press as well. Uh, we're also utilizing the city's E-News. Uh, we're also utilizing the city's e-news, um, notification system. Uh, we've actually have two, the city's e-newsletter that is, uh, everyone should receive, it's uh, a graphic, um, graphically appealing e-newsletter that goes out, as well as the Gove delivery system, uh, which that is used for instant alerts and notifications that need to get out right away. Uh, in addition to that, we've got uh, the updates as they occur, as I mentioned. Um, and we're doing also communication efforts to reach out to the business community as well, to keep them informed, as well as the public. Uh, we are also developing an app that's currently in development now. Uh, and this would be used for a wide range of purposes, but one of which would be to have construction updates as well that we pushed out through our assessor feeds. Uh, that's in development currently. Uh, then of course, we'll continue to communicate the latest developments as they occur, such as the possible delay in the project beginning. I just wanted to show you briefly an overview of the city website. And uh, you see here under highlights on the city's homepage, construction projects. And you click there and brings you up, uh, it's the city, let's cooperate here, um, an overview of the uh, current projects as well as the uh, future road projects and then the city's road jurisdiction map. Uh, you click on the dropdown button, you've got the Evergreen Road Project North End and it gives a complete detailed information about the project, including uh, public meeting notices, um, more project details, while the overview of the beginning. And then of course, a uh, a helpful video on roundabouts that we've got on here as well. Uh, just to kinda help the public a little bit to understand, we don't have a lot of roundabouts currently in Michigan. Um, and this is an MBD video that gives um, an overview of roundabouts, how they work as well as how to drive them. So, uh, I think that'll be very helpful to the community. And we've also got...
Chill me again? There you go.
Correct. And then we've of course, got this in print as well and detailed instructions there. Uh, and then we also have the same for the South End Project, an overview as well as detail. Um, we have the uh, road construction detour map, um, that all this will continue to be updated as things occur. So we'll keep the public informed of the latest news and information as it comes out. Let's go through a little bit more of this, but uh, and then of course, the Greenfield Road Project as well. And then we do have Section thirty-one Water Main Project as well. So, we'll continue to utilize all the communication tools that we have available to keep the public informed. And as I mentioned, we'll also keep them informed about the latest delays in the project also. It'll be really nice to do.
I think in, we should have an app for parks, right? So that they can call and get golf course.
Absolutely.
Or anything else that, that, uh, if they have a ticket sale or something like that.
Absolutely. In fact, that's one of the things that we look to have developed in the app. Um, ultimately, we'd like to have it where you can choose golf times, tee times, that kinda thing.
Arena, could be arena.
Absolutely. Yes, and these are all things that we plan to include in there, that's what's currently in development now. It'll be used for a lot more than just the road construction, but that will be a useful tool. Now, of course, this is something that folks would have to download. Um, but uh, we're currently in beta testing for the um, Apple product. Uh, it's a little bit further out as far as for the Droid products, but it's all been currently developed now.
Great job. Thank you so much, Michael. Okay, Council, let's take a ten-minute break and we will resume at five thirty. Our meeting is over. So, we're getting up with the second item on our agenda, that's the Brownfield redevelopment plan and development, planning development from Southfield Park Plaza. And I believe there's one to meet the invitation to have a meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilwoman. I'm Bo Bo. This staff has received a request from Erkin Jonah on behalf of Southfield Park Plaza for the approval of the Brownfield redevelopment plan. I will ask them to come forward in just a few minutes to give their overview of the project. I just wanted to um, inform everybody that they did present to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on March twentieth. The authority was in strong agreement of the plan, there were a couple of issues that arose that they had asked the staff to work with, um, Southfield Park Plaza to discuss, which, um, was the right-of-way issue as well as um, uh, the city foregoing the taxes over the term of the plan. And um, Mr. Jonah will discuss that when he comes forward. Um, just to remind you, the Southfield Redevelopment Authority was created in two thousand and one, and the purpose of the authority is to promote revitalization, redevelopment and reuse of contaminated, dilated, functionally obsolete properties through the use of tax increment financing. Over the years, the city has approved seven projects which have yielded extremely positive results for the city, including the redevelopment of twelve and Telegraph, um, for that mall, Spring Haven, Cloverleaf, Kamau, People's State Bank. Those are some examples of the good work of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This project is the former St. Beach Church site located at eighteen-two-ninety West Twelve Mile Road, on the northwest corner of Twelve Mile and Southfield Road. The site is nine, um, nine point one-three acres. And again, they're looking to demolish existing structures and build two new, two new retail buildings, um, and an Applebee's along with some residential units. This property qualifies as, the site has been deemed functionally obsolete by a level four assessor. I know many of you thought that this might have been an ideal reuse for another church. However, the assessor, the level four assessor found a significant amount of asbestos. And in order for the property to be reused, it would have, it would be cost prohibitive for the renovation of the site to remove all the asbestos, asbestos at the location. So, this Brownfield plan, there's a total of three point three million dollars of eligible expenses. And I'll have um, Mr. Jonah come forward and go through in greater detail. But that includes um, this asbestos evasion of approximately two hundred thousand dollars, the demolition of the property at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, site demolition at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and site preparation at two point seven million And again, this is, you, you have the plan attached in your folder. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jonah to come forward.
Good evening, my name is Erkin Jonah, AF Jonah Development, we're the owners of the St. Beach property. Um, I think Shelley touched on just about uh, most of the numbers. The one thing that I think uh, that we need, look, we had met with the uh, with the Brownfield Authority and looked at the uh, all the numbers and uh, and how we were going to get this repaid back. Um, after the first meeting with them, we had, we had come up with a, with a plan that uh, we had not been asking for all of the eligible costs that the uh, that were available to us through the Brownfield process. Uh, we went back and we uh, we uh, increased the cost of the Brownfield so that uh, and worked out a, a formula where we could uh, return to the city through a separate agreement, uh, the majority of the dollars that the, the city millage, just the city portion would be losing. Um, basically, what it comes down to, I think it was about the, the first four years uh, was reduced where the city would not capture all those dollars. And after that, the, the dollars that the city would be putting out would uh, be recaptured through a separate agreement. Um, is there any questions? I'd be more than happy to, to field and try to...
Any questions, Council? The, the, the...
Yes, uh, I don't know if you were told, I have some questions about the difference between the uh, description of the eligible property and what the, the assessor said. Uh, the description, and let me, let me go through this. Uh, the building, Building One is the former St. Beach Advent Church and one school building. Says it's a single-story building with an associated basement and is approximately fifty thousand square feet. The assessor says, "The church is twenty-five thousand square feet and consists of a sanctuary, church offices, priest residence corridors, frame is concrete block, there is a partial basement that houses industrial-sized boiler." And uh, I'm on page one, and then back, the uh, the assessor's pages are not numbered. So, right, right off the bat, uh, it's fifty thousand feet, fifty thousand square feet with an associated basement versus twenty-five thousand square feet with a partial basement. And then, um, it says later on, it's uh, the uh, school is, yeah, let me turn here. The school is a one-story block that sealed fifty thousand square foot building on a slab. And the description here shows that it's a, uh, twenty-five thousand square foot building with a basement. Um, so the two descriptions don't match.
I can tell you that the partial basement is incorrect, is incorrect, that there is a full basement. And actually, the basement is actually a much deeper basement than what you would see typical. And to refill that basement is, is uh, to find enough, to even find enough dirt to be able to refill that basement is a challenge.
I, I appreciate that. And my point is the difference between twenty-five thousand square foot with a full basement or fifty thousand feet with a square foot with a...
The basement is only under the church and not under the school. So they both may be correct. There's fifty thousand square foot in total, but the church is twenty-five thousand with a full basement under it. Do you see what I'm saying? There's total fifty thousand square feet.
According to this, there's seventy-five thousand square feet. Because the church is fifty thousand square feet and the school is twenty-five thousand square feet.
They're, they're all connected, I think that might be part of the confusion. So they're calling them Buildings One and Two, but the church and the school are connected too.
Yeah, well, I just, I just want it to be right. I, I want them to be the same because I think it's gonna make a difference on the cost of demolition, if you have to fill in a whole fifty thousand square foot, or if you have to fill in a whole twenty-five thousand square foot.
The structure, both of them are fifty thousand, the church is twenty-five with a full basement under that. And that's what we've done our work on.
Okay, um, but I, and the other question I have is, is there any, any money that you're gonna get from recovering copper and stuff from the, the boiler and the hot water?
Um, when we, when we go off the bid, the demolition contractor will take that in consideration. We're not going to separate the demolition contractor with demo. What they do, they'll, they scrap and they recycle most everything that they can recycle. And what they can't, you'll see a, a recycling operation right on the site here where they, they'll separate the steel from the brick, from the concrete, uh, from any wood that's a, that's inside. They'll separate here and they'll, they'll, they'll haul to the various sites that they need to...
Okay, so what you're saying is, their bid includes them recovering whatever they can recover. The number that you put in here is what you're gonna pay them?
Yes.
Okay, alright. I just wanna get this other thing straightened out, so, so we know which dollars we're talking about. That is an important dollar.
Yeah, fifty thousand square foot in total, twenty-five, church and the full basement. In fact, the full basement is, is a much deeper basement. And I, I don't know what the heck they did with all that space.
Yeah, well, the statements are tough to do. Um, I'm surprised that the auditor, pardon, that the assessor, who was, signed a statement that says, "I'm ready to testify," although it's, uh, made that big of an error.
Is that the square footage? That's really confusing to me. It's very confusing.
I, I don't know. Well, it's probably the, the way that it's being worded is confusing. I don't know. I think the...
Does the school have fifty thousand square feet?
No, the, the school and the church are both fifty thousand.
Just right on this, on this page it says, "The school is a one-story block and steel..." I don't remember the page number. I don't remember. Um, the school, but it's under some pictures, it shows the bathroom, uh, part of the bathroom. The school is a one-story block and steel, fifty thousand square foot building on the slab. I don't think that's... And the other one does say twenty-five thousand. The church is twenty-five thousand. I don't know. Do you know?
I can tell, I can tell, we did our bid of what's in place. Uh, the contractors all walked the site and they walked the building and their bidding was actually, it's the fifty thousand with the twenty-five thousand square foot church with the full basement.
Oh, the, the church is twenty-five thousand?
Approximately twenty-five thousand.
Okay, and is the school fifty thousand?
No.
No. That's...
I guess you're a little confused.
There's another building that's further north that was used for...
There's two buildings.
Yeah, there's another, buildings that were further north. I don't know off the top of my head what the actual script was.
Eighty-two hundred square feet. It's the same story building with a small basement and it's approximately eighty-two hundred square feet. I guess the point that is confusing to me is, both of you, you or whoever wrote this and the assessor, both agree that one building is fifty thousand square feet, another building is twenty-five thousand square feet. It's just that you're, got the buildings reversed. So, according to both of you, there's seventy-five thousand square feet in two buildings and the third building is eighty-two hundred square feet. So...
We can, we can figure out the square...
And I just, I just want it to be straight.
I have a question.
Yeah, I, I guess that was, these are the threads. But, in, in this Brownfield, uh, I'm looking at, at the back and looking on page four, there's four million dollars, I rounded off. And the description of eligible activity estimated costs, I mean, four, four million. Now, how is that shown on this back page? How much is, how much is gonna be captured and, and what's gonna happen? The figures are here, there's seven million, maybe for uh, twenty-five, twenty-seven? I'm trying to figure out...
This goes out, this goes out for fourteen years. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna get my Madam President. Um, one, this Brownfield plan hasn't been finalized by the Brownfield Board, if you have a, a function of Brownfield Board. When we took a look at this, the applicant's application, this afternoon, we had approved the plan, site, uh, site plan. Wanted to put this item in front of council to gauge where you folks are at relative to the Brownfield plan. If Board needs to act and take an action, then it'll come back. Here's the types of things that I was looking at and I worked under the premise that this was a, a site plan approved by council. One, uh, one was necessary to, just to level the planning costs, the greenfield cost. And a lot of the items you see in that table. The second thing was, what can we do to lessen the impact in the general fund? So, as this deal is put together, one, all of the assumptions are based on assessed values that the developer has provided us. If they don't meet their assessed values, our assistance drops accordingly. There's no interest in this agreement. The right-of-way necessary for Southfield Road, we've asked that they reimburse us. Then my next thing was to hit to the general fund, in particular, the public safety millage operating. How could we make the city whole? And that's where we came up with this concept of a cost fee reimbursement to the city for public safety costs. Um, and that is what, you know, we will, the administration will be recommending to the Brownfield plan, to the Brownfield Board once we get a full board. But I wanted to kinda gauge where council was at. Now, there's a little bit of irony in this planning process. This development, major redevelopment in the city goes through this whole process. And the planning process doesn't discuss the Brownfield. They're done separately. And I think for some of you, I, I have heard frustration over that. But it has happened that way in Southfield historically. I don't know how we run them concurrently. But I, you know, I wanna know, before we take this to the Brownfield Board, you know, kind of a pulse where council's at on this. You know, so again, no interest. The numbers are based on, there, there are some... The numbers are based on, there are assumptions. If the assessed values come in half, our participation drops by fifty percent. We're expecting reimbursement of the two public safety villages in the general fund. There is a grace in year one and two that doesn't start to year three. So, that's kind of the parameter of the deal. And I'm happy, you know, after your night's meeting to talk with folks one-on-one. But we're putting this together. If we had a Brownfield Board, we probably would've been in this step. But what you'll see later on, one of the items is to name the, to the Brownfield Board.
Would that complete the board?
That would give us enough to conduct business.
Let me, wait, I just, I'm with the things. The thing is that, I mean, whether it be before us this evening, and all those things that you have mentioned, you know, I would like to see those somehow sit down, you know, so that we see what's on the table and what isn't on the table. And I have no objection to helping them go forward with this project. But my problem is that I wanna know what the cost to the city is, how it affects our budget, where's the money coming from, how it's gonna be repaid. And one of the things right off the top, I just saw just when they said the assumptions and they had the residential assumptions, ten million dollars, and then they got the commercial at three million, and the restaurant at almost two million. I mean, I don't know how they, how the units are, what, hundred and some, how many units? How many units do you have?
One oh six.
How many apartments?
Hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen. Hundred and fourteen units.
You're about ninety-four thousand per unit?
Yeah, close to it. And that, I mean, and not...
But I mean, I can't see it, the shopping center being three million. Well, you got thirty-two thousand square feet.
Close to a hundred thousand.
And again, that takes us back to if the assessed value isn't created, our participation, if it drops fifty percent, we drop fifty percent. If it drops eighty-eight percent, or it drops twelve percent, we're in at eighty-eight percent.
The restaurant's two-thirds of the commercial.
I'll tell you that, that value, value of the restaurant. That's an equivalent value with the Outback Steakhouse has. The commercial...
The restaurant is in addition to the, that's commercial. Thirty-two plus of five thousand square foot restaurant.
The, his retail value's equivalent to what we have down the street. I have looked at some of the times.
Down the street where?
Yeah, I never read. During the retail, I never read the newer stuff.
Who are you looking at the apartment, how much is, how much are the square foot?
The apartment is probably where I'm a little nervous. There hasn't been any new apartments built in a while. The highest per-unit apartment is Village Green off of Franklin Drive. And they're not near ninety-four thousand per unit. I did the work, I looked at that a while back. But that's one of the things I would turn to our assessor and say. But again, I wanna take you back to the premise. They're giving us the value to create. If they don't create the value, our participation decreases accordingly.
I mean, I have to see the whole, you know, the whole picture. In other words, I have to see if the right-of-way is gonna be part of this thing, what's on the table as far as the commitment from the developer.
The right-of-way, the donation of the right-of-way is...
I don't want words. I want, I want the thing...
My time to skits through the Brownfield will have him memorialized in contract.
So, what do you need tonight from us?
I just want a consensus of these things in principle or concept. Maybe concept, better word.
The developer is very eager to begin the demolition process. So, the goal of today was to share the Brownfield plan with the city council. Our hope is that Mr. Zorn will be appointed to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority will address this issue. And they, like I said, they were in favor of the project in concept. So, if they vote to approve the project, we would come back to city council in June for a public hearing. But that would give the developer some assurance that they can move forward with the demolition of the project, of the building.
But you have to have a commitment for him to tear down the buildings.
Well, if the, yes, I mean, they would be, you would give them a couple of...
And I don't want, and I don't want, we're not down, and you tear down the buildings. I said, you guys committed to that. Well, I'm not gonna commit to anything.
We're not in a position to bring this into a commitment. However, the statute reads that once the Brownfield Board acts, the developer can proceed at his or her own risk. All right, so he can begin his asbestos abatement and he's gonna have to follow a ten-day permit with the county. He can start that process and start his clock running. But nothing is binding until city council acts.
'Cause I wanted to point out that, you know, the request that when it came in, did not include Brownfield, there's no mention of that. I want to put that on the record, really, that this is actually the fact, really. And we approved it based on his investment in the city and his tearing down the buildings and building whatever we approved on the site plan. And now we're coming back where we already have money in the project. And it's altogether a different story. I mean, there's differences, a whole different assessor.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Zorn. Has the Brownfield, I know the Brownfield community, did they need it all?
We had, Charlie, two meetings.
March twentieth.
March twentieth, we had the one meeting.
Okay, was this discussed?
This was discussed.
Because I don't, what I don't want to have happen is, and it happened without a group, is that they're told that we're a hundred percent behind this and they can go, you know, why not? I want them to analyze this based on what the Brownfield means. I don't want them to say, oh, well, council wants it or council doesn't. I don't want them to make their decision based on what, how council did. They should be totally independent.
And during that March meeting, there was no, there was discussion on interest. The administration said, we've said no interest. On the right-of-way, we've said there's no deal unless the right-of-way is done. And we need to, and then we've said, and this was not discussed at the March meeting, is we need to be made whole in the general fund.
But, no, that was discussed in principle and it was recommended that staff work with the developer and come up with a resolution. And so, it was discussed and the thought is that we go back once Mr. Zorn is added to the Brownfield Authority and seek their approval, mentioning that we've come up with resolutions to the items. But the Brownfield Authority, and I had another conversation with Mr. Jack Pryor, who's been a longtime member of the Brownfield Authority, and he is, they were in favor of the project. So... Charlie, really, I'm just sharing this. Well, here, now, wait a minute. If we're not made whole, we have such kind of challenges right now. So, I don't know what this implies for us in terms of what we're giving away and what we're not getting back. We just can't afford to do some of these things. So, I don't want the Brownfield Authority to say, well, council, you know, we're so happy to have development of any kind, we don't care what it costs us. That's not right. And I really want them not to be influenced by what they think we think. Because this has to, I mean, this is a financial issue for us more than anything else.
Well, with all due respect, I think they need to know what we think because I think we're pushing them a lot harder than they were willing to go originally.
Who's that?
The board. I mean, the right-of-way wasn't, wasn't firm. The cost, the cost fee reimbursement was discussed, but I think none of their other agreements. So, I think the administration needs to push that and we will.
Because we've never really known what this would cost us. We've never talked about the cost of Brownfield at this table. So, we've looked at this independently as a development without looking at the Brownfield means. So, anyway, it's extremely important that we come out here and make whole. And that's what matters to me. I mean, I'm sure you can understand that. Where, I don't wanna hear about how everybody thinks it's wonderful and they like it and somebody will approve it. Let's look at the facts. Let's look at the figures. And that's what, that's what's gonna make this. Let's be accurate. I'm serious. I just don't think, I mean, you can't just go and say, oh, what do we do? Let's give it to them. And, you know, we've really gotta be careful with what we do with our money. And if there's a way that, if the intention is that we be made whole for these things, then we need to be made whole.
Well, and I think the definition of being made whole, because part of that equation is putting the right-of-way acquisition in there, which by the time this is gonna be, you know, would be a substantially large acquisition without this action. And by being made whole, I, you know, again, as the general fund, you know, there are other entities that are being made whole.
Right. I understand that. But we can't continue with that. I'd love to, you need to explain to them, because we're not gonna be there.
Let me just say one thing. You mentioned the right-of-way, but we just heard it, they say earlier that, you know, because of the environmental report, that everything's been delayed, delayed, delayed. You know, that, that, you know, I mean, we've got an investment now. We've got an investment whenever they decide to widen Southfield Road, which is not even our road. That's what I'm getting at. In other words, that, you know, we're being asked to forward, you know, that in need of this widening and you're talking about maybe ten years. Maybe not even that, maybe more than that. And I've gotta invest in a right-of-way that it is made, not even need. I mean, why should I, as a city, buy county right-of-way, or state right-of-way and invest it on a NIP company? See, so, I mean, I can be part of the agreement, but I'm just saying is, to me, that, that don't mean anything to me.
When you look at the designs as part of the environmental assessment, right-of-way is needed on this piece of property. In fact, I think in all three designs, right-of-way is needed. And this is simply, you know, putting it into the deal so the city doesn't have to buy it. Yes, it is a county road, but the county turns to the local unit to deal with the right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, I'm saying is you're investing money that may never be, they couldn't go the chance their way, you know, never happen.
What was it said, right now, the first schedule on Southfield Road is 2019.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I just say, I get every...
Twenty nineteen, five years from now.
I believe, but all I'm trying to say is, I want that all on the table.
Okay.
That's it, you know.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Zorn. Under site preparation, you're talking about two point seven, two nine million. And does that include the drainage work or is that just clearing the site and filling in the drainage?
That includes all the drainage. Part of this plan included in that number is an underground stormwater retention system. It includes all the piping that goes with it. It includes all the water mains. It includes all the balancing and the, I don't know if it's...
Basement backfill.
Basement backfill is include all the asphalt. Yeah, it includes everything that brings the site up to be used.
So, I remember an earlier discussion, and I don't know if the rest of the council is aware of this, but it enlightened us, where did the county lead off on? They were talking at one time about a hundred-year storm, water mitigation. What did you end up with then?
Originally, it started off with the county and the city both wanting to do a hundred, one hundred-year storm retention. So, what that does is they, it gives us the capacity to have a one-time to cover a storm that happens only once in a hundred years, to be able to self-satisfy on-site the storm retention system. They backed off on it and the city has concurred that this site doesn't really, this site has no retention today whatsoever.
Right.
And we're bringing a ten-year storm retention system that all it does is, it doesn't help our site at all. It helps sites that are downriver, you know, at the end. The cost of doing a hundred-year storm versus a ten-year storm, a hundred-year storm is probably in the nine hundred thousand dollar price range. A ten-year storm is in the three hundred thousand dollar price range. And that's included in that, that number that you're talking about.
You don't have to reveal this, but it, you know, a lot of people have been curious as to your purchase price for this property.
It's two million nine...
Two point nine million?
Two point nine million, yeah.
What's settled with the R size?
I actually had this property bought way before Walmart for more than double that price. And that's what, and, you know, I'm sure if I may. We talk about the apartments and that ninety-five thousand dollar approximately per unit, an average per unit. The problem we have in developing this site is trying to get it comparable to that ninety-five thousand. What we're doing here is unprecedented in this market for that price range. No one has done this yet. No one is, you know, this is, we're pioneers in doing this. And the problem that we have in doing what we're doing is, in order to get an appraisal, we need a comparison. And there's nothing like that. So, when we're going to go and finance, when we don't have the numbers to be able to compare it with, it just doesn't work financially. And that's the problem that we have with it. This helps us get over that hump in a mild way in order to be able to do what we need to do. The apartments don't work without this Brownfield.
For me, I understand where Mr. Prakash and Mr. Moore are coming from. I'm a little, unless I'm misreading something here, and this formula, I can't figure this out, it's in the back of my book. I'm not sure, have we figured out what the cost, what potential? As I'm understanding, if you're willing to make the city whole on police and fire...
If I may.
Well, yeah, I want his clarity.
Well, here's what we're looking to do is, there's a one, two-year grace period where we're able to get leasing and get the properties to be active. What we're looking to do is after that, we're looking to make the city village, the city fund whole. It gradually comes up, and I can look at the schedule, it's in the schedule. We wanna make the city whole for the village that's there, for the general fund. But, you're smiling. Am I saying that right?
For the general fund, that's correct. Now, to council, that means the library and parks and rec are excluded. Okay?
Yeah.
For how long?
How much do you mean?
Would be the life of the plan until they, when we no longer are reimbursing them anything for the eligible cost, that's when the agreement would stop. Based on these projections, that's, they would make twelve payments in a fourteen-year period.
Okay.
And please, what you said earlier, there's no interest on it. So, the reality is that the cost of funds today, we have to borrow those dollars. So, reality is much less than what this number comes out today because we're, we have to put that money up. We have to go out and borrow. Because we're, we have to put that money up, we have to go out and borrow that money, and make these improvements so that we could do what we need to do. So, in reality, it's considerably less if you take the present-day value of the dollars that go out those fourteen years.
Um, the other thing I would just add is, uh, I, I know originally, uh, when this, I mean, we've had so many meetings, uh, so I don't remember right or where, but, uh, originally, um, I, I believe, if I remember correctly, you had said you were not looking for a tax evasion. Um, and then, on this side of the table, uh, someone did bring up, uh, the possibility of a brownfield. Uh, and I don't remember what meeting it was, but I, I do remember it being thrown out there. Um, and, uh, so...
Again, if I may, right from day one, and I don't know what the communication and the politics are here at this table, right from day one, we knew that the apartments don't work without some type of a brownfield. They just, they don't work. These things will not be developed without this discipline. Look, I, I can make the retail work, but I can tell you right now, the apartments, and I tried to get ahold of the Showstacks earlier today to see what their feelings are, um, I can't speak for them, but I can tell you that early on, the enticement of bringing the restaurant to this intersection, because there was, and I can, you know, there was competition of where they would go, and if they were going to go to Aitwoodward, or they're going to come here. And I convinced them to come here because, uh, and, uh, we saw that, and, I, I apologize if, if it didn't get across, but this was our intention from day one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't think we kept, I, I didn't think we kept it a secret, so something that was there from day one.
Well, you know, personally, as a person for myself, um, I always encourage you to bring something different to Southfield. I, uh, I think we shouldn't be underselling ourselves. Um, we should bring, uh, new housing products to the margins. And why not have more, uh, a, a, a different option, plus something that's a little higher-end? Um, I believe that you'll be successful, I, I've never doubted that. So, um, I don't have a problem with the brownfield. And if I hear, uh, uh, Mr. Seymour and Mr. Percotti, they just want to know, you know, exactly what we're in for. That's, I, I, at least, uh, I don't know if I'm hearing you right, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, um, at least that's what I want to know. Uh, other, and I, I'm, I'll support the brownfield. But I want to know, I'd like to know, going into it, what, uh, what we're up against. And honestly, I tried to make some heads or tails out of this, and I...
Uh, which?
Oh, the repaid? Yeah, I, I...
Do you want to move through the chart? Would you like to see that?
Yeah, that might be helpful. Um, I guess I didn't know enough about the, the background of the chart makes sense to me.
Sure, so on page eight of the, um, brownfield plan, it outlines the different taxes that the city collects. And that's, so that's going down the side right here. And the front is the total millage, then it's, um, the top number, yeah.
What's the percent? It's fifty-four point three two percent?
Percentage of the millage eligible for tip capture. So, there's certain things that are not eligible.
School.
The school, uh, the...
The old school there.
So, Joan, it says church, and that?
Oh, I always... Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Great education.
Right, so there's certain things that are not eligible items for capture. And so, this, um, the eligible item, um, total fifty-four point three two. So, you can go over it, let me... So, um, and then, the next block outlines the estimated true cash value of the completion of the project, um, which you see totaled over fifteen million dollars. And then, it's the estimated, um, assessed value, which is seven point six million dollars. And then, um, the next item is the eligible expenses that they're requesting to capture back. So, again, the developer will be paying the taxes over, uh, each year. And just like our other projects, twice a year, we'll be making payments back to the developer from the items that were approved in the brownfield plan and through the city council. So, they'll make the payment, and we'll pay them back, the eligible expenses. And so, the, the, the chart just moves through each of the years. So, it, it shows that they, they will be making a payment to the city for our cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. And you can see that in the first year.
They're going to pay us seventy-five thousand, and then we're going to give them back? How much?
Well, in the first year, um, eligible for reimbursement is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Where are you looking, Shelley?
Radio. Oh, right, okay, sorry. Oh, I feel bad.
Right, and so then, each year, it's accumulated, accumulated.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, it just moves across each line?
So, are they paying that, or we're giving that to them?
They're paying their regular taxes, and then, then we give them a payment back, just like with our other brownfield project.
So, it'd be a hundred and thirty-five minus seventy-five, correct?
Correct.
So, the, the difference is what we're actually...
Going to be giving them in the first year.
Okay.
Well, that, that's not in this chart. But out of the total eligible expenses of three point nine million dollars and change, there, there's two million that stays with the project.
Okay.
And then, there's, like I mentioned, this separate agreement where for city services, the, the development pays the, that, those funds back to the city area.
But, and that's not in...
It's not shown.
It's not in this chart.
As part of the tip tax.
Yeah, this chart is just the, the taxes that are collected and given back. So, just like all of our other brownfield projects, where the, the developer will pay their taxes like everybody else, and then, twice a year, we give them a check back for the eligible...
And that's not normal.
That is a normal brownfield project. That's, that's completely normal.
What's not normal is the agreement for the fire and safety that we're going to...
The general fund.
Right.
Exactly.
That's an extra agreement.
That's an extra agreement that's between us, that...
Well, see, that makes it more palatable.
Right. To, to the city, because they realize...
So, out of three point nine, we're excluding, overall, three fourths, you're going to get two million back?
There, there's three point four million dollars in eligible expenses that this tip plan captures. The project only receives two. It receives all of it, but it pays back to the city, the other one point. I, I hope that's making, is that making sense?
Yeah, in short, that's what it's...
We're, we're getting there.
A little bit of...
You know, in all honesty, if I may, this is very difficult to read.
It is.
Can we use the board? I mean, I'm serious, just to give straight tiers of what, what could be paid to the city, what will be paid to the city, what will be paying back, and then what's going into police and fire.
If you put the board, if you put the board, the board could even hurt it, too.
Come on. So, why don't you do just one year full development, year three?
I think it's a payback.
Right. Year, year one and two, there's a grace.
We need to, we need to see it.
Oh. Maybe that's cool, myself.
I hear the part.
I know. No, you know, because you keep complaining about it. It's not the, the brownfield was not designed, you know, anything until, after they get their, their, the brownfield paid off, then it's starting to fail.
I'm just going to use round numbers, if that's okay?
Yeah.
If everyone can see that. So, the taxes in total are that. That's where everything, the school taxes, and that at the bottom line. And then you have the, the...
Can we put light on that as well?
Eligible.
Three is... Oh.
Two seventy.
I think it's that.
What's that?
We're talking about the light.
Oh. Is it two or is it two and a half?
There's, we have the light, which is behind us.
So, this, this number, there you go. This number, the two seventy, is what the project is eligible to capture. Because when you capture, when you have five hundred thousand dollars in taxes, some percentage of them, things like school, um, I think the DDA, are, they're not eligible to, to capture, according to law.
Right.
So, there's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that you are able to capture. So, what we're planning on doing is, like Shelley said, the taxes would be paid each year, and then twice a year, you guys would pay back this two hundred and seventy, or pay to the project the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Then there's an, an amount in that separate services agreement. And I'll have to go look it up in my spot, and, and, sorry. But I think it's a hundred and thirty-five...
It's a hundred and...
Every year, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it says here. A hundred and forty-four weeks.
No. Can it's not on the chart.
According to that. One hundred and forty-nine.
Can it's not on the chart.
Oh. One hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, probably a hundred and thirty-five dollars for one...
Yep.
What's, what's the thing about...
And it's nothing, it's not... It's one thirty-five.
Annually, I think?
Yes.
Yeah.
One of these, uh, happens, you know, it's unneeded.
Right, because there's this total, the, the total capture, this, this might be the easier part to understand. Total capture is three point four million dollars. And out of that three point four million dollars, there's a brownfield authority administrative expense. That's seventy-five percent, and that's paid to the city. Then, the project is taking two million dollars. Because that's what the project needs in order to make the apartments viable, for the project to work. The balance of the money is returned to the city in twelve payments over fourteen years.
It would take five thousand dollars each.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're not just round numbers.
Yeah.
But this gets divided up. Years one and two, there's no payments back to the city, like the project is stable and up and running. And then the other, um, twelve years, you get that money back.
What would happen if the apartments are not developed, or not, um, if they aren't developed, what will happen to this project?
What do you mean, if, uh...
If, if, if you move forward with the commercial, and you move forward with the restaurant, but you said you don't have any comps, and it's just not working out financially to even begin with the apartment?
Um, first of all, I, the restaurant is in, in my, and I didn't get a chance to talk to the Showstack, the restaurant, in my opinion, is in jeopardy.
If the apartments aren't built?
No, no, if, if they don't have a brownfield.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm, I'm saying if we grant the brownfield, and we develop the retail, and the restaurant, what would happen to these numbers if the apartments aren't built?
If they're not...
Oh. If they're not built?
If they're not included. If they're not included in...
The, the payout would go out...
Down.
No, the number of years, this plan is...
Well, it's, sorry, Jason, it's all predicated on how much tax we collect. And it's all proportionate, like we, we were talking earlier, it's all proportional. If we don't build them, we don't create the taxes, we don't get the money back.
Then we'll never get the money back.
We want you to build it.
You won't get your money back.
Yeah, but, uh, the, out of this tax, it is a hundred and thirteen...
That's apartments, and this is, I'll call it, commercial.
Okay.
So, again, round numbers, the five hundred, one fifty is the, the two retail buildings and the restaurant, and then three fifty is the apartments.
You're, you're being...
Yeah.
Mr. Longrick, hey. I mean, right now, you're going with the assumption it's going to get between fifteen to sixteen million dollars in value, within three years. But year three, you're going to get it up to sixteen million dollars of value approximately on this property?
Correct, yes.
Is that the assumption that you're going to make? So, the question, I, I believe that's where the council president was going to, was if, let's say, it does, if, if the values aren't there, if, if, let's say it doesn't reach, doesn't hit that sixteen million dollar value on this, then the repayment back to the city can go on for a much longer period than what we're estimating here, and we're going to get much smaller payments each year. Is that going to be the case?
No, here's what would happen. The, the whole, everything would be concentrated. If it's not five hundred, proportionally, if we're collecting five hundred, this is the deal that's on the table. If we collect four hundred, if you collect four hundred thousand dollars in taxes, everything moves down proportionally.
Moves down proportionally, and you're, you're getting, the money that was for the, the demolition, that is going to be laid out by the city, by the brownfields.
No, no, we're not...
We're, we're putting up...
You're going to get...
We're only going to get reimbursed as to the value. We're the ones that are down with that.
So, the, the reimbursement period is going to be stretched out over a much longer time?
No, no, it's capped.
Capped.
It's capped.
I, I did this, thirty-two brownfield plans in Taylor, there's a minimum value when, when, and I'm the guy who gave Walmart a million bucks there. But when they appealed their taxes, their, their, their assistance dropped. Um, when, when they doubled the size of the store, we completed the brownfield plan a little bit sooner.
It's all proportionate, it's percentages. There's no, it goes up and down.
And in all of this number, you haven't put a value in the right-of-way donation, which I believe our successors in the future will have to deal with. I mean, Southfield Road will have to be rebuilt. So, we're kind of, you know, and, and, and the reality that we function in, it's about what can we do today? Every once in a while, it's nice to give a gift to the future.
Right, right. You've got to write that in the margin. This is a horse trading place.
And, and again, the city is not putting any money out, we're not giving them any money upfront. They, they are using all their own private money, and they're getting reimbursed. So, there's no money, you know, nothing from the city.
And, you know, the value that you're, you know, what Mr. Percotti was talking about, the value of the right-of-way is so, is, from our point of view, we're giving it, I think we're putting a, if you look at the first year, because the only thing that you're going to miss out is for the first two years, the first year, you're going to get that seventy-five thousand dollar, this, this money. So, if you think about what you're not going to capture over the time of the brownfield, it's basically, uh, one thirty-five less seventy-five, so you've got sixty and one thirty-five. So, the value of the right-of-way is a hundred and ninety-five thousand. We paid more for the dirt per square foot than that hundred and ninety-five thousand. We paid considerably more than that. So, uh, so that's not... What are you talking about, horse trading?
So, that's not on the table.
That is on the table.
It's dying.
That's part of, part of the deal.
Part of the deal.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you're telling me how much it costs per square foot. Hey, just got to see everything down in there.
But this helps staff out tremendously, folks, and I...
Right.
But I, I know there's been some concern over some of these other brownfield plans. Allow us to go through, and, um, we'll put some, we'll blow this up, we'll do this on one page, and a stamp shot. Year one, year three, year five. Yep, we'll go through each year, and over that. And we'll put this on eleven-by-seventeen sheets, too.
My, my only, my only, my only concern to that, this was originally brought to the table. And as you said, day one, that the apartments didn't work without the brownfield. And I was never aware of you meeting a brownfield. Um, and it's got to be some communication problems internally that we need to look at. Because I was never aware that you were interested in the brownfield, meaning to develop this property.
I apologize.
No, no, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's on you, I think it's internally that we'll have to adjust with that. But I have no problem bringing in the brownfield.
You know, um, our concern is, we even like to get started with this. Um, our engineering is ready, our demolition is ready, um, our drawings for the retail are ready. Um, the Showstacks are waiting to see the outcomes, to kick off their construction drawings with... Um, the showstats are waiting to see the outcome, to kick off their construction drawings with, um, and the apartments, we want to, we want to kick off that, we've been waiting for this day. We just need a construction, and we'll gamble, changing our minds, um, but we'd just like to get something from you so that we can, uh, move headfirst. We, we'd like to be, we'd like to get started.
Excellent. So, let's go around four. Should we do a consensus with the head and all?
Well, it hasn't, you know, it hasn't even gone to formal action by the brownfields.
Yeah, we should do that.
That's the first step in the process.
I think he's heard your comments. You've heard, you've heard the comments.
Well, I don't think it's.
And, you know, we met with the brownfields, and they were in complete support. The problem we had is, we didn't have a quorum. Uh, we didn't have enough people to vote, they wanted to vote on it at that time. And it was, it was overwhelming, it wasn't just, everyone was in complete support of it.
Can we give him some sense anyhow of, he, he needs to keep moving.
Well, I think he's heard from, I'm going to defer to the city attorney to see, is it?
Oh, again, I think that, that the process by statute is that it goes to the brownfield authority before the council acts. And I'm concerned about the council giving any kind of formal action before the brownfield has, the authority has made a recommendation.
I wasn't asking for formal action, I understand that. But what I was asking for is to give him some sense of where we, where we are this evening. We don't want to lose the restaurant.
I understand, I think, I think that there's been comments by everybody, I think there's, you can almost, I, I can kind of see where.
I wasn't.
If numbers were there.
I wasn't quite sure, um, but.
Mr. Lance hasn't spoken, but everybody, everybody. Mr. Lance, did you have any comments?
Well, I think that is, I don't think it's really appropriate when you don't have a recommendation from the brownfield authority. And that's the way the statute is structured, so that they do their due diligence and go through a recommendation, and then, it comes back to council for action. So, even a consensus before there's been any kind of recommendation from the authority, I think is.
And we have one of the newest members that'll be appointed, and he's heard our concerns, so, um, I think we can look forward.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, don't confuse it anymore than it already is. I think it, it needs to be clarified, just in case it isn't, is that a brown, the brownfield plan was never designed to make the city whole, until after the demolition costs had been paid off. And that's, I think, where we're stumbling.
Yeah.
That we're trying to find a way to make us whole. Uh, the adjunct deal of paying the safety village is something that's not even in the brownfield plan, but it's, it's a, it's an addendum to the brownfield.
I agree, but I think what happens here is that the amount, and I, I wrote this down, is that they've increased the cost of what they're trying to capture in the brownfield, it's offset by what they're paying.
Right.
So, I, I think from, from their perspective, it's like the same deal.
Yes.
Only, we're going to get this.
But I'm, I'm saying from our perspective, of getting the money back for the, for the safety, is not, not, it's not part of a normal brownfield deal.
I think they do occur, though.
Well, I'm sure they are, but I don't think you read through the plan, it's written in plain, in the brownfield.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, that's something that ends up being negotiated as this thing progresses.
And so is the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that.
Yes, so.
If I may, we're not.
That's right.
I don't want to disagree, but in doing the, the typical, with all the eligible that we had, it was, it came out to about an eight-year payback. So, when we go out fourteen years, or whatever, how many years, that cost the funds for that extra six years, there's a definite detriment to us by not having the availability of that cash for the next six years.
Right.
So, it, uh, I don't know if I agree with it.
Well, I thought that was, that was the initial discussion, that initially, you were coming in at a two million dollars. It's now been increased either, I can't tell if it's three point nine or three point four.
Three hundred.
Okay, so, three point four, so, there's been an adjustment in what those costs are that you're seeking to include, and be reimbursed for.
And, but the reimbursement went out long.
I understand, I, I don't disagree with that.
It's, uh, we tried to play with numbers so that we could get the city back that separate agreement as we, as much as we could.
Right.
Just take some of the sting out of it for us.
Yeah, and we're going from eight years, we went out to fourteen years for the recapture. It's supposed to sound considerable.
No, I would agree with that.
And I'd, I'd rather have my year money today than two years.
It's an IRA.
Yeah, so.
My kids will love it.
When is the brownfield, uh, coming?
I don't know when it's going to be. Um, we, we would need as soon as we can arrange it. There, hopefully soon this week, I would imagine. Um, the, the thought is that we would come back to city council on June sixteenth. That would be our goal, to have a public hearing on June sixteenth.
Are you asking that the public hearing be set?
No, because I'm not going to ask for Rule Ten. I was going to ask that it be placed on a future agenda, so that I can advertise if necessary. So, this was just for discussion, so that everyone could be brought up to speed as to what was happening, and, um, so that everyone was aware that, that this project was, was out there.
Our attorney is telling us we keep you, but you've heard our comments.
Well, I think if you want to, there's a, there's a gauge from what everybody said, where everybody kind of is.
You, you mentioned the consensus, or somebody did.
No, somebody, yeah, right.
There's no reason not to have a consensus.
Well, I think if, if you speak, and you talk about what your kind of position is, then he knows, he can kind of gauge where.
Do you go around the table, does everybody speak as to how they feel about it?
I think pretty much they, yeah.
I'm speaking. I'd like to see a consensus.
No, I, again, I think that is not how the statute envisions this to go. He, if, if the brownfield authority meets this week, which is likely, he will have an answer from that board and his numbers. He's kind of gotten an idea, I think, by the comments, that, how this body kind of is leaning. But I, I just don't think it's appropriate to have a consensus at this point, where we don't have, we're not following the standard.
We have to wait for the brownfield people to meet.
Thank you.
Thank you, I, I thank.
Do you want those notes going back?
No, you don't.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.
Okay, all right, the next item on our agenda is, uh, ordinance to amend the city code.
So, here's quite a week. Just for discussion purposes tonight, I put in front of you an amendment to, um, the ordinance that deals with bonds that are posted when you apply for a building permit. In general, those bonds can be fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars. You post them so that after you get your permit, it, it then secures the fact that you'll call for an inspection of the work that you perform, and get a certificate of occupancy, and approval. Uh, and then, if you do all of those steps, then your bond is released to you. The situation that we've been experiencing over a number of years is that people post these bonds, and then, they never call back for an inspection, they never necessarily get a CFO, they might get a temporary CFO, and then, never complete to get the final CFO. So, we have literally, um, several million dollars that is sitting in, in, in an escrow fund for these bonds. The current ordinance allows us to take portions of the entire amount of the bond to cover our administrative costs as we go forward. Um, so, that analysis is now taking place, we're going through many prior years, and we're trying to assess what portion of these fifty, a hundred and fifty dollar bonds, could the city then say it covers our administrative expenses, and maybe our administrative expenses are actually over and above what was posted, and therefore, we're, we're entitled to keep the bond under the existing ordinance. That's a pretty intensive process, because the building department has to go through and pull each file, see what was done, see how many letters they sent out, see what kind of work that it, it, it involved for them to kind of keep this bond, and then, make a decision as to how much could they take, and how much should really legally be returned to the, to the person who posted the bond, if they had ever come in and applied and got their CFO. So, what we're proposing, I think, is consistent with other cities. And what they say is, when you pull your permit, you generally have a hundred and eighty days to get the work done, and come in and get your, your final CFO. Now, that, um, that amount of time can vary, you can ask for an extension, those are routinely granted. But if you just pull your permit, post your bond, and we never hear from you again, we want to just forfeit your bond. We don't want to have to go through an analysis, again, these bonds are pretty small, and it's really labor-intensive for us to do this. So, that's all that this change makes, is that on those bonds, if you don't, if you don't come back and get final CFOs, and do your, get your inspections, and finish the work, we just forfeit that bond. And that's, that's the sum and substance of what this ordinance changed. You say that some can reduce, do that. They do that, LaBona is a prime example, they don't, they don't, they don't go through. If you don't do what you're supposed to, your bond is forfeited, and then, you know, there could also be action on top of that, because you still have to comply with the code. So, if there was consensus, I think you'd have, without this, I would put it on for May nineteenth. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we ought to raise the cost of the bond, so when they don't come back in, we make them real money.
I mean, those bonds, you've had the discussion with the building department, to really look at fees and bonds, and make sure that they're opening them up, so.
Look, it's something that doesn't hurt those, isn't it?
We're going to bring in a, a person this summer to work through this list, and then, we'll follow this up with a counter-type ordinance for engineering as well, because we have another one.
For fees, right?
For these, for these.
These bonds.
The engineering bonds are typically higher.
Well, if it doesn't, if it doesn't mean anything, but if there's something too small, they don't care, then.
And I think that's what we're experiencing, they don't want to call.
Some of these go back to the late seventies and early eighties.
Yeah.
Well, a hundred and fifty dollars is not a lot of money anymore.
No, it isn't.
Sorry to say.
And I think what's happening is, there's, there's a decision being made that for a hundred and fifty dollars, and I don't have to deal with an inspection and the building department, it's well worth it, so.
That would sell it anyway.
I think it would be way higher.
Well, there's, there's approximately four million dollars, but there is some kind of, um, split there between engineering bond and building bond. I couldn't tell you exactly, I think it's probably between two and three million are building bonds that this ordinance will affect, but we know there's another pretty substantial amount that we need to come back and do the same thing when we get to the engineering side.
Okay, and we'll keep them, and we'll give them.
It's not a street, right?
Yeah, okay, all right.
Get this on my books, thirty years old.
This is very cheesy.
No, okay, uh, we'll move to the next item.
Um, the next request before you is to schedule, um, committee the whole meeting for next Monday. Um, again, it's being proposed that we start the meeting at one o'clock PM. The purpose of the meeting is to review the audit, go over the budget, and I think there was a third item. Into the current budget, yeah.
I can't do that time, I could do five o'clock that day, I could do Tuesday, I can't do Monday at one o'clock. The twelve.
Who needs you?
Yeah, you know, sure.
It's only the budget.
It's only, yeah, it's only a significant thing we do.
How, how long do we need, uh, the, um, those two items on management?
Yeah, um, we're starting with Landmark, presenting last year's audit. And I've had Mr. Pierce produce a three-quarter year, budget variance three quarters, and then, we'll start with an overview of general fund, each of the funds. But whatever time council's willing to, to give, you know, we'll start the procedure, the process. And I, I can quickly highlight which departments will have new, new positions, you know? For example, in engineering, we currently have a contract employee who runs this a hundred and forty thousand a year. Recommend, recommending we hire the individual, it'll be a hundred and ninety thousand a year. And you'll, I can quickly, I can touch on that, and then, if council wants to go in more depth, bring out the, so, I've had a couple of you say, talk about the old days about all the budget books, we can bring those out, too. Uh, but I think we'll follow those books up at a later date. So, I'd like to just kind of do a surface overview, capital, uh, positions or charts. Uh, and, uh, so, that's the thought process, but you keep that in.
Five o'clock that day.
I can do five o'clock, um, but I, I want to just bring up again, and I, I'd have, I'd go around and around with Jim on this. This doesn't do it for me. You're asking me to approve a budget, I want to know what the actuals were. I mean, it's just part of the education, we should know what we spent, and we do know. So, it'd be much more helpful, um, to have the, what the budget was this year, what, what the actual was, and what the, what's proposed. Yeah, no.
We have it, and the process.
Well, you haven't had a year. Simply mimic what's done in the past, and you're going to see this in the budget variance report, because we go department by department, what they spent. But on the budget sheet, you'll, you'll see what was our budget, what's asked the administrator, the mayor's request, uh, what was budgeted the last year, I think we even look back two years on that. And, and I could share, share with council the format that we're structuring again, and with Eve.
Yeah, but I agree with Ken, I, I thought we always had previous year and actual, and I.
I, you know what I used to do, I used to bring the budget book from the year, and I'd sit there and go back and forth, but I still didn't have the actual. You still, I'm sorry, you still didn't have the?
Actual, the actual.
Okay.
I think with the transition period, it may be a little difficult to produce this year.
Oh, well, we are, we're working towards that goal. And the format exists, because I know what the department has, has submitted to me. So, we have a way of, of formatting that, and I, I think when you see this budget variance report, we can add those other columns, too. And so, you'll see what was budgeted for the current year, how much is back to date, and if it could go from the mayor's request, we could show those columns. And then, we'll simply by, uh, by department going through. And for the twelve, I can highlight ones of major change. We can give them a little packet, but, you know, maybe I'll come up with any point where there's a deviation at any certain point. We're also preparing organizational charts by department, they've existed citywide. So, when you get to the police department, you can see the organization. Uh, I've also asked that we include what I call the task and functions performed by the department. You know, some of these things are defined by charter, some are, 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 there are some things that we don't quickly recognize that the departments do. Building department's probably a real good one, example. What was transmitted primarily due to time constraints, and, and the last month, we've been working on these forecasts or charts, is that pretty much mimics the way it's been done the last few years.
Well, we'd, we'd start at five, and then, it'd take five hours, just ten to five.
Is that going to give you enough time?
We, we will, we will be prepared, okay? And let me state this, um, the mayor and I've had this conversation. The budget, we're planning on date, adopting on, on June sixteenth. If, there's no reason why we can't at a certain point, say, you know, if you say, look, we want to do a closer examination of human services, a closer examination of the fire department, we could certainly come back in, you know, maybe it's in August that we do, put a, a department under the microscope, you know, a little more intense focus, and begin having a different dialogue. Uh, Mr. Pierce and I've had the conversation in the past, there was an aversion to, the only budget amendments we made were in December. It's, there's nothing wrong with making, uh, adjusting your budget as you go through the course of the year. I mean, monthly, you know, every other month, there is, it's no great harm, and it's actually considered a best practice. I know, I.
Consider a bio twelve.
So.
To raise, look at the budget, what happened, adjusted as you go through the year, you know, there's no adjustment.
My dad will let it be until at five o'clock.
I've had people working on this for a few weeks now.
Well, that's a huge change.
Well, it's five hours.
We, we can start, what we don't get done, I'll structure the, um, audit, the, um, three-quarter report so council can see where you're at today with this budget, um, than we're currently in. Now, we can start doing a certain, you know, we could do the overview of the general fund. And I can, Parks and Rec, uh, the capital, all the new hires, I've got a breakdown that shows right now of all the hires, new hires. Uh, capital was inserted with what you have, and I just want to do one more review of all the new hires.
And we.
And there's not a lot of hires, um, but I, you know, I use the one, the G I S position.
Oh, he has a police department.
And what council approved in December, the T V.
And what you might need, what you're.
Okay, let's, let's, um.
Wait a second, now I'm going to ask the question, if you don't mind. No, no, can we, can we continue that meeting if we need to the next day, because we, I mean, if we need to.
We'd need at least eighteen hours.
We'll stay a minute, it will be next day.
Eight, it should need.
Even if we just recess?
But you could, but you.
Oh, yeah, I guess you recess, yeah.
You want to do that?
We have meetings that go to eleven thirty on the regular.
But, Jeremy, this is important stuff, you want people to be awake and alert and, you know, fresh, you don't, no, seriously.
Fine, I'm awake and alert, but.
No matter what, right?
What's the, what was the date on that?
This is coming Monday.
Monday.
At five o'clock.
Did we do Rule Ten yet?
I moved Rule Ten.
On support.
Motion by councilman, for, for, supported by councilman Moss, for a.
Setting a meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Yeah, that we should send a meeting for five o'clock to the twelve.
On support.
Uh, motion by councilman, supported by councilman Moss, meeting on Monday, May twelfth at five o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. Okay, the next item is the appointment of Mr. Zorn to the Brownfield redevelopment board.
Oh, so.
Support.
Oh, we got a new Rule Ten, a new Rule Ten, support.
We have a motion by councilman, supported by councilman, five o'clock, all in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed, motion hearing.
Right, then.
I'll move that, uh, administrator, Fred Zorn, to be appointed to the, uh, uh, what do you call it? Brownfield.
Support.
We have a motion by, uh, Brownfield man, supported by councilman, five o'clock, to appoint Zorn to the Brownfield development board and the local development planning board, all in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed, motion hearing. We'll move to the communication, proportion of the agenda, Mr. Michael Lindman, not here, Pamela Gerald.
I think we ought to put the humanization system with the microscope, the first, of course, you might, on the last.
So, right?
No, that's no problem.
Three minutes instead of five minutes, wanted that to be a reminder. You ready? The clock is ticking, you ready, Mike?
My name is Pamela Gerald, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven, dash, zero one five five. For the residents listening to this meeting via YouTube, I can be reached at two four eight, three four six, zero four three nine. Remember, your independent voice is just a phone call away or a click away via email. Again, I would like to thank councilmen, Myron Fraser, Ken Cyber and Jeremy Moss for being so masterful and skilled dealing with the constituents in Southfield. I am confident that the three of you recognize how important the people of Southfield are. In other words, all three of you acknowledge and demonstrate that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. Councilman Moss, I really appreciate the manner in which you explained the personal property tax issue within our state. You did two things for the people. One, you validated my interpretation and accuracy when I explained it to the residents. But more importantly, you took the explanation to another level and added more detail. You explained the personal property issue very clear and concise. Respectfully, I would like to ask you on behalf of myself and the residents that have called me to compliment you to continue that explanation and especially at all the televised meetings. I think your professionalism and leadership, uh, just continues to let them know that they did a good job in voting for you and electing you to council, um, I appreciate your compassion. And, um, Mr. Fercassi, the next time you refer to construction workers, don't put the ethnicity in there. You said Italian, so I think it gives the appearance of some kind of isms. And then Mr. Lance left, but, um, you know, all of this stuff that's going on with the roads just basically shows that the leadership in this city for the last twenty years on these roads, you guys have just missed the boat and missed the mark. This is why you need a Southfield Citizens Oversight Coalition. And now you guys are concerned about things you should have been concerned about twenty years ago. And when we had a surplus, you didn't want to be fair and talk to the people in Oakland County. Now, they don't really want to talk to you. I think it's real cute that Fercassi can say, they don't return your calls. But now you know how it feels when you were the mayor and you were telling people to disrespect me and not return my calls. See, I still feel good, I can look in the mirror. You seem pretty upset because they're not returning your calls and your councilmen. Oakland County does return my calls.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
This person is Gerard Muller.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Muller. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. This evening, hoping not to breach bad taste, I would like to make a suggestion to this council about filling Mr. Sharet's, they choose. I'm not talking about the city administrator's job per se. Instead, I'm talking about one of the many jobs, one of the many stealth jobs that Mr. Sharet performs for the city, that is financial services director. If you recall, Mr. Sharet held that position for many years, prior to becoming the city administrator. And he continued in that capacity while also serving in the top slot. In other words, merging two jobs, two major jobs into one. Today, I believe that no single individual can handle such a percolating task, especially without a deputy city administrator. Therefore, I recommend that this council restore the financial services director's position and that this council anoint and appoint Jim Pierce to fill and fulfill that position. Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
All right, we'll take a motion to go, uh, into, well.
Uh, you need to roll call.
Yes, you want to do it.
Before we, before we go into the close session, I have a question that, and, and that is, when we were discussing, and I'm talking about when it first came out, the, uh, development at Southfield and twelve mile, um, there was some, some, uh, discussion about whether or not the ordinance was written for rooms or square feet. And that was, that was seen to be a stumbling block. I think we ought to clarify.
I, and I, I thought that Mr. Crowe had recognized that at the time of that discussion and that he was going to, you know, formally look at that through the process. But I, I will talk to him about that, whether he started that, because that was an issue.
Yes.
Right.
And it was a, it was a really thorny issue.
Right, it was, as opposed to saying what the square footage of the unit was, it was how many rooms and that really the best test to.
Right.
Right, so I, I will get.
Okay, all right, that's it.
No, the one other thing, um, we, we've had this repeated letter about the resident, Quickeyham, creating public issues. And it would seem to me, um, that we would have something in our code beyond parking, um, to handle that situation. I mean, I really feel for the people around them, it's just so inappropriate in the middle of the neighborhood.
I actually had on my, uh, list, the meeting to refer to neighborhood services to really look at if we could possibly change at the time, you know, if that would help out with parking cars on the streets.
But it's more than parking.
I know it's more than parking, but that may begin to address the concerns, uh, if that.
Well, there are noise issues, I know that, you know, we've had, we've had discussions with the police department and they're out there all the time and they're trying to, you know, mitigate the situation and it just keeps going over and over again. I mean, they're certainly free to write tickets, um.
She's saying that by three AM, you know, most of them have left. And if the time was moved up, you know, one o'clock, two o'clock.
But she's talking about the parking, right? But I mean, there's still, there's a noise issue, I, you know, we could, there's disorderly, I don't know if anything's happening outside of the house, but there are ordinances that are on the books currently. Um, if parking is her only issue, then I agree, we, we could look at that. But I, it seems to me she's just talking about just the disruption to her life caused by this.
And this is not the only one, Don Jones, former principal of South Ohio, on Wendy Lane, it's the same thing with a neighbor who's got a pool in the backyard and they, it's just twenty-four seven, party central. Uh, and these are people that haven't lived here long, um, have moved into a house, into a neighborhood, and they're just totally disrespecting the people on the street. It's incongruous with, uh, what everybody else is doing.
Do something, clean up the house across the street from them.
Yeah.
Sure, in that comment, please, yeah.
Yeah, just to look quickly at council and, uh, council president, city president. Uh, we've got that email, Lawson, we've been working that for the last month and a half. And, um, started off, just like you said, it's a new resident, he came in, um, and it's a party house. And so we started off doing it the diplomatic way, you know, I had my community policing officers out there. We worked, we, we had a big meeting, um, with the homeowners association president, that gentleman, as well as the, the person who's complaining and my community policing officers. And we, we got a promise from him that, um, that he would comply with all the laws and he would be respectful of the neighbors and all this, and it seems like he, he kind of reneged on that promise. And so, and so now we're going to take a more aggressive approach in dealing with this. And so, um, and so we, we should see some, some results. And there, there are some things we can do and, and, as well as some of the situations down on Wendy Lane and anywhere else in, in the city, when we have situations like this, uh, we, we, you know, we can take a more aggressive approach in terms of doing this, that's what we're, that's what we're going, we're doing, um, as of this weekend and going forward. Try to clean this up.
Can I ask you, you, you can break up a party, correct?
If, yes, if there is a, if, if they're violating ordinances or state laws, we can. But simply, simply having people over at his house and not causing an disturbance, not violating our three to six ordinance violation, um, that, you know, there's, 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 um, not much we can do except to try to get him to, um, to be a good neighbor. And it sounds like, um, that he is not being a good neighbor at this point. So, uh, we're not going to target him, we're not going to target any, any of the people, we are going to take a more aggressive approach in, in dealing with this problem. So I'm anticipating us seeing some results, uh, fairly quickly with this, uh, with this incident.
Just, you know, the ordinance that we have in terms of the three to six parking, not only in that area, but just across the city, if we upped it to two o'clock, would that, uh, uh, alleviate any of the problems that we made at the beginning of the parking, morning?
You know, council president, I, I, with this, with this incident here and with similar ones, I, I'm not so sure that that's the answer. I, I think, I think she's more concerned about this person coming into the neighborhood and, and a neighborhood that's been quiet for decades and, uh, turning this house into a party house. Um, and, and so, so what we're, we're looking for, when I say a more aggressive approach, uh, we're looking for any violations of our state, of our local ordinances or state laws, including traffic, um, for, you know, incidents in that neighborhood or any other neighborhood across the city in which the, um, in which they don't comply with the more diplomatic approach initially. And, um, and it, and it sounds like we, and, and in fact, I know we do, we, we have to take that approach with this, uh, with this issue.
Okay, we're going to take a motion to go in the close session, or Rule Ten?
So, Rule Ten.
We have a motion by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Cyber, for Rule Ten, all in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed.
I'm moving on to the end of the presentation.
Before.
Motion by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Cyber, in the year of. We're voting, we have to vote.
Mr. Cyber?
Yeah.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Lance is not here. Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mr. Fercassi? He has six hundred presence.